We're going to start this meeting before we bring it to order. We're going to have an invocation by Reverend Dan Holloway from Unity Spiritual Center. Thank you Reverend.
We open our minds and hearts to our higher power to provide us with clarity, focus, ease, and grace as we move through today's business. We set aside any personal agenda we may have so as to act in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Vero Beach. We know that we are each and all being guided today to clearly and spiritually discern that which is ours to do, for the willingness encouraged to do so, we are grateful. We pray after the nature of the Christ energy within and in gratitude, we say, "Thank you, God." Amen.
Amen. Councilman Zudans, be with us in the place.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we'll bring today's January 15th City of Vero Beach Council Meeting to order. Start with roll call, Tammy.
Dr. Zudans.
Here.
Colonel Young.
There.
Councilwoman Moss.
Present.
Vice Mayor Sykes.
Present.
Mayor Howell.
Present. We move on to approval of minutes. This is for approval from the council minutes from December 11th for the special call council minutes on December 11th and special call council minutes on November 27th. I have a motion for approval.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move on to agenda additions and deletions. I want to suggest that we move the, oh, let's see, I think it's, Jim, help me out, was it two?
Item, you're talking about moving my item 8A.
Eight.
Up to the discussion of Mr. Keith Drewitt.
Yes, sir.
Takes place at the same time.
If we could move that up to the discussion after Mr. Drewitt's given his presentation, I appreciate it. Also, this is specific to, Laura, nothing ever respectful is ever said after saying, "With all due respect," so I'm going to let you know I mean it, "with all due respect." This city council matters with the election is a carbon copy of something that we've gone through on the past meeting. I wondered if we could just bypass that?
We just need to discuss A to D, that's all. The rest of it were, the rest of it's just information.
Okay.
Not planning to discuss it. It's only A to D.
Okay. And does anybody else have any suggestions for changes, additions, deletions? Oh, I do have one more, I'm sorry. We do have an item to add to the consent agenda. That is for the Teamster contract. We never did actually complete that vote, so if we could put that on the consent agenda as the last item. What was that again? That's for the 2018 to 21 Teamster CT contract. Alright, got it. Alright. Any other changes? Motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Second. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move on to proclamations and recognitions by council, starting with Reamar Country Club's centennial anniversary.
Very good. Sirs, if you will, come up please.
Yeah, if anybody representative of that group.
Whereas, the Reamar Country Club was founded in 1919 by individuals who had discovered Vero's natural beauty, and whereas, in the same year, the founders and their friends built the first homes in Reamar section on the barrier island, and among them was the home of Alex McWilliam, who served as mayor of the city of Vero Beach for 18 years. And whereas, elegant homes surrounding the country club established the area as a premier winter vacation resort, and whereas, the early partnership and 100 years of continued support between the Reamar Country Club and our community has contributed to and have been an integral part of the civic engagement, welfare, and development of the city of Vero Beach and Indian River County. And now, therefore, the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida congratulates the Reamar Country Club and its members on the occasion of its centennial anniversary and extends best wishes, best wishes, as both the club and the city of Vero Beach enter their second century. Congratulations.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you, Mr. Young. On behalf of our 276 members and 60 employees, we're really pleased with this recognition from the city of Vero Beach in our 100th year. Reamar will grow into its second century a vibrant club. We are building a new clubhouse, and I know many of our members will continue to be involved very seriously in the Vero Beach community. It's also a great coincidence that we're sharing the 100th anniversary with Vero Beach. I think it's a special tribute to both of our philosophy and our values, and I know we will both work hard to keep Vero the great place it is. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim McConnell, who's our chairman of our centennial, for a special presentation. Jim?
Thanks. One of the cornerstones of our centennial celebration has been the development of a book about the history of the club. But, that book is about, turns out to be about a lot more than just the history of the club, because as Jack Biggs said, the two entities, the town and the club, are so intertwined over the years, up to and including today, that this book actually is almost a co-history. And I think, I hope you'll enjoy reading it. We thought that it would be appropriate, oh, by the way, and I should say, that this book could not have been developed without the help of some of the people in the room who worked with the writer and the art director on it, and provided invaluable, not just information, but material that's in the book, that came from the cities and the counties' archives. So, it's been a wonderful cooperation, and it's our feeling that on behalf of our members, that the city of Vero Beach should have a copy of this book in its files or someplace, wherever you want to put it, and so we'd like to present that to you. And we had a meeting at the county this morning, and somebody asked the question of, can the book be purchased or gotten anywhere? And the answer is yes, it's in the Reamar Pro Shop. Anybody is welcome to come in and buy one. In fact, we'd encourage that. In the meantime, I would like to present this, and I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then we present this to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for this.
Do you want to hold the book from the picture? Someone can take a picture?
Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to the Rotary International Home Stay Week, January 6th through 10th, 2019. Do you have anybody representative of?
Yes, it looks like we do. And I'll read that proclamation now. Whereas Rotary International, founded in 1905 in Chicago, is the world's first and largest nonprofit organization with 1.2 million members in 200 countries worldwide. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service and encourages high ethical standards in their community and the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus to immunize the children of the world against polio, and today the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas since 1926, over 200 members of the five local Rotary Clubs, excuse me, have sponsored service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, health, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment. And whereas for 44 years, local Rotarians have welcomed incoming district governors from around the world into their homes in Vero Beach for a week in January to share our community, develop friendships, and international understanding. And whereas Indian River County Rotary Clubs will join 15 international visitors from five countries in Vero Beach for Home Stay 2019. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby proclaim January 6th to the 10th, 2019 as, quotes, "Rotary International Home Stay Week," and "encourages all citizens to recognize Rotary International for its more than 100 years of service to improving the human condition locally and worldwide." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of all five Indian River County Rotary Clubs, including Kira and Laura as well, all the Rotarians in the room are up here, and we really appreciate this proclamation, and we continue each year, this is our 44th, and we'll continue it as time goes on, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. And Elaine, I don't think I'll be at our meeting tonight, I think this one's going to run long, okay?
Absolutely. Councilman Zudans, you should probably say something since you were over there, right?
And don't forget the upcoming Craft Beer Fest.
Oh, good, good.
And our, and our club is having Wild Game Feast. When is it?
January 26th.
January 26th.
Wild Game Feast. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks guys. Okay, turn on the mic here. Moving on to presentation items, this is a public presentation, starting with the county here to speak about Dodger Town Golf Course property. This is my sponsored part of the agenda. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak here this afternoon. As the mayor said, I'm here to speak about the Dodger Golf Course property. As you may know, I personally voted against the Dodger Town deal with Major League Baseball back when it came before the county, but with the deal done, I certainly wish Major League Baseball and the county every success. However, thinking about the deal after it was agreed to, there seemed to be one significant loose end that could come back to haunt the deal for all concerned. That loose end is the county's requirement to provide Major League Baseball with 2,000 parking spots for special events. There seems to be, to me, to be a solution that is good for all concerned, the city, the county, Major League Baseball, and most importantly, all the people of Indian River County. That solution is the purchase of the golf course property from the city by the county. I know that this council discussed a possible purchase of the property by the county a couple months back, but at that time, there was a lot of uncertainty about important aspects of the future of the property. Would there be an agreement between Major League Baseball and the county? What would the county do with the property? Would there be commercial development associated with the county's use of the project? This morning, the Board of County Commissioners agreed to renew its offer for the property and in a way that substantially answers these questions and which I believe will benefit the community, the county's proposal to purchase the property for $2.4 million. The county also commits to planting additional trees and landscaping across the east side of 43rd Avenue at the completion of the 43rd Avenue widening project, but no more than 36 months from the purchase of the property. And I'll note that the county right now intends to put that project out to bid this coming May. Importantly, for so long as the amended and restated facility lease agreement is in effect, the property will be used only for passive recreation, environmental projects, or activities that are ancillary to and consistent with the use of the Dodger Town property by Vero Town LLC. And this was the time in the presentation which I had hoped that we were going to be able to put the overhead on, which we can't, but for those of you who couldn't imagine the property, I'd ask you to, first of all, imagine the west side of the property along 43rd, and there are some trees there now, not too many, so imagine a, try almost a boulevard effect down 43rd Avenue. And as to ancillary uses, these would be things like batting cages, additional ball fields, with an appropriate public-private partnership with, for example, Historical Society, the use of the building on the north side of the property, and I don't know what you call that building, but it seems to be used by the Recreation Department some, when I drive by it, I see the outside stands there a lot, so that could possibly be used as a museum, highlighting the historical significance of Dodger Town, both for baseball and for our community. This offer, if accepted by the city, will address the county's Dodger Town Agreement parking requirements, and I believe will be in the best interests of the city, the county, and Major League Baseball. This morning, the county agreed to one additional item, which I believe makes the county purchase very much the right thing for all the residents of our community. It authorized the addition of a pedestrian way around the golf course property, the planning for which would begin as soon as the sale is completed, with the completion date for the pedestrian way no more than three years from the date of the purchase of the property by the county. I believe that this would help make the entire, now larger downtown complex, a much more important space for our entire community. Right now, at least the way I perceive and have considered Dodger Town, the Dodger Town itself is an enclosed space. There's very little interaction between the people who go into that enclosed space and the community as a whole. With the addition of the golf course property and pedestrian path, I now imagine a space where visitors training at Dodger Town and citizens can run and walk together. The high school track team, for instance, example, the cross-country team, which sometimes you can see going across the bridges during the cross-country season, could, instead of going over the bridges, be told, "Okay, go to Dodger Town, do a couple laps, and come back, we see how you're doing." I can imagine the youth of our community going to watch other well-trained young men and women through the fences as the out-of-towners come to practice in the community. And I believe that, for example, visitors and tourists from the new hotel that's being built just to the north side of Dodger Town will have an amenity which will greatly add to the value of their visit. In short, I believe that with the county purchase and a bit of work, we can turn a fine sports facility into a great destination point for our entire community and those who visit it. And again, if you look at the space around Dodger Town, you've got 43rd Avenue, which will soon be four-laned with a bikeway, bike path along it. And you'll also have a sidewalk which will extend into Gifford. To the north, Aviation Boulevard will also be four-laned with bike lanes at some point in time. To the south, the main relief canal, where someday the Indian River Farms Water Control District will actually allow the pedestrian bikeway, which I believe should have been there years ago, that'll be in place. So, coupled with all the other city and county parks and conservation areas with its many pedestrian trails, in 10 years, we will not have a baseball field with an adjacent park, but rather we'll have a countywide pedestrian bikeway system with a baseball complex as one of its segments. Thank you. I'd be happy to ask any questions about the county's vote today, which was positive, or if you have any other concerns that I can address.
Thank you, Commissioner. Did you, did you happen to mention the possibility of an outflow?
Yes, it was on the schematic. That was one of the permitted uses would be environmental projects. So, one of those would be a type of passive remediation system where we could take water, perhaps storm water from one of the road projects, or if not, perhaps water from the main relief canal, and you put it into basically a river type of system, and that removes nitrogen and phosphorus along the way. The county's developed expertise with that. We have a project that we're building right now at Jones Pier. This February, we should be completing with Osprey Acres, which has a larger type of passive remediation train. The city of Sebastian has a park which was designed that way to basically take storm water by the design of its plants around, especially the beginning of it, and then almost a wetlands at the end of it, again, designed to take a lot of the nitrogen and phosphorus out of the water before it gets back into the main system. We've got Osprey, also have Spoonville Marsh and Egrit Marsh, which have other additions to it, but a passive remediation type of removal system, which again, has removed, all the county projects now remove on an annual basis about 53,000 pounds of nitrogen a year. And by adding incrementally to those projects, we hope to double that number in the next few years.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Questions?
Yeah, I do. So, when you were quoting, well, you weren't quoted, it was a paraphrase of why you voted no on the Major League Baseball deal, and the Press Journal says, "Because government should not be involved in businesses that could be run by private companies." And I assume it's accurate, but you never know with the Press Journal.
Close to that. I mean, one of the reasons why I voted against it was for the same reason, I was supporting the sale of Vero Electric to FPNL. Basically, I believe that there are a lot of things that the private sector can do better, electricity is one, I believe basically generally sports is another, but you can tell by the number of four-to-one votes on the county commission, that not everybody agrees with me all the time. So, but the most important part to me though is, yes, I'll put up a good fight, a good argument for something, put up a, probably, well, I knew that vote was going ahead of time, so not a big argument, but I often put up arguments, but the important part is, after the vote, we had an agreement which lasts at least 10 years and eight months, and it has three, five-year renewals. For me, I want the project to succeed. I believe that now that we have it, the best thing for our community is to see it successful. And as I've been...
But the question I wanted to ask along those lines, I didn't want to make sure that that quote was accurate before I say anything, but is there an alternative to resolving this parking issue that can be done through private means as opposed to, I mean, I actually have, I laid out an alternative way that the county could meet their parking needs, and when, and my understanding is when we went to the county and presented that, there was no interest in really discussing that, they were only interested in buying the property. So, if the city council tonight said, "We're not interested in selling this," would the county be open to the idea of exploring a different option where some of the other properties that we have around there could be utilized or leased, or have arrangements that allowed us to still do something different with this Dodger Town Golf Course property? And keep it on the, in the private sector and on the tax rolls?
Well, I certainly can answer that for my board, and it's certainly nothing I've thought out. What I thought about was this purchase after the deal was done, and understanding that we have in our community a great park system, both the city and the county, and given the reality of the deal and where that property is located, for me, I figured, tried to figure out what was the best thing for the community as a whole. And for me, at this point, it's the purchase of the property, turning it into, or adding it to Dodger Town as a park that's well-situated, I believe that's what most of the people in the community actually want at the end of the day, and to me, it builds a bigger, better picture of things. To me, it enhances the community in a certain way, which I hadn't thought about even prior to the Major League Baseball agreement. So, I've been big on parks for years, big on conservation areas, big on pedestrian ways, and if we can make this part of a much wider pedestrian bikeway system that becomes a focal point of the community, I think that that would be a very positive thing. And I'm perfectly willing to put my private sector activities into other areas, because there are always a lot of different opportunities. But, for me, and only speaking for myself, given the reality, the Dodger Town agreement, I believe that this is the best step forward for the city, the county, Major League Baseball, and most importantly, the citizens of Indian River County.
Commissioner, let me interrupt you there. I too am of similar thinking as you are with private sector and limited government and so forth, but having seen, you know, when we brought this up before us in the past, there was, there were some questions. We didn't have any concrete evidence that this property was going to be one thing or another. Now, the county has all but secured a contract with MLB, and you also have, I was at your meeting this morning, presented a nice plan for what you intend the property to look like and what you intend for it to offer to the citizens of the county as a whole. You know, we spent 10-plus years fighting over one big issue, and that was the electric sale, and I'm not saying that the city was fighting with the county about it, but you could absolutely say that the city and the county have some bridges that we need to gap, and we've got gaps we need to put bridges on, I should say. But, but this would be, this now, now with the MLB contract in place, in my best estimation, this is the time for the city and the county to bridge those gaps, to create something that's central to the community, that everyone can enjoy, to tie it into the rest of the outlying communities, as you mentioned, the sidewalk to Gifford, the bike path through the Indian River Water District's property toward the east and west. This is, this is the perfect time for us to do something that involves everybody, not just the city and not just the county. And I think I want to make it clear to my board after we're done discussing and to the public, because we can't make a vote without having public comment first, I do plan on putting a vote on the table tonight, and my vote is, my motion is going to be to accept the offer from the county. So...
And if I may add to two things to say, first, I applaud you for recognizing there may be a gap, and I think this is a great way to fill it. And this is a, just the location of this is one where, not only will the Major League, excuse, yeah, the Major League people training at that facility come to the park, but citizens from the city and county, so it's all together there. Perhaps for me philosophically, the more important thing is when you talk about limited government and private sector, limited government for me is an incredibly important principle, but as an elected official, I have to always remember that the principles that guide my actions on the county commission are basically a means to the end, they're not the end themselves. The end is basically good order, good order in the community, and I didn't come up with that, Aristotle did, and it's eunomia in Greek, but at the end of the day, the concern is for the good order of the community as a whole. I simply believe that conservative tennis will get you there, but without keeping mind in mind at all times that the goal is good order, I think we sometimes miss things.
Thank you. And you're right.
Could you please clarify with regard to Major League Baseball? That's not actually, this is for the community, it's not actually a Major League Baseball team. It's, I think, youth development. Could you please explain that to the community, what it will be?
I'm going to let Jason get more of the details.
Okay. And I have one more, one more comment than, before Jason.
Oh, sorry.
And this is, you know, while I share your concern regarding open space and green space, and I appreciate that, but frankly, with regard to this price that you're offering, the city would take a financial bloodbath, and it's more than an ironic twist to me that since you were one of the people who got us into this in 2005, and it's not an accusation in any way, it's merely a statement of fact, and by that, for the community, we purchased this property, the city, in 2005, the city council of 2005, it was unanimous vote, Mr. Solari was part of that city council, we purchased it for $10 million, which perhaps was high, I'm not judging, you know, the past based on the present, but that being said, we currently, even if you apply, we currently owe about half of that, approximately half, just for purposes of discussion, let's say half. So, if we apply this, this offer to the half that we still owe and do in fact accept the offer, we won't have any property, but we'll still have a $3 million debt service. So, I'll return to my question, and I do mean it with all due respect, and I know what you mean, Harry, that it doesn't sound respectful, but since you got us into this, could you get us out of this, so we don't have to take a bloodbath for $3 million?
Well, ma'am, basically the 2.4 million value today seems to be what the market value is. I mean, you're about, it appeared to me before the county got involved, you're about to take an offer for 2.1 million. And quite frankly, the 2005 price is irrelevant, because basically what you have is the market value today. So, basically what you have is what's known as a sunk cost. So, I will note though, with this property, the city has had it for 14 years, and it hasn't done anything with it, and I believe the county is in a position, and the agreement will state, that we will actually get things done within the three years. And as another example, that was in my first year of office, before I developed the principles that I hold now, especially dealing with limited government. You'll also note that within about a year later, I voted to sell the post office annex property, and that was one of... And that was one of my ones on four-to-one votes. I got a lot more on the one side of four-to-one votes after I developed this set of principles which helped to guide my decisions. That property could have been sold for $4 million. At that time, the city said, "Oh, you know, we can make more money if we kept it and leased it." And then a private developer came and was ready to lease the property, and then city council members sitting in a couple seats that you're sitting in today started asking for exactions. And what happened after that? The person left. So now you've been sitting on that property since 2000, since the hurricane, where all you have is the maintenance expenses. So again, people did make errors in the past, but again, those things are in the past. What I'm here today is to offer something that the border county commissioners of Indian River County is, believes is in the best interests of our community, which I believe is in the best interests of our community, and which will do for that park what people thought might have happened 15 years ago, and which, as I understand it, the city doesn't have any real plan to go forward now. So again, the sunk cost is a sunk cost. The reality is, we're in the position to make a much bigger pie for the city, the county, Major League Baseball, and again, most importantly, all of the citizens of Indian River County.
Yeah. No, I understand that you need to buy it now, but we don't need to sell it now.
Oh, I understand.
There's a difference, and I, but I do want to help you with your parking problem, and I think, you know, what Dr. Zudans is referring to may help you with that. But for the community, just, you know, just so we backtrack a minute, with regard to tourist tax, and by the way, if the city were getting its fair share of tourist tax, we could have, we would not have debt service on this property potentially, because we could have applied tourist tax the way the county did. All right? If you look at the tourist tax, they've been using one cent of the tourist tax to pay their debt service for historic Dodger Town. Well, we contribute half of that roughly. That's the city of Vero Beach. There are two special taxing districts. There's District One, which we are, which is the city of Vero Beach only, and then there's District Two, which is everything that's not Vero Beach. Well, we're the goose that lays the golden egg, because we are, our little 13 square miles, our little gem, we contribute about half of that money. And coincidentally, in my mail today, I just got the tourist tax figures. Fund 119 for City of Vero Beach is a half, a half a million dollars. That's the most recent estimate. There are three funds, by the way.
Why are we talking about tourist tax again? I thought we were talking about Dodger Town.
I'm not talking about tourist tax. I'm talking about tourist tax with regard to Dodger Town. That we could, if we had been able to apply it the way the county, the county uses tourist tax to pay the debt service for historic Dodger Town and has for, I don't know how many years. You can probably tell us exactly how many years.
But what does that have to do with the price of tea in China? I don't understand where we're going.
The point is that if the city had been allowed the same use of its own money, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. I mean, it wouldn't, we wouldn't have a debt service. We could use it, and we never have access to that.
So let me try to put it into perspective, then. We have not, we've had this, this property on the market for 18 months or longer. We've not had an offer of 3 million. We now have a contract from Major League Baseball that it is dependent on, the contract's dependent on having the parking spots that are needed, and we have done nothing more than mow the lawn for 14 years or so, however long it's been at this point. I don't think that trying to tie tourism tax into what we're trying to talk about this evening is going to solve any problems or any issues whatsoever. I think we need to stick to the topic and make a decision tonight as to how we want to proceed with the Dodger Town property.
Well, we might request as part of whatever deal you make that we do get our own tourist tax. We do get to use some of that.
And that can be discussed.
That would be a big help. You know, we have people, we'll be speaking later about parks. We have people who are very concerned about parks and repair and maintenance.
I understand.
And, you know, that could be used that way. Where are we going to come up with this money? Now we're going to create even more debt. We're going to create a $3 million bloodbath.
Actually, actually, you're going to save money over time, because you're not going to pay the interest on the note.
Yeah, but you're going to have nothing. You're going to have no land, and you're going to be sitting there with debt service. Yes, you are.
That's right. You're going to, you're going to lose some liability, and you're going to have a, and you're going to have a place to go and enjoy games and running court and whatever else is propagated by making this deal, that's what you're going to have. And the tourism tax, I, listen, I've never disagreed with you on that, but that can be discussed down the road. I don't think this probably should be used as leverage.
It's been down, this is the only time you ever have any leverage. I've been talking about this for two years and gotten nowhere. You know, this is the only time you ever have any leverage. And by the way, that property, just for the community, it was purchased as open space. That's, that was the intent of the council of 2005. Nothing, that's why it is. It's just open space. There's nothing wrong with that. Remember, we'll be developing the power plant property, the water and sewer property, the little piece of property across the street. We have all that coming up in the next year or two. So that's, that's right down the road. And after we do that, then we really have no other large pieces of open space other than the Dodger Town Golf Course, which we now have. That's about 35 acres. So at that point in time, a year or two from now, we might look around and say, gee, you know, maybe we want that open space, maybe we don't want that open space. That's a better time, we'll be in a better position then, to decide to make a more efficient and effective decision with regard to the future of that piece of property. But also, I think the city manager had an idea of leasing, you know, perhaps leasing, and I'm not sure that that's appropriate still, in terms of, you know, I'm happy to try to solve the parking problem. You know, I understand parking problems. It's on our agenda, too. So I understand parking problems and, you know, happy to try to solve that. Did you have any comments about that?
Well, and I agree. I think Major League Baseball is important to the area, and one of the solutions that I thought of was the leasing of enough space for 2,000 parking spaces, which doesn't encompass the entire plot of ground. So if we wanted to go with the reoccurring revenue stream is the theory that I had behind that, and then the lease would also control, it could be a long-term lease, but it would have drawbacks if in fact, for example, if Major League Baseball should leave or whatever, something should change, the city would still be in control of the property under a leasing condition.
Talk about limited government, now you've got two governments involved.
And that's, and that's a good point, by the way, because it's only, it's only 10 years, right? It's all you have. All you have is a 10-year contract, and, you know, then what?
10 years, eight months with three, five-year renewals.
Right, but it's, so 10 years, eight months, then what? If they walk away, we weren't very good at keeping them for, keeping any kind of team before.
It may happen, but by-
They walked.
You know, the proposal that came earlier to us was between a private contractor and then the, and the county. And my concern was that the county be successful in having Major League Baseball enter into a deal. And I think it's phenomenal that we have that deal by the county, and I think the county deserves a hell of a lot of credit for that. And I just think that my aspirations is to ensure that you're successful, okay? And I want to make sure that, you know, Dodger Town is, what people have it in their mind is historic Dodger Town, because not only is it a economic boost to our community, but it's also of great historical significance, and we've discussed that as well. But my concern naturally is, as we move forward from the Rubicon, and I consider the Rubicon what we've just crossed with FPNL, we need to be good stewards of our financial resources for the city, and to be the best stewards of our economic resources, we should retain control over that and enter into a lease with the county so we can support your efforts to have parking, so that's assured, because I want that to happen. But yet, we have the ability to manage our own destiny. So that's kind of my take on it.
We already have an agreement to use the property for parking as long as you're not using it for something else. That's one.
Well, that was, that was, that was free, right? No charge? There's no, no financial consideration?
That's correct, but that's still the agreement.
And could be canceled at any time. Is that correct?
That's not my understanding. My understanding is it could be terminated if you use it for some other distinct use. So if you did sell it to a developer, or if you put, put other developments on it, then you could. The more important thing is the way it was described and described by Mr. O'Connor of, yes, you can continue to lease the property for it, then you still have a parking lot. And the issue is, do you want a parking lot there, or do you want something which is, want to add value to the entire community? I'm here today because I believe what the county is offering is something which adds value to the entire community, to every citizen in this community.
We want a revenue stream, right, Jim?
So can I, can I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
No, the idea of a revenue stream, I understand that you like profits, and you like profits in your utilities, but at the end of the day, government is not about revenue streams.
It's not a profit. I'm going to have a $3 million debt service, and the property will be gone.
The end of the day, government is not about revenue streams. At the end of the day, government is about good order in our community, doing what's best for all the citizens in the community. I believe this, the city council in the past went down the wrong trail, went down the wrong trail when it fought the FPNL deal. It went down the wrong deal when it didn't sell the post office annex property. It went down the wrong trail when it bought the boat storage business at the Marina. It's not about revenue streams. I believe if you focus on a limited number of things, that you can do those better and better serve the people. So, again-
I'm very much, and I'm very much along the lines of what Harry's saying, that I would like to see the county and the city start working together better and having a better relationship. And, but I don't think that the only way for that to happen is for the city to sell the property to the county. I laid out in a pretty succinct fashion a alternative option that I would like the county and the city to actually sit down and talk about, when, and see whether everybody wins. You end up with, and it can include things, like you talked about connecting the bike trails. Maybe that's part of the agreement of what we do with that property, and we also at the same time allow ancillary services that go into this, into the county, but we also have some private business there and some jobs and some, some actual, it's not because we're trying to get tax revenue from businesses, but it's because private sector does a better job than government. You're actually one government to buy a piece of property from another piece of government when they've already, how many times does our community have to pay for this piece of property? I personally believe that there is a solution that fulfills both the private sector, or at least we should discuss it. I think that, I think the county and the city should sit down about and discuss whether there's another option that solves all the issues related to the Major League Baseball deal, keeps portions of it for the way we want it to be for green space, but also gets businesses on, that can be a vibrant part of our community. You know, there's a lot of things going on over at that, at that airport. There's people who have just approached the city about flight school-related activities and additional businesses wanting to come in. There's going to be growing manufacturing around this area because of the utility deal and the fact that we have Cleveland Clinic coming to our community. And so this isn't, this, this should not necessarily just, we're taking, we're talking about taking a piece of property and because county governments are exempt from taxes, taking off the tax rule and basically have government control over something that probably should stay in the private, or should be in the private sector, not in government control. It's not a critical role of government to control that piece of property.
I think that's an interesting idea. Are you amenable to having a joint meeting and having it open to the public, county commission and city council?
Well, I actually don't think that that will be, that's not what I was saying.
Well, we do. We have joint commission meetings. You have that many people. We've done it. It's doable.
Is it bad that I already have a headache?
Yeah. I do, too. If, if I could add something?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mayor Howe, and at city council, I want to just take a step back into Harry's idea of building bridges and making sure that we're having good relationships between the county and the city. I just want to particularly, to Tony, point out that in 2015, the city asked for, and the county granted the release of deed restrictions on this property. Okay? So in, in, when the city purchased the property-
But Jason, that did come with some give backs, too. I mean, we paid for those releases through land swaps and other methods.
Of course, and I'll go through them.
Of course, we paid. We know that.
I do have the agenda item here. So what, what happened, what was on the property when the city acquired it was a deed restriction that the property could only be solely used as a municipally-owned public golf course or green space or park-like setting or any combination of the four going through uses. The city and the Dodgers also entered into restrictions limiting the city's use of the property to the use restrictions as stated in the Second Amendment. Under the Second Amendment, the city could not develop and/or permit the use of the city property for any other use or purpose whatsoever without the prior written consent of both the Dodgers and Indian River County. In 2008, Indian River County succeeded to all interests of the Dodgers, so now it's no longer the Dodgers and the county that have to accede to this, but now the county only in the Second Declaration of Covenants. We released that. I would, I would stipulate, I would point out that you don't have something worth $3 million, you don't have something worth $2.4 million, you don't have a piece of property worth $2.1 million without the county's action. Jim O'Connor is right, that the county did get something for that. Some of the things that the, that the city did grant to us, the county, this grant to the county, a 0.2 acre parcel adjacent to 43rd Avenue for additional right-of-way. That's the right-of-way we need to widen 43rd Avenue, which is a roadway in the city of Vero, which I think is important to the city of Vero. That the city also granted the following easements to the county. Easements across the city property to provide drainage connection from Aviation Boulevard and 43rd Avenue. That's to both handle 43rd Avenue widening and the Aviation Boulevard widening when those are done, to drain those into the lake that's around the Cloverleaf property. The city dedicated the tract of Poinsettia Park lying south of Atlantic Boulevard, and you guys probably know that better than I do. I didn't realize that was a park for the longest time. It's a little triangle of grass there, just east of State Road 60, or just east of 43rd Avenue on State Road 60. So you do, you do have one less park, I guess, and, and the county is, right now, work is underway with a cure plan for the parking for Ninos and the laundromat and all that stuff that's right there at the, on the northeast corner of State Road 60 and 43rd Avenue that we need to do to widen the project, but was also a condition of this agreement. So we're out there constructing a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of improvements based on getting that Poinsettia Park, and require that all future site plans and zoning requests will maintain compatibility with the county's baseball facilities and other approved uses on the adjacent county property. I think that's reasonable. And reconfigure the proposed right-of-way for Aviation Boulevard so that we didn't need additional, so additional right-of-way wasn't needed from DT Commons, which is the little triangle property. And extend the temporary license agreement for use of the Vero Beach Municipal Airport. That was about where we were parking the buses, the county bus system before we had the bus hub installed. So there was the bus situation, but all-
Isn't this just like the sunk cost argument, though? I mean, this is a done deal from before.
Right, right. But, but all of these things that the city gave up were things so that the county could build road projects in the city. So I would just ask that, in that spirit, I think we were working in partnership in 2015, where the city got something, the county got something, but I would just like to point out that if that parcel still had the deed restriction of, that it could only be used for a municipally-owned public golf course or green space or park-like setting or any combination of the following three uses, of the foregoing three uses, I don't think you would have had a developer offering you $2.1 million for it. So I would, I would hope that, that there's some recognition of that, that the county is making an offer of $2.4 million on a piece of property that heretofore, before the county's actions, it wasn't worth that. So, I mean, I could see somebody criticizing us for being dumb government, for granting you something of value on your property and then paying you more for your property. That's, you know, we could be criticized for making foolish government decisions with the taxpayer dollars, honestly. I, I think there could be that criticism of the county. I think the county's made a fair offer here. I think it addresses the open space concerns that you've had. I think it, I think it solidifies and resolves the 2,000 parking space issue. I think it would create an amenity that Commissioner Solari spoke very eloquently about, so I ask that you give it favorable consideration.
What happens if they leave in 10 years and 8 months? What happens if they leave? I mean, it doesn't, is there, is there, there's a deed restriction? There's no deed restriction.
It's not your problem.
Our hope is that they continue on-
It is my problem. I don't want it developed. So it is, it is my problem.
Our hope is that the facility is successful. We think this is something that takes an obstacle to potential success for 25 years and 8 months out of the way. If, if, if the Major League Baseball deal isn't successful-
Yeah, but we, you know, we sold it to you, and if the market's better then, you could flip it. I mean, potentially.
You can second-guess that forever. We've been doing it for 14 years.
Look, it never, it doesn't matter what the price is. The only time the price matters is the day you sell it. It's like the stock market.
Right, and it's only worth what somebody's willing to offer.
This is degenerating into something that really should not be happening. This is degenerating into something that really should not be happening.
We don't need to sell it.
Okay, look, I think that the city and the county have an opportunity here to actually do something together to make things better. And if the only way to do it is to sell through the county, then that is what I would want to do. But I honestly think that it's not fair to not... Our job on the city council is actually to look out for the interest of city residents, as who we're elected to represent. And this is a perfect deal. I mean, this solves all the county's problems. But I think that there may be a solution that solves all the county's problems and also is better for the benefit of the city of Vero Beach. I also do think that, and I'm not saying it in the same way about the tourist tax issue, but we have another issue within the city, which is our parking issues on Ocean Drive. And we've talked in the past about... Part of the problem is that the county tourist tax are not allowed to go towards tourism-related parking issues. But we've been talking about a parking garage over on Ocean Drive. And if the county were to change their rules about what tourist tax can go to, I think that's something that could be discussed if we had a little bit more discussion about how we make something that is mutually beneficial to both the city and the county and potentially get something more in our representation of the citizens of the city of Vero Beach in the process of doing this. There's no urgency in the sense that until we decide what we're doing with that property, that property is still sitting there and we're letting the county use it free of charge in the meantime. And so, I personally am not going to vote for selling to the county today. But that doesn't mean I'm necessarily perpetually opposed to the idea. I do want to find a solution, but I want to find the best solution that's mutually beneficial in the maximum way to both the city and the county. And I personally believe that at least a portion of that should be through private industry, not necessarily all through government-to-government interaction. So, that's just my thinking. And it's not... And of any disrespect to anything you said, because I understand exactly why you're saying what you're saying and why other people are saying other things. But that's my opinion.
Let me give you one other scenario here. We do nothing. The county does not accept the idea of a lease. We do not accept the idea of a sale. MLB does not have a guarantee. They have the public parking spaces they need. They cancel the contract. They pull out. We're on the hook for $630,000-plus dollars a year for another 14 years. No other offers come, and it remains a piece of property. Dodger Town does indeed fail, and nothing's been gained. Everything's been lost. And that's better. Somehow, that's better.
Well, I think... That scenario is just like if... I mean, that's a worst-case scenario. But I guess what I hear from the good doc is something that is not foreign to all of us here, and that is that oftentimes, measures come to us for decision post haste. And, you know, there is nothing wrong with taking the offer that's here and giving us some opportunity to review it, because I have had y'all come to me and say, "Well, Colonel, if you had thought about X, Y, and Z, we would have been better off." Okay? And I'm not saying Harry kicked the can down the road, but I'm saying is it would be prudent on our part to take an opportunity to, again, look at the opportunity, because I want to work with the county, and it's very important to me. But there may be things that I'm not taking into consideration before I make a judgment.
Is there not a signed lease between Major League Baseball and the county?
Yes, there is an agreement.
Okay. So then, that scenario that you just presented is not possible.
They already signed the lease.
Can I add a thing for... Mayor Howell, quickly.
Vice Mayor wants to say...
Okay.
Want to, first of all, thank the county very much for bringing this offer back to us today. You know, we've looked at what potential highest and best use for this property could be, you know, over the course of the last year. And we've, I think, really learned what the community hopes and expects to happen at that piece of property. You know, my concern last time you all brought the offer to us, Commissioner Solari, was just a bit of ambiguity about the potential uses for that piece of property. And I'm very happy to see, you know, what you all have agreed to as far as, you know, passive use on this piece of property and keeping it green space, but also green space that can be utilized for public benefit. I think the historic significance of Dodger Town is something that no one in this community would argue. And I think that the current state of it is shameful at best. I'm excited to offer something that wasn't an opportunity before to the youth in this community. And to have a partner like Major League Baseball come in is pretty incredible and how that ties into the history of this community. You know, I don't think that this is an appropriate time to leverage anything, whether it be tourist tax dollars or otherwise. I think that's a mutually exclusive issue that we need to discuss with the county and try and come to some solution. But I want to thank you for the offer. I am in support of selling the property to the county. If you recall, the last meeting where we discussed this, the number of people that stood up in opposition to the development was incredible. And the number of people that asked us to sell this piece of property to the county was also incredible. I see a lot of those same people in the room today. And so, you know, I would be in favor of selling to the county. I think $2.4 million now is certainly better than the alternative. You know, the city owning this property and charging for parking, or frankly, even in a lease scenario. You know, most of the intergovernmental leases that we've seen are kind of a joke. And I don't see this as a potential revenue stream for us. I see this as an opportunity to work with the county and create something great for the community as a whole. And I think that goodwill gesture will do a lot for the relationship with the city and the county. So, I'm in favor of selling the property. That's where my vote will be. Doesn't seem like we have the votes, but certainly willing to second your motion, Mayor, if you'd like to call for a vote.
Indeed. And I know we've heard from a lot of folks at the last meeting, and I don't want to waste anybody's time. Of course, we do have to have public comment if I do present a vote. But I think at this juncture, it's nevertheless important that I do. So, I want to make a motion that the city sell the Dodger Town property to the county for the $2.4 million offered, so they can continue forward with their contract with MLB. Do I have a second? I want to do public comment first. Excuse me. I'm sorry. I'm sorry for that.
And if you would, Mayor, add in the additional provisions that...
Absolutely. Thank you for saying so. The additional provisions are that purchase price $2.4 million cash. County commits to planting additional trees and landscaping along east side of 43rd Avenue at completion of widening the widening project, but no more than 36 months from the purchase of the property. For so long as the amended and restated facility lease agreement for the Dodger Town properties in effect, the property will be used for passive recreation, environmental projects, or activities that are ancillary to and consistent with the use of the Dodger Town property by Vero Town LLC. So, I add that to my motion.
Mr. Mayor, you might add the pedestrian way around as part of your motion, too.
Thank you for mentioning that. I will also add the pedestrian pathway around the property as part of that plan as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this time, because I put a vote on the floor, if we had somebody that wants to give us some information they haven't already given us, or to speak on this on the behalf of whatever side you take, now would be the time.
Good afternoon, Council.
Good afternoon.
My name's Penny Chandler Norris, and I wanted to address some points that had been made earlier about the bed tax. The 1% to 2% bed tax that you're referencing, Councilwoman Moss, and that you're referencing, Councilwoman Zidane's, to be used for purposes other than tourism, tourism promotion, are not allowed by Florida statute. It's the law of the state. It doesn't have anything...
Is that accurate? Tourism-related parking is not allowed?
The tax proceeds may be used for the following purposes: to acquire, construct, extend, enlarge, remodel, blah, blah, blah. Convention centers, sports stadiums, sports arenas, coliseums, auditoriums within the boundaries of the county or the sub-county. So, there are certain laws that you can look it up, Councilwoman Zidane's, section 125 of the Florida statute.
I wasn't suggesting anything that's not in the Florida statute. I was talking about debt service and just for the community.
But you can't use it to pay debt service.
Yes, actually, we do. That's Fund 204, which is used to pay the debt service for historic Dodger Town. And that comes out of the tourist tax. So, we actually, the city has been... This is the point I was trying to make earlier before I was interrupted. The city has been paying half of the debt service for historic Dodger Town for quite some time, and that's out of Fund 204. Spring training facility. And it's...
Of which...
Most recently, it's $600,000. So, we probably contribute about half of that.
Of which penny? Of which penny of that tax?
I think it's one cent.
Of which... I think if you check, you'll find that you probably cannot use what it is that you're wanting to pay debt service.
They passed an ordinance. The county passed an ordinance. I know. You're right. The county passed an ordinance.
I would also just say that I...
And it's questionable if that's appropriate.
Councilwoman Moss, with all due respect, this is Mrs. Chandler's opportunity to speak during public comment. I'd really like to give her a chance to say her piece. And then, if you'd like to respond, that's fine.
I also agree that... I hope that you will sell the parcel to the county. The community has waited many years to see the city do something meaningful with that property, and it has not happened. So, based on that fact and that you have a good offer with somebody that maintains and that we can count on to maintain that property in the way it should have been maintained, I would urge you to vote to sell that to the county. Thank you.
Way off the bat, I would urge you not to. I hope Mr. Daig gets up and speaks, because he has a suggestion which would meet with Councilmember Zidane's interest. Anyway, and that is that let the city retain ownership. Let the county lease it for what we pay on debt service. Let the county pick that up, and the county can agree to give us back our tourist tax. And we'll contribute, whatever the tourist tax is, we'll contribute that towards the development of Dodger Town. We get our tourist tax back. The county gets the property for simply the payment of debt service. They don't have to dig into their pockets for $2.4 million. Just pay off the mortgage every year. And that gives everybody something, and the city maintains ownership. And that would be good for the community as a whole. The... A lot of talk about Dodger Town and, you know, the success of that entity. And I'd like to see him successful. I'd like to see him successful without taxpayers kicking in $14 million. Now, we don't kick in $14 million to other businesses, but we kick in a lot of money to Dodger Town every year in order to have Dodger Town be successful. The deal that's being proposed is that the use be consistent with the needs of the LLC. And if you go back and review city council meetings, you'll see that Peter O'Brien stood here and said that one of the needs that would be consistent with the LLC's needs would be to build a hotel. And he said that at this podium. So, you know what is long-term that you're not being told. The county could certainly reverse that tax swindle that happened a long time ago. And in fact, the county back in, what is this, July 10, 2002, and the county decided to no longer contribute to the city parks. And that was about, the number is here someplace, $680,000 a year at the time, even though the county residents probably account for the majority of the people that use our parks, and the county pays Zippo. And it's tax-collected within the city. That belongs to the city, but some council a long time ago was talked into giving that money away. The county commissioner talked about the $4 million for the old postal annex. And there's a lot more to the story of the old postal annex. It got destroyed in a hurricane. We collected insurance money to rebuild it, and instead, we played silly games with a developer from West Palm Beach, who said he was going to pay us money at some time in the future. And then, after the real estate market went to hell in a handbasket, he walked away, and we still have the property. The deed restrictions you talked about, when the FAA, back in 1947, when the FAA deeded this property, all of the airport property, over to the city, the deed restrictions were that the property be used for recreation for the airport or recreation for public good. And I would argue that the whole deal with Dodger Town and private LLC zoning it is questionable whether or not that's for the public good. And then, last but not least, you were elected to two-year terms, not two years and three months, or two years and four months, or whatever. And I would submit to you, in fact, it was a lawyer, a Vero Beach lawyer, that walked up to me. I was sitting outside, and walked up to me and handed me a cardboard that said, "There's no quorum here." And I would agree, there's three terms that are up. And you could have, if you'd wanted to, before your terms were up, you could have voted to extend your terms, but you didn't. We don't even have a quorum here. We have two elected officials, and the other three are sitting up there, but without voter
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Justice Palavan, I'm the president of Black Squad Consulting. I'm also a builder and developer in the area and have been for over 20 years. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things I've said at the previous meetings where I already spoke. You don't need repetition from me. But let me say this. I support the deal with the county. I think it's the best thing for the people of Indian River County and the city of Vero Beach. And God bless Mrs. Moss, trying to look out for the benefit of the people of this community and save as much money and make as much money as possible. I understand that. But let me give you a little business sense. Property's worth what it's worth. What is once paid for has no value. Let me give you, for instance, of a project that I'm very familiar with here, that I'm involved with. Right now, they've got $53 million invested in this piece of property. They're trying to get $12 million for it. Meanwhile, it's costing them $144,000 a year for ERU fees and $150,000 a year for management fees, besides taxes and all that stuff. So, they want to stop the bleeding and move on. It may never be worth $53 million. I don't believe it'll ever be worth anything close to that. At one time, when the market was way up, people were overpaying for pieces of property here. People were coming up here from down south, coming down here from up north, and they were used to paying $150,000, $200,000 a lot. That's not here, and we don't have that kind of absorption. Right here, what you're proposing, what we're proposing to do with this Dodger Town property is a benefit to the community. It restores and preserves the historic value, which is very important to this community. And I've been involved in a lot of developments over the years. I've done a lot of developments. There's no security in a developer coming forward saying he's going to do something. A lot of people have done that. And there's unfinished developments out there right now that people have never finished. At least with the county, you know what you have, you know where you're going, and this is kind of like that ad on TV, "We can always go up, but you can never go down." That's security for the people here in this city and for this in this county. Plus, we're going to add a great destination point for this piece of property, not just a parking lot or not just another hotel. And we're almost hotel-ed out. We've got two hotel sites right now, and we've got a third one that's possible to come out of the ground. Three hotel sites plus what we have? I don't know. I don't think I'd want to start a new hotel right now as a fourth hotel site. That's my input. But when people pay for a piece of property, sometimes it just outweighs the value. I have pieces, I have lots in some of my subdivisions. 10 years ago, we were selling for $100,000, $500,000, $10,000. I bought three of them back at the tax of the county for $7,000. You just don't know where the market's going to go. You just don't know where the market's going to go. And when that buying frenzy comes, where people are buying, you don't know when it's going to turn around, and you don't know what security you got. I've heard other developers come up here and say, "They're going to do this, they're going to do that." No financial statements, no security. It's just a dream. You can't take a picture in a dream and wage and gamble with the people's security that live here. So in all due respect, I respect what you're trying to do for the people that live here. I really do. I think for what's best for this county and the, this city and the people in the future is something solid that we can build on and restore the historic value of this county and this particular site, and know that you're going to have at least that going forward, and you can be the council to preserve that historic town. So I, my recommendation, make a deal with the county. Make a great partnership. The city of Vero, Indian River County, that's a great partnership. That's what you need to do, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I just wanted to clarify one of the earlier comments. I did, I did look up the statute, and at the state level, you're permitted to, there's actually two sections under 125,0104. Both Section 5 and Section 6 look like they would allow it. One is related to park-related facilities, and the property we were talking about was across the street from Homestead Park. And so you could potentially use tax dollars for, if it was parking related to that park. And then the other one is, number six, was just construction related to increasing tourism, and that's clearly a tourist area of, um, our community. But, uh, but our current county, um, our current county, um, rules on what you can use tax dollars for do not allow that. So it would actually require a change in what the county, a decision by the county to actually allow the use of that tax dollars for tourism-related parking, or, um, if, that's my understanding. Is that, do you understand it differently than that?
My understanding is different. Um, I'm not an attorney. There are things that are allowed under state statute with the, with the tourist tax. Parking garages is not one of them. It is in Section 124 dot 0104, right? 125 dot 0104. Chapter 125 is the statute that provides county powers. Um, and-
Well, Section, Section 5 under there that says what it is, the Section 5 says to finance beach park facilities. And then it goes on to talk about what they are. And Section 6 says to acquire, construct, extend, enlarge, remodel, repair, improve, maintain, operate, or finance public facilities within the boundaries of the county or sub-county specialized taxes, taxes levied if the public facilities are needed to increase tourism-related business activities. Okay? Those, those would both clearly sound like a parking garage to, um, in a tourist area or across the street from a beach park would be permissible if the county chose that that was something that they wanted to do.
And, and I have to confess, I'm not an attorney, but infrastructure that tourists might use is not the same as something to, to, to promote tourism. So I, I, I don't think you would, you can build a, a parking garage with tourist tax dollars per state statute. So, um, I, I, I will confirm that with our county attorney, but, uh, I, I don't think that parking garages are something that, that can be built with tourist tax dollars.
Thank you, Jason. And again, I'd like to stay on subject here. Um, we're talking about Dodger Town and the property sale there.
Ms. Stone, Indian River County Chamber of Commerce, 1216 21st Street, Vero Beach. Uh, as I said at the last time we met on this topic, my board supports the deal between the city and the county and the purchase of the property to, from, uh, from the city to the county. We see the whole Dodger Town development, including this parcel, as being key to our sports tourism as well as economic development in that particular corridor. We also see the ability to add, and I think one of the points I want to particularly raise to you, and one of the things that you haven't asked the question, the infrastructure that the county is willing to come to the table to, both the creation of landscape buffer as well as a pedestrian bike way through that project, has a significant improvement to the project. And I think I would, I would ask you to consider that value, which in your discussions of holding on to the property, keeping the property as it is, going through further discussions, has not come up in the past. But there is, there is value added in, in allowing the county and requiring the county to do that as part of the project. But I'm here today just to point out that the, the chamber board continues to support this. Chamber staff supports this. Our economic development group supports this, and our tourism group supports this. So whatever we can do to help move this along, we're very happy to do that. But we would ask you to consider this from an economic development as well as a sports tourism standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stone.
Good afternoon, Mayor Howell.
Afternoon, Emily.
Members of the city council. I am Alma Lee Loy, longtime resident of Vero Beach. The last time I addressed you all regarding the purchase of your Dodger Town property, I made reference to the possibility of Major League Baseball coming to Dodger Town. At that time, I did not know for certain, so I could not answer your question. As you all know, by this time, Major League Baseball is coming to Dodger Town. You have heard the county commission's proposal from Chairman Solari and Administrator Brown. The plans of Major League Baseball are designed to make Dodger Town a destination spot for citizens and visitors in order to execute their plans to bring young ballplayers to Dodger Town to play, to become professional athletes, and to allow the footsteps, to follow the footsteps of players of yesteryear. Major League Baseball needs to be in control of all operations. Through the years, their presence will be a major economic impact to Vero Beach and to Indian River County. As members of the Vero Beach City Council, you have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to make an investment in Major League Baseball with the county, thus creating a legend of cooperation for future generations to recognize that we really are a something special city and county. I believe that I speak for many citizens who have endorsed this project for many months. Now's the time. Let's move on it and feel good about our efforts. We are depending on each of you to play a major role in the completion of this historic project. Our centennial celebration will forever be highlighted by your decision. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, Emily.
Commissioner. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Peter O'Brien, county commissioner. You know, a couple of you have spoken this afternoon about wanting to bridge gaps and, and make it a working, both city and county working together. And I just want to point out some of the things where we've already done that. You know, the, the county was a huge supporter, helping the city with the sale of FPL. At the PSC meetings, we had a strong attendance there. We had our county attorney there. We wholeheartedly supported that sale and helped move it forward. We also used our lobbying firm to work behind the scenes to help move the sale forward. So we were using our general fund money to pay our lobbying firm to work on the city's behalf. As we speak right now, the Sector 3, or, excuse me, Sector 5 Beach Renewishment Project is one of our top three legislative priorities, and we have our lobbying team working on this as we speak today to get an appropriation for the Sector 5 project, which, as you all know, is entirely within the city limits. The TDC recommended, and the county commission approved, an additional $25,000 to the chamber budget specifically to help market the Vero Beach Airport. And I think because of all of these collaborative efforts, what we have now is that Vero Beach has become a name. It's, it's out there. It's been marketed. We're now known as a wedding destination. We have new hotels under construction. One of them is at the newly named Vero Square. So it, it's ironic that I think that because of the collaborative efforts in marketing and branding of the Vero Beach area, we now have an issue where we're debating whether a parking garage and a parking problem is our problem. It's not that we have a lack of tourists. It's not that we have a lack of visitors. It's almost like we have too many. We've almost become too successful in our efforts to put Vero on the map. My wife will attest to that. She'll say, "You need to quit encouraging people to come here," because she's getting fed up with, with it. And, uh, Councilmember Young, I just want to point out, when you, when you talk about wanting a revenue stream, and I get that. The last time I was here, I pointed out that the Church Coast Sports Commission has documented over the last four years that the activities at Historic Dodger Town bring in about $14 million of direct spending, and that's hotels and restaurants. And that's mainly just the teams, because we don't have any way of tracking mom and dad and the grandparents and aunts and uncles that come. But that $14 million direct spending, they're also paying sales tax. And I've roughly figured out that that averages out to about $80,000 a year of the 1% optional sales tax that goes into the city's general fund. So just those activities at Dodger Town are creating a revenue stream for the city. And with our expectation that Major League Baseball wants to fill that dead summer season, I would think that that revenue would go up. So those activities at Dodger Town are providing you, the city, a revenue stream that goes into your general fund through the 1% sales tax. And then, uh, Councilmember Zudan, I appreciate the fact you're trying to, uh, to reach a compromise there. But I think the county's concern would be that unless we own the land, we don't have certainty in the future. And whether the developer might say he's going to put some space aside for us or not, um, that doesn't, I don't see how that can be binding upon them. They may agree to it now, but if they sell it or do whatever, we lose that certainty. So I appreciate your fact, you wanting to try to find that combination. And with that proposal, you lose all the improvements that Commissioner Solari just, um, presented. The walking trail, the potential pass of stormwater management. All that would probably go away because we only had a portion of that parcel. We would need all of that for parking and couldn't do any of these other improvements that we've tried to outline to be a community benefit. So I appreciate you wanting to, to get there, but I just think the county needs the, the certainty going forward to, um, be able to own the land so that that parking issue hopefully would never come up again. So I just want to reiterate, county has been cooperating with the city on a lot of issues. You know, if you look at where we are now from the Great Recession, I, I think both the city and the county are in good, strong shape. You know, our problems now are not enough parking and too long of a wait at restaurants. So I think we, we have been successful, and I think one way to continue this collaboration, this cooperation, is to, to partner with the county on the sale of the land. Let us unify the Dodger Town campus under, under one entity entirety and continue the successful programs and activity in economic development that Dodger Town has been putting out, and hopefully will increase with Major League Baseball, um, adding additional youth programs. So, um, I would urge you, please, to consider the motion by the mayor, and let's go ahead and move this forward and put one more big hurdle behind us. You know, we did three big ones, uh, back in December, and this would be the, the last one, big one that we have to deal with. So I would like to see if we can't just go ahead, get this one completed, and continue on a collaborative effort working together to make this a great city and a great county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. Phyllis Frye, resident of the city of Vero Beach. The October 2nd, 2018 city council meeting regarding the land use of this property, Commissioner Zork stated, quote, "What we have under land uses is lodging, restaurants, and commercial uses to support Dodger Town. It could be built out extensively, very similar to the other plan," end quote. The "other plan" meaning the proposed developer's plan. There are no guarantees that the MLB plan will be successful. Could we have some numbers, a business plan, something in writing? Because if it does fail, then, you know, it's a lose-lose for the city. Now, I'm no Milton Friedman, but buy high and sell low. I'm not really comfortable with that, but I've heard the comments. But it still makes no economical sense to give this land away at a pittance of its potential worth. I say let the county put a pan, land in place. Put a plan in place for a city-county partnership while the city keeps the land. I'm in agreement with Dr. De Zudan's. This, to me, seems a very workable way to, to negotiate. What, a win-win for all. So the city could negotiate its own position with a plan for the future, a plan for its residents, and, and that would benefit the entire community in keeping the land in the hands of the people, and we could afford to pay off the debt and a return on investment. Our Western populace is growing exponentially, and these suburban neighborhoods need green space for their health and wholesome recreation and sports events. McWilliam Park has over 200 attendees per day in season, and the Western communities have nothing comparable in their communities. So I would say that the land will value, because, appreciate in value because the population is growing and there's less land available. So the less land there is, the more val- appreciable, appreciating it becomes. I'll leave you with the words of Scarlett O'Hara's father in the opening lines of Gone with the Wind. Katie Scarlett O'Hara's land is the only thing in the world worth working for, worth fighting for, and worth dying for because it is the only thing that lasts. Thank you to the county, and thank you to the city for all your thoughts on this very important matter. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Michael Zito, Assistant County Administrator. I had the privilege of negotiating the amended and restated license agreement with the county administrator. At no time did we contemplate, nor does the lease state, what Major League Baseball's intentions are with respect to branding. But if, if I may beg your indulgence for a moment, whether it's the Jackie Robinson Training Academy, whether it's, um, some other brand, it's going to be Major League Baseball's national training headquarters at Vero Beach, Florida. We had 7,000 people at the home show this weekend at the Indian River County Fairgrounds. It was titled, "The Vero Beach Home Show." We are braided. We are inextricably intertwined, and we will cooperate, and we will improve this relationship. But this decision seems obvious. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any other public comment this evening? Yes, sir.
Real quick, last time, there seems to be some confusion and some suspicions that the county wants to build a hotel there. I want to make it clear, we're not planning to build a hotel there. We think the, the restriction language covers that, that we're not building a hotel there. If you need more explicit language, um, we'd, we'd be glad to work that out if that is some concern for anyone. Um, there is no intention for the county to build a hotel there today, tomorrow, 10 years from now, um, if, if that's something that's holding anyone up. Uh, we, uh, I don't have more direction for that, but that is, uh, for the specific language. But I have their intent, and I feel certain that that is their intent, and would offer that if that would help clarify the situation. Thank you.
So Jason, you would have no, uh, issue with deed restrictions if there was a sale? That limited with the type of activity?
The deed restrictions limiting the type of activity, so long as there is, the lease is in place with Major League Baseball, yes.
What about after?
What about after?
That's the proposal.
What about after?
The proposal is, so long as Major League Baseball is there. During the lease, yes.
Just for clarification.
So what... I'm not clear what you mean by that.
It does not survive the lease, is what he said.
Okay. But I mean, but the sale survives the lease. You've sold the property.
By the way, we could put a hotel there today if you wanted to. I mean, if we wanted to. So, today. Wouldn't have to wait 10 years, 8 months. So I have a motion on the floor. If I need to repeat it, please let me know. If not, then I'll ask for a second.
I second that.
Thank you. And Timmy, can we just, for the sake of keeping it on record, can we do roll call?
Can I... Can we make any comments before we vote?
I thought we'd already commented.
Oh, well, I was just... I wanted to make one comment about what was just said at the very end there.
Sure.
So my understanding is that there was a comment made that you couldn't... If there was a developer that the city ended up selling the property to in lieu of this sale to the county, and had some alternative arrangement, that a portion of the spaces were designated for events for Dodger Town, and we would make that part of a deed restriction and a sale. That's not something that a subsequent owner of that property could get around if it was a deed restriction on the property. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
City manager?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So I think that there is a solution to that. And before I vote, the way I vote, I just want to make it clear that we have a... There is already an eight-year lease, eight-plus-year lease. Or, I'm sorry, how many was it? 10 years and 8 months?
10 years, 8 months.
Sorry. 10-year and 8-month lease that is in no jeopardy, whether we sell to the county or don't sell to the county. Okay? It's only in jeopardy if we sold it to a developer and didn't have any way for the county to fulfill their part of the lease of providing 2,000 spaces. So we have 10 years and 8 months, if we chose to do so, to figure out exactly how we're going to meet their lease requirement.
Yes.
As far as like the economic impact and all those things, I totally get it, and I'm totally for it. And I'm totally for Major League Baseball, and I want them to be here. But Major League Baseball never asked, in their negotiating terms, for the lease with Dodger Town. There was never an item in there saying that they needed this property on the west side, this Dodger Town Golf Course property that's owned by the city of Vero Beach. All they said was, they needed 2,000 spaces for parking. And all I'm asking is that we have 10 years and 8 months. I just want to see if there's a better alternative that meets all the requirements, that is beneficial to Major League Baseball and the county in fulfilling their duty, and at the same time allows what's in the best interest of the residents of Vero Beach. And my idea, and you may or may not have seen it. It was explained by one of the reporters from 32963, was that about 500 of the spaces would come from this Dodger Town Golf Course property. And the developer had already agreed that they would be willing to do that. The remainder would come from two properties that the city has on the north side of Aviation Boulevard, which could potentially be leased to the county, and then some additional space at the airport on the areas, those vacant lots that are over there. And I think that there is a way that we could all be... Have mutually beneficial solution to this problem that's better than the solutions being presented tonight. And I don't want it to be taken, when I vote against this, that I'm against this. I'm actually... I'm for the deal with Major League Baseball, and I'm for providing, and I'm for cooperating, and I'm for making a better, improved relationship between the city and the county. But I want to be comprehensive. I want to do the whole thing, and I think there's a better solution. And we can get to it. And if we can't get to it, then we come back here and we vote to sell it to the county. That's my position.
Okay, well, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Timmy, would you take roll, please?
Dr. Zudians?
No.
Colonel Young?
No.
Councilwoman Moss?
No.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Motion files 3 to 2.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming here this evening. Moving on, we're going to go to the next... By the way, we typically will stop a meeting for recess at 2 hours. We have a presentation coming up, so let's get the presentation... Complete the next presentation, which is going to be presented by Keith Drewitt. And then we'll take our break. So if Mr. Keith Drewitt would come up to speak about retaining the city of Vero Beach Marina under direct city management.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you again. For those of you who weren't here last time, Keith Drewitt. I'm a resident of Vero Beach on Eugenia Road. And I'm in favor of the city continuing to operate the marina directly and not via a management agreement or a lease. After the last meeting, Colonel Young and I met with Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Lawson, to answer some questions that they might have about the presentation and to get their input. And so this presentation sort of follows on from their comments and their requests to see a little bit more detail. So no visuals again. So my PowerPoint presentation goes to waste again, but I'll get over that. There are some copies available in the audience. I think Phyllis is handing some out. So I will read a few of the points that I might not have read if the audiovisual had been available. So the way I left it on December 11th was as follows. The marina is a great business, so there's economic argument. And to Commissioner Solari's argument, let's restore it to a terrific maritime gateway, a jewel in the crown of Vero Beach. I thought the notion of paying off the marina debt from the FPL proceeds was right on the money. I suggested that in 2019, council allocate $100,000 for immediate improvements, deferred maintenance, safety, environmental issues. Hire a dynamic marina leader. We know that Tim is leaving us. We have the opportunity to hire a great leader. There's a fair amount of community involvement in this topic right now, so I think we can leverage knowledge and experience and energy in the community. Several people in the room, myself, are willing to put some energy into this. I advocated a $2 million revolving credit line for capital projects to be funded from the idle funds or the liquid funds from the FPL sale. And bear in mind that the city's return on those invested funds is probably going to be less than 2%. Probably less than 2%. So investments in the marina have the opportunity to provide a terrific payback because of the low cost of funds. So the way I approached this following meeting with Jim and Cindy was to separate it in two parts. Firstly, what I call, what's called in the jargon of the turnaround business, low-hanging fruits or quick wins. Increase revenue, improve the experience of people who are bringing their boats to the marina, demonstrate to the community and the maritime community that the city is making a commitment to really improving the marina and bringing it back to where it was. So I broke it down into a number of projects. And this is sort of tedious without the OVAD projector, but let's give it a shot. Site cleanup. We've got kayaks, we've got derelict bikes, we've got rusty trailers legging around. Let's clean them up. Cost lesser $1,000. Slip cleanup. We've got abandoned boats, we've got derelict boats, we've got the East Lagoon docks in disrepair. Let's fix all of that. Total cost, less than $5,000. Wilka has a bid on the table for the East docks at $4,500 bucks, which I think is very reasonable. That brings 15 unusable slips into serviceable condition. That's revenue generating. Dry storage. There are four slots in the dry storage building, which are just used for junk storage, for want of a better word. Clean them up, four rentable spaces. Refresh the bodes lounge. Not competitive in today's environment. As you go up and down the waterway, the bodes lounge is really fairly pathetic compared to what you find around. Launch online reservations. We're one of the few marinas that does not have an online reservation service. This is similar to Expedia or Orbitz, but for boats. These are commercially available. I did some research on the cost. It is request, the cost is zero. Just like Expedia, you rent a slip, you pay a commission. There's no upfront cost. We had add 100 feet of the dinghy dock. It's been overcrowded for years. $15,000. The forklift, I think, is already planned, Jim, for the vehicle refinancing in March or April. $200, $250,000. I'm concerned about safety with the forklift that we have. It's really worn out, needs to be replaced. When you look at slip pricing... So what I've done here is taken this perceived big problem and broken it down into a number of really fairly modest projects. They're modular, they're phased, the effort is spread, and the cost and effort is spread over time. That deals with the upgrade. Ms. Lawson asked me to think about the longer-term plan elements. And her suggestion was that we do a comprehensive engineering review of the marina as a baseline review. I think that's exactly right. The city has approved engineering firms that are good to go. We need to look at the slips, the docks, the piers, the pilings, electrical, plumbing, fire suppression, general safety, dry stack facility and moorings. Once you've done that, then you can start to put together a five-year plan. And my suggestive prioritization for that would be safety, environmental, critical maintenance, planned maintenance, major improvements, and a financially justified expansion, of which there are a number of ideas on the table. So just to summarize where I think we're at, or where I'm at anyway, the city operates two terrific enterprise funds, the airport and water and sewer. Both very well-done, very successful. Really, compared with an airport or compared with the water and sewer district, the marina is not that complicated. We know how to do this, because we're doing it already. There's a consensus as to why the marina has struggled recently. Limited access to capital, for the reasons we all know, the debt service, lack of business and change management and marina leadership skills, and lack of a cohesive plan. Nevertheless, the marina is still very, inherently very profitable. And viable solutions to these three issues have emerged. Capital from the FPL sale, a change in leadership, and the beginning of a cohesive plan to turn the marina around. And there are strong arguments for continuing the city management of the marina. The cash flow is maximized. If you go either of the other two routes, you add a cost layer inevitably, and that's going to reduce the city's economic profits. The city participates 100% in the upside and growth. Both the proposals we've seen so far have very limited participation for the city in the improvements and revenue and profit growth. The city maintains direct control of its maritime gateway, as it always has. There are no RFPs to be negotiated, no contracts to be drafted and negotiated. We can start this tomorrow. The returns will be significant because of the low cost of funds. I referenced that earlier. The community is engaged. There are marina-savvy and energetic people out there willing to help. And the city will maintain its access to $75,000 to $100,000 a year of Florida Inland Navigation District grants, which it may lose through one of the other, one or two of the other routes. That's it. Speed presentation.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to...
Thank you, sir.
I want to say, Keith, thank you for coming here. And Harry, I don't want to jam you. Do you want to take a break after this?
No, because we still are quarter till the hour.
So in concert with the presentation, what's paramount, for me at least, is that we continue to look at ways that we can maximize the income for our city. And this is one opportunity, which is right in front of us, which the only barrier to that is one of having confidence that the city can actually manage the marina. And having had the opportunity to look at the marina, having had the opportunity to listen to folks that have been engaged with us, I think that there's an excellent opportunity that we have before us. And then the other part of it is, there is a catalyst, which simply is, we've let go our city marina manager, and we now have two very good candidates that are in front of us that could execute this draft plan if we got behind it. And the only opportunity that I see that this would be a detriment to Vero Beach would be if we mandate to the next manager that this is where we want to go, and he fails to execute. And at such time, we can then turn to the less lucrative alternative, which is a management firm. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jim, concerns regarding the...
Now, you know that we have that RFP, and I don't know, Mayor, when you want to bring that up. But we have been interviewing candidates and have two very strong, experienced candidates. Either one of them, I think, could take us to the next level if the city wants to stay in the marina business. If not, then obviously the RFP would be the route you'd have to go. Then we'll figure out an interim management scheme for that.
I'm in favor. I'm in favor of the city maintaining control of the marina, as I have been since last August, when I voted against an RFP at that time. So I haven't changed my mind about that. I think we can take care of this. We have smart, dynamic people who are willing to put time and energy into it. And we want to maintain the charm and the character of it while we raise it up. And we can do that. We can do that ourselves. I don't think we want to relinquish control of it in any way. And I don't need an RFP. I said that at the time, and I'll say it again today.
So in light of that, what I would suggest is I can make a motion that we explore and that we proceed with reviewing one of the candidates that we have here to assume responsibility as the city manager to improve the city marina with the plans as suggested here, and...
But I'll second that.
Well, maybe we should hear what other people think on this?
We will.
Well, you have to second for discussion.
If we put it to a vote, we will.
Of course we want to know.
Did you have something to say?
Sure, sure. I mean, my thought is the same as when Commissioner Solari had said why he voted against the Major League Baseball deal in the first place, is because government should not be involved in businesses that could be run better by private companies. And this is not a core role of government. Government running city marinas is not... There's a difference with water and sewer, and there's a difference with airports. And a lot of the airport stuff has to do with the way that... You don't really have private airports. They're really always, almost always run by government. In any event, I am for doing our job, which is to actually look at all the options to see what is the best for our community. And we may decide in the end that we want to do it in-house and, you know, still have the government running our... Running businesses, which I don't think is appropriate. But we may decide that that's the best thing for our community. But our job is to at least review all the options. And going down the path of... We put out the RFP for lease arrangements. We only got two responses. And what we learned in those responses is that a lot of these cities are managed through management agreements where the city still owns and can fire the management company at any point if they like. But you have the option of at least reviewing what an outside professional management company might do. In the process, you may find out things that make... That you decide not to go with a management company, but they may make presentations to you that you find very useful. So having... I am inclined to choose one of them or to go and do a lease arrangement if that's what we think is the best for our community. And I think there's a lot of advantages to that, particularly related to the... to that, particularly related to the city not having to absorb the capital costs of whatever significant improvements we decide to do later. But in any event, to not just put our head in the sand and just say, okay, we can do this, we don't need to even consider the other alternatives, is not doing our due diligence as members of this city council. We have an obligation as representatives of people in this city to actually explore all of the ways that government can best serve local residents, and we need to determine whether it's better to have private industry running a city marina, or whether it's really a core function of government to be running city marinas.
I understand if you want to see, if you need to see that, but remember also, there was a question about section 5.05, and that was that except as provided in the subsection B, parks and public lands may not be solely leased, traded, or given away by the city unless it goes to referendum. So there was, you know, there was also, there's a related legal issue. Regarding to leasing.
Yeah, our city attorney already answered that question.
He's gone now, and you know, lawyers change, you know, different lawyers have different opinions. No, I'm serious, different lawyers have different opinions, we all know that, depends on the lawyer, depends on the attorney, it all can be interpreted.
You know, we've gone down the road in regards to looking at managing the marina, and we found out in review of the last proposals that really, they brought nothing of significant merit to the discussion. And now we have, you know, looked at this significantly, so the idea that we've not looked at proposals because there was extremely detailed proposal that was brought forward to us. So there has been ample review of options available to the city, and we all agree, all five of us agree, that we need to move forward in improving the conditions of the marina. Then the only other option then is, okay, having looked at lease, which there is a lot of negativity towards, the second one would be a management firm, and that was not deemed of any significant merit. And then the third option, which wasn't presented of any detail, is presented now, and that's for us to take the opportunity to turn the marina into what we want it to be, and to allow the city to empower a director to make it as golden as the airfield and as wastewater and water production, and we benefit from the additional revenue.
That's not my recollection of what happened, I think we, all along, and Councilman Sykes had mentioned multiple times that he wanted included in the things that we were reviewing, and all along, we've been talking about the third option, and what we learned, in my recollection, and it was Councilman Sykes who wanted to put this back to a new RFP, to include management agreements, when we learned that the majority of these relationships between cities are related to management agreements, and we should put them side by side and see if we can get some more information. I don't see what the harm is in any way in gathering more information. It's almost like we're afraid that we're going to learn something that's better than the government running the city marina.
Well, the city of Vero Beach for a long length of time, and the citizens in Vero Beach have felt that the marina is a part of who we are, and is a part of what brings people to Vero Beach. So to dismiss the fact that the city should not be in various enterprises denies who we are as a city on Florida. So, you know, I understand the philosophical proposition that we should only be in essential services, but for me, an essential services for Vero Beach is the marina which brings people here and gives us increased property value, amongst many other things.
And who says you can't do it better within a different type of arrangement?
Well, right now, we're in a very fluid situation, since you're leaving city manager, you'll be leaving, and we have, so we have, we're in the process right now for the community, so we need a new marina director and a new city manager, and who's going to tell us when the county's only given us half the story? Like you did earlier, who's going to tell us that? Thank you. You knew, and none of us did, it went back to 2015, it was before our time. But, anyway, I was wondering, you know, what your thoughts are on this, because we, you know, you'll be leaving, so we'll have a new city manager, a new marina director, what, you know, what's the best way to integrate that? And at the same time, if we're doing some kind of RFP, I mean, should the new marina director be directing the RFP? Should the new marina director be involved in this?
You're not going to have hiring a marina director that in 90 days could be replaced with the RFP, so you're not going to find somebody who will manage the RFP other than the city and the city council, and that's why we have the RFP in front of you all to look through, to see if there's anything you see. We try to incorporate what was said at that last meeting, but the question before you tonight, I think, is, or today, is, one, do you want to do the RFP and do the request for proposals, or do you want to keep the marina under your own management of the city? And in the process, because our marina manager's leaving, I felt that we needed to at least put out a proposal to fill that position, and do some interviews to make sure that there were options available. We had two very good interviews in the last week of folks that I think could do, turn the marina around, if that's what you want to do. If you're going to do a management proposal, which is another option, and we've discussed that in the past, if you want to do a lease, and the lease is usually the cleanest way of doing it, because you set out the terms and conditions that have to be met by both parties. But it really depends now, if you say you want to go with the RFP, and both of the people that we've talked to, we've made it very clear to them, this was coming up, they're probably watching, and if they aren't watching tonight, they'll be watching tomorrow when they do the streaming, because I didn't want anybody to come here thinking that they were taking a job that was going to be, you know, here for a while. So they are watching, in both cases, they said, well, we're presently employed, and we're not going to give up our positions to come here to, you know, work for 60, 90 days. I tried to impress upon them, the key was, is that in the first 60 or 90 days, there's going to have to be a lot of progress made at the marina, no matter who's managing it, because that's going to be an expectation. But I think you have all the viable options in front of you, but the one you take, and as we have said in the past, we need to take a course and stay on that course and make it happen.
So, is it, I mean, it sounds like to me that if we proceed forward with the RFP, that's a disincentive for finding the individual that you want that's most qualified for managing the marina.
Yes, sir, we would drop any interviews or any other discussion with anyone, because the RFP is setting a course. And in order to get people to bid on the RFP, we don't want to discourage them for them thinking that we're going to be in the marina business. I mean, either way, you're trying to get quality responses of what you're doing.
There, you and I, can you just, in the event that we do proceed down the RFP and these people become uninterested for the time being, until they see what happens with the RFP process, we do have a contingency plan within the city of how the city marina would be managed with our current city government, is that correct?
Well, what we would do, and the answer to your question, because you and I had that conversation last week, that I would probably go to an interim and maybe find an employment service that would put an interim in there as a manager for us.
Mr. O'Connor, if the RFP, if we did an RFP and we had bidders on that RFP, and but it failed, in other words, we said, you know, they said that, no, we can't make it work, or we said, that's not going to work, as has happened before, could we then just bring one of the applicants in at that time? Or would we have to go back through, just for the purposes of government, go back through that interview process?
I would say you need to go back through the interview process, because I'm not sure either one would come knowing that, you know, there's, the question is, we need to make a decision.
I think he was asking is, if we went through 30 or 45-day RFP process, and, or we didn't get something that we liked, or we decided not to do it, we could always go back to these two people who are interested and potentially talk to them at that point.
Or you could circulate again and find other interested parties.
You don't have to re, you don't have to re-announce the position if either of those two people were still interested.
If they were interested, yes.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying.
I think that's what you're asking, right?
That's exactly right.
Yes.
Both have indicated, you know, they're not, there is a concern that we have a tendency to change our mind, because we don't do, we've already done one RFP, and we rejected that, we're going to do another RFP, they come on, and let's say in 90 days, for some reason, there's not enough coats of paint on the marina, that we do it again, and that's, it's, you know, job security is another issue, because both of them, both cases, these people are going to relocate, in both cases, they're leaving employment.
Jim, do we have any relatively current studies, engineering or otherwise, to give us an idea what the actual cost would be to the city to bring the facility back up to a safe operating condition?
No, and I think that's one of the recommendations, is that we have that engineering...
I just wanted to check with you and make sure, I mean, to me, that, you know, that's the elephant in the room with this whole deal, is we really don't know what it's going to cost yet. I think the damage there, and I'm not an engineer, but from what I've seen over the years and since the hurricanes, is probably much more extensive than you can visibly see.
I've got no idea, I think Jim is right, I don't think there are any recent studies.
So, you know, I...
Let's be very clear, you're going to pay for that anyway. If you bring in a management company, and the F3 people that we have talked to, in their proposal, they're going to expect to recover, but in their proposal, they come to you on an annual basis, say, this is how much we need to spend. The city pays that, it comes out of the same revenue stream, or however you generate, in the long term, the city pays that. Now, if you stayed in the marina business, one of the things that you could do, and I guess you could do it otherwise, if you had a management firm, if you pay off that debt, you free up that $300,000 a year, you could borrow the money and do the repairs and replacements that you need, but I think you really do need the engineering study before all that's done.
The only way to make the capital go away is to do a long-term lease, 25-year lease, otherwise the city's on the hook for the capital.
That's the advantage of the idea of a lease, is honestly, that the city is not on the hook for any of these capital improvements, you have terms in your lease that actually get the things that you want done, and it is, it's way better than a management agreement, it's way better than the city running it itself and paying for everything itself, and you will get a lot higher quality if you have the proper terms in your lease for what they have to do.
And legality of the city proceeding forward with a lease has been questioned in the community, and I expect that that is the most precarious of the three, because the community has a significant concern that that's not allowed without a charter review, so, referendum.
Politically, that may be true, but that's not what our lawyer, our city attorney said.
I mean, if we want to go down the legality of challenges within the community to proceed on a course of action, that's our, you know, that's something we can entertain. I personally think that's fraught with disaster, as opposed to an opportunity where we will have the chance to rebuild the marina and effectively increase the revenues which we need, so.
I was just going to continue, Mr. Drew, thank you sincerely. I know you've put a lot of work and time and due diligence into this, and I really appreciate it personally, thank you. I'm not, I'm not leaning one way or another, although I do think there's a lot of advantage to, you know, the city still being in control, obviously ownership of the property, et cetera. I think the biggest thing for me is twofold in the past, one, we really didn't have good leadership running the marina, and if we found the right person to do that, I think it'd make all the difference in the world. But, but two, I guess my real concern is, we really do need to know what we're up against here, because, you know, to me, and again, I love and respect the plan that you put forward, but, you know, the $100,000 immediately, it's not going to go very far. We've been trying to get that bathroom done forever, and, you know, I think my vision of that isn't, you know, this quaint thing that's been painted over and is still run down, it's, we need better facilities here, where we have a grand-eyed boat traffic, this could be, you know, a good business, and I think ultimately, this is going to cost a lot more than we think. I just want to understand what our plan is truly to pay for it. And I know you've laid a lot of that out in here, and I think that's fantastic, but, you know, I'd really like to have this engineering study done, whether you, you know, proceed with a new marina director or not, I think that's got to be put into place now, so we know what we're up against.
Mr. Sykes, if you recall, the financing structure that I proposed capped the capital financing at $2 million.
Correct.
Because it was a revolving credit agreement, and once it got to $2 million, if it wasn't paid down, then it couldn't go any further. There was a very strong safety mechanism built into the type of credit arrangement between the general fund and the marina fund that I proposed. Secondly, if you look at my list of quick wins and low-hanging fruits, it doesn't even come close to $100,000. This is basic grunt stuff that just needs to get done.
Completely agree that all of that stuff needs to be done, but, you know, I'm trying to look a little bit further down, we kind of dealt with some of this stuff with Leeser Square recently, too, there's a lot of similarities between the two, although the value, for me, of the marina is tenfold, and so I want to make the right decision about what we do with this property and...
Yeah, I'm living on Eugenia Road because I docked my boat at the Vero Beach City Marina 10 years ago.
Sure, exactly. I'm not, I think this could be a great plan, I just would really like to understand what we're up against, integrate that into your plan, you know? I think it's a necessary step. I don't, how long do you think?
Public comment, or are we going to take a break?
We probably should take a break.
Say again?
I think it would take quite a while to do the study, because I think what you're talking about, it's extensive engineering study, and I think we would need somebody there that would help work through the engineering themselves, you know, to...
Who, I agree, someone's got to manage that process, I mean, you know, there's, I don't know, how old are the fuel tanks there? You know, I just, there's a lot of hidden stuff sometimes that you can come up against.
Well, if you take it as factual that the city's going to have to pay the bill, no matter what the bill is, then you have two ways of doing that, obviously, is if you hire a management company and you still pay for the engineering, or if you hire someone that you have confidence in that could carry it forward and carry the ball forward as a city department, as it has been, then more than likely, you could manage that engineering study through your own department head, better than you could through a management firm.
Before we go into public comment, want a consensus, you want to take a recess now, or you want to go through and finish this subject matter?
Finish this.
Okay. Whatever you say, boss.
We'll hang out. So with that, and I'm going to take the liberty of, I'll start public comment off myself, I was speaking with a gentleman who lives here in Vero, I've known him for a long time, and he's an avid boater, and he had some suggestions, and I said, well, you should bring that to city council and let us know what your ideas are. So, anyway, he's out of town and asked if I would read something for him, which I agreed to do, and this is from Mr. John Lerrick, he's a city resident. I'll start off, I'll do this quickly. "To the members of City of Vero Beach City Council, Vero is one of the most attractive towns on the intercoastal waterway, and yet has one of the worst waterfront marinas." It is in my, excuse me, "It is in my opinion not just missed opportunity, but truly an embarrassment to our beautiful city. With the exception of transient boaters who occasionally visit the Vero Beach Yacht Club, the main reason most residents and other transients are at the marina is because it is a cheap place to keep a boat. I believe we need an outside entity to develop and run our marina and waterfront area. That relationship must be financially beneficial to both Vero Beach and the developer. Since the marina runs from the main dock area south past the Vero Beach Yacht Club to beyond the, in quotations, 'in and out,' in quotation shed, we have a wonderful opportunity to have an extremely attractive marina area with new floating cement docks, guest facilities, perhaps a small restaurant or tiki-type facility, a marina supply/gift store and more, perhaps even a promenade along the water, all in a park-like setting. We should try to make a win-win arrangement with the Vero Beach Yacht Club to include it in the planning. This is, this could possibly result in similar dock construction and walkway access along the waterfront in exchange for something to be defined so that the entire area is cohesive, benefiting the marina, the city, and the yacht club. We need a variety of slip sizes with proper lighting, electric, water, a pump-out station, and wifi to attract higher-end boat owners by residents who currently have few options as they were to keep their, as to where to keep their boats, and the hundreds of transients who would... of transients who would spend time and money in our town if our Marina were to be more inviting. With all of this, slip and mooring rates can be adequately raised for profit and profit sharing with the city. Marina development will attract a different clientele who will support not only the waterfront area, but retail and entertainment establishments in our city as well. There is so much to consider, but a beautiful Marina waterfront would clearly enhance Vero's attractiveness and would, as mentioned above, be profitable for the city, our retailers, and entertainment centers. In addition, enhancing Vero's attractiveness would be no doubt, would no doubt contribute to enhancing property values for all of us as well. Respectfully submitted, John P. Lerrick.
Yes, sir.
My name is Paul Colaj-Zack. I am 1546, 29th Avenue. I'm speaking on behalf of my neighbor who also sent me with a letter. I'm not a customer of the Marina at all. They're snowbirds, newly snowbirds for the last five years. They maintain a boat at their house. When they're gone, they put it in the Marina when they are in town. He happens to be on a trip right now, that's why he sent me. But he has the same take that it's a quaint, small community that maintains us, that quaintness is what makes us unique. But he has the opposite, and I won't read it verbatim, but he feels like the Marina staff has always done a good job of what they are providing over there. I do agree, my time over there, I've seen it, it appears fairly rundown. But with what they have to deal with over there, he feels they do a very good job. He would like to see it maintained by the city and not put in private hands. I believe there's just to the north and just to the south of that Marina, there are private high-end facilities for people who want high-end facilities, and that people who are on more of a budget within the boating community can seek this place out and use it. And it does need to be upgraded, but he would like to see it maintained within the park system of this city. I am, I've raised three kids in this city, and I've always enjoyed Charles Parks and things like that. I would hate to see those things go private because when I, when I see they have some of these baseball fields and football fields, people put locks on them, and you can't get in there unless there's a game time. The days of going out and playing catch with your son at a baseball field appear to be over because they're privately owned, somebody has to pay private money to have them maintained, and they don't want people out messing them up, of course. But as far as the Marina is concerned, he definitely wants a maintained city ownership. And I'm in education, I work, I live in the city and I work in Fort Pierce. Just my personal comment is, my, my industry, I'm in education, is run by people in Tall ahassee who have never stepped foot in a classroom. My advice to you would be hire the best harbor master you can find and turn him loose. Let him do what he does best. Let him do his job and not have laypeople dictating what he should be doing from afar. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to make sure that everyone was aware that, that one of the conditions of all this was that it would always be open to the public. So, like the baseball fields you're talking about, and a lot of those baseball fields are actually owned by the school board, and for liability reasons, they can't let people go onto those fields unless they're like the students. So, that's not necessarily because they're privately owned.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mike Johansson, 4506 Bethel Creek Drive. I'm a resident here. My personal feeling and those of my neighbors around me is we'd like to see is keep the Marina. I don't see where you can go wrong with hiring a top, I mean, we all agree that the Marina's had its problems, and they've been in the management area. And sometimes they haven't gotten money when they needed it, and this, that, and the other. That's all done with. Hire a top-notch person. What have you got to lose? Give them five years, get an engineering plan done. At the end of five years, review his contract, and if it hasn't improved, you fire the guy and go right back to where we were before. The answer to bore management is fire the management and get somebody who can do the job. With respect to Mr. Zidane's comment about the aviation, which is something I know something about, is that the comment that the majority of the airfields are government-owned, that's not true. There's 5,194 airports that are paved in the United States. Of those, 3,112 of them are what we call FBOs, Fixed Base Operations, so.
They're not the high-volume airports.
No, they're not the high volume. But you know what? A transponder is still a transponder. If it's a Cessna 172 or United 675, it gets the same service from FAA. So, I just thought I'd say that. Now, if Al Melay were still here, what she would say was, yeah, we had a problem, but let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving, moving ahead, if we could refrain from addressing individual council members, that tends to start back and forth, which I want to avoid. Just address the councils whole, please.
Yeah, my name is Jeff Tyndall, Dr. Tyndall. I live in Riverside Gardens, right opposite the Marina and right opposite the yacht basin. I've been there for 15 years, and I'm a resident. And I have to tell you, I have a lot of data about watching this Marina. Number one, it's not run well, period. It's not run well. Fees are sometimes not collected. Holding tanks are pumped into the water, so we have an environmental issue. Docks, we have cars parked, we have trailers, we have all kinds of things. And I don't see that, as I look at your Oasis and City Marina LLC proposal, which I've read in entirety, I don't see any advantage to having a group like that do this. First of all, Oasis runs Annapolis Marina in Annapolis, Maryland, okay? A really huge group. And it moves down the coast a bit. So, this, this group has got plans that are far beyond, and it requires that we give up a lot of control to a group that would take it out whatever way they think in the private sense would make money. Restaurant, tiki bar, additional people, and so on. What about the residents? What about the area? Well, if you take the Waddell Building and you turn that into a restaurant, you've got all kinds of parking. There's not enough parking there. You'd have to take it from Vero Beach Yacht Club, or you'd have to take it from the dog park because there's no other place to put it. And I just don't think that that's a Vero Beach that I certainly know, and it's certainly not a yacht club that I think most people are going to want to come to. So, I'm in agreement with the gentleman that just spoke before me, and that is management's the key. You really need somebody who manages it well and follows it. To Dr. Zidane, as I say.
We're going to address the entire council.
Okay, it's the entire council, but just the Oasis and City Marina have some good ideas. If you read through that, they outline, and a lot of which has already been done. They have a wonderful proposal in there, which they've gone through all the engineering, they've given you all the data, they propose things. So, perhaps we can steal some of that. Perhaps we can use some of that instead of giving it all up to some group that doesn't have our interests at heart. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse my extemporaneous comments. I didn't expect to be speaking. I'm a new owner in the Vero Beach area. My name is William Edelstein. I'm in the Fairways at Grand Harbor Community. I am one of those boaters. I came here and settled here because of the municipal Marina that I found myself spending more time here as the time went on. By the way, this is known as Velcro Beach. Velcro Beach is where you come as a boater and stick because it's so nice. There were some very old plans that were done, and some very, very ingenious, very minimally expensive things were done in the past that makes this a particularly unusual jewel in the Florida coastline. And it occupies a niche that's only served by a few other places. And nothing, well, your next one further down is Stewart, and that's what your competition is. I hear some very conservative thought in the gentleman that made the original, what is his name? Drew, Keith Drewitt? I think he's very much online. I think you will find that the improvements that need to be done into the Marina are not as bad as you think. And this can be done conservatively and less thoughtful, and less costly over time. So, not really that bad. I also come from my northern home in the summer is on the Chesapeake Bay. We have several marinas on the Chesapeake Bay that suffer these same problems. They've been given under to management contracts. We're trying to still look for one in Hampton to see if we can find somebody who can operate that. These things turn out to get a lot better proposals and a lot of promises, and the long-term results are generally disappointing. I think you'll find that there'll be some false hopes to fruition. You've got some good talent here in Vero Beach. I think continuing the operation of the Marina as, as a city-owned property, I think is well-intended.
Thank you very much.
Hello again. I'd like to thank Mr. Drewitt for his time and his expertise providing us with a successful financial plan that will return our City Marina to solvency. His plan is a beautiful one, and like many beautiful things, it's simple. To reiterate, the city currently shows a baseline operating income of $435,791, excuse me, and a cash flow of $48696. Using these numbers, Mr. Drewitt's plan eliminates the Marina debt and results in the best rate of return. At the November 20th meeting, Mr. Drewitt called for acceleration of loans from the general fund, which can be repaid based upon renewed performance, dollar-for-dollar, for what the funds would yield, invested in the same way as other liquid proceeds such as sales from the post office and Vera Electric. This plan would be structured on a managerial basis only if you decide that, and thus, it would keep the future of the Marina under the control of the city that gives the community a say in its future without violating our city charter or a for-profit leasing agreement. It protects our environmentally sensitive waterfront and lagoon area because we have skin in the game, and from mega-developers that would destroy our parkland and neighborhoods with hotels, bars, and retail, commercial enterprise using high-density population, mixed-use, chock-a-block, compressed, compacted, and condensed development that would put money in the hands of a few, while we forfeit some of the last waterfront on the barrier island at the Chesapeake Lagoon Studies where they have the top scientists to deal with our lagoon problems. Bottom line, after all the studies were said and done, the worst thing for our waterways is super-dense population. So, wherever you find density on the waterfront, you have problems with pollution. But this plan allows us to retain the character of our one-of-a-kind. And I sailed for five years worldwide. I know something about marinas and anchorages. This is a one-of-a-kind, unique brand in Vero, which is a boater's paradise in a parkland, surrounded by nature, secluded and peaceful, an enclave of oaks, palms, and thickly wooded spoil islands repeat with, replete with birds and wildlife. So, in the interest of operating a profitable Marina that is an asset to the community, one that we can keep, I urge you to vote for Mr. Keith Drewitt's financial plan. Thanks so much.
Good afternoon, Council. Linda Hillman, 2315 18th Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. Government should not be in the business of running marinas. Yet not every government has a golden egg, a beautiful Marina, as we do. They don't have the opportunity to increase the revenue by running a Marina. This Marina has not been managed correctly in the past five, 10 years. It's been overlooked. It has, in the past, it has been, it has lack of concern or caring. Money's been taken out of the budget. So, all of this has contributed to its decline. It is a golden egg, and as Mr. O'Connor said, who in their right mind would come here for 60, 90, 100 days while everyone examines another RFP? I know I would not leave a permanent job where I am guaranteed another year, two or three years. So, when the time, when Tim is gone, who is going to run this Marina for us if you're still examining an RFP, if you're still looking at something that you think it can be? When the opportunity is right here now, if it takes more than $100,000 to get the Marina running well, then let's do it. It, and this public deserves us to keep our Marina. So, I support Mr. Drewitt's plan, and I hope that all of you will think about the opportunity that we have to keep our waterfront beautiful on both sides of the lagoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ehrnigens, I feel like I haven't seen you in forever.
It's been a hot minute. 805 Hibiscus Lane. I have lived here since I was eight years old. I've been visiting that Marina since I was eight years old. I believe new management would help. As far as the pollution, if you bring in a big company to do all of this, the spill at Bethel Creek, if something bad happens, what are you going to do? You still can't clean that up. It's time to start addressing the environmental problems, but keep the Marina simple. That's how Vero is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Something that keeps cropping up about this environmental implying that we're not doing pumpouts. I just picked one week out. I get a weekly report on the Marina. One week, this was December 23rd through December 29th, we did 67 pumpouts. We did pumpouts at the fuel dock of 20. We did 47 where we went out to the boats. So, we do pumpouts. This is not something, now, we don't run down, and the boats that you see on the south side of the bridge, we don't send a pumpout. Well, in some cases, they come up and they pump at our dock, but, but we did 67. The other thing that's sort of in the air is that we're not collecting fees. The finance department collects those fees for the boats at the docks. We do it just like we do rentals. If you go to the airport in our mobile home park, and I refer to that as our mobile home park, the, you know, collecting the rent, and that's the same way we do the boats. It goes through the finance department. If you don't pay it, you get dinged for it, and we go out and the collection agency is necessary if, but fortunately, at our Marina, most people stay fairly current on their rental fees.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I agree, we do, we do a lot of pumpouts. We don't have any checks or balances to make sure that folks are actually following the rules, but that's, that's hard to do. I mean, if somebody wants to release in the middle of the river, they're not supposed to do that, but.
And I, but I thought in a week, and those are averages. I mean, and you can go back for the last year and see what, what we have done in the pumpout business because it, it made it sound like people are just opening their systems onto the river, and that's not necessarily the case.
Right. Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Zoske Fuller. I live on 1826 18th Avenue, Vero Beach. Two years ago, my family left our home of Vero Beach for a 15-month-long sailing out of sea. One day, as we were overtaken by another sailboat on the ICW hundreds of miles away, the captain waved and yelled, "Velcro Beach." I was confused, yet intrigued, by this endearing term that I was not familiar with and had never heard in all the 18 years that I have lived here. In our time away, we learned firsthand about the network of the tight-knit sailing community. Recommendations are made, and sailors praise the town of Vero Beach, its safe and welcoming Marina. As a matter of fact, many sailors go out of their way to stop by our Marina since the lack of a close inlet to Vero means we are off the beaten path. After our return to Vero Beach by boat and water, I enjoyed being a tourist in my own hometown and see the allure that Vero Beach offers to sailors and tourists alike. I wanted to keep being a part of Velcro Beach and got the opportunities to start working at the Marina after I applied for a job posting. I love my job. Mr. O'Connor describes us as operational staff, which of course is the right term for Marina job description. In reality, I feel we are much more than that. We are ambassadors for our town. We unbiasedly promote local businesses and restaurants every day by handing out numerous of our welcome sheets and information maps. We lend a helping hand. We lend a helping hand when needed, sometimes even a shoulder to cry on and ensure people feel safe in their floating homes. We are trying to be good neighbors and are stewards of the water by offering a mobile pumpout service three times a week. Right now, there's a staff of five. Two people work there full-time, one of them is our dock master who's going to leave, and three part-timers. We work 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, 362 days of the year, rain or shine. There's a total combined of 60 years of Marina management and operation between three of these folks. The Marina has been a part of Vero Beach for 90 years and deserves to be maintained and have an opportunity for improvement. If given a clear vision and guidance, cooperation, and funding, I believe the current staff has the ability and know-how to maintain and improve the Marina. Right now, I feel that the goals that were never clearly mapped out are the ones that you are judging us by. You are willing to give away power over a financially solvent and successful entity which if given to an outsider, you will have no control over. I hope you can formulate a vision to keep control over the Marina as it is truly a unique asset to Vero Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Greg Page. I'm also a sailor who came to the city through sailing and have stayed at the Marina for the past five years. Recently, we bought a home on the island in Banyan Road and it's been Velcro Beach to us too, so it's really a great thing. Each year that we've stayed here for a month or two or three, the Marina seems to have been getting worse and worse and worse. And my wife and I about a month ago went and visited Mr. O'Connor in his office and expressed our concern about that and asked if there was anything we could do. And since then, I've been trying to get up to speed and study all of your activities and documentation and videos, and there is a lot there. But it seems to me to come down to two things. One is management. I think everybody agrees that management's been deteriorating and we're doing something about that now. And the other is some of the members of the city council believe that we should not be in the business of a Marina and I disagree with that. And if you use the same logic, then if we go to a parking system where it's paid for, then we should sub that out to somebody else and, or lease out the ability to do that. Any other income stream like the airport, you know, we should be hands-off to that too. And, you know, so I think, I think there's a little bit of a difference here with the Marina and how we look at it. It is always going to be a business, but it's always going to be an amenity of the city too, and I think the amenity aspect is much more important. And if you're not sure about that, look at the symbol behind you. You know, if you look at what Vero Beach represents, please do turn around. It's a sailboat and it's the Marina and it's the Berber Bridge and a sunshine and that's what we, or you know, you before I came here, you know, expressed to others that this is what we're about and expressed to ourselves. So I think it would be a mistake without going through a significant effort to consider going outside for management. We have an opportunity to bring in a manager now who can be very, very good. In fact, when I met with Jim, I recommended somebody from Naples that I know you interviewed. If you want, you know, we talked about an engineering study and other ways to get our hands, you know, through putting out an RFP on more information to do, to make good decisions. And I think going out to, for an RFP in order to gather information, you will gather information, but I don't think you'll ever gather as much information as you could otherwise. And I would propose that Mr. Drewett's plan is excellent. The work he put in is, you know, is, you know, highly appreciated, really good stuff. And I think we should hire the Marina manager, begin implementing some of that, but at the same time, look longer term and put in place some, a vision or precepts that will guide what we do in the future rather than trying to agree on pieces of it along the way. So rather than an RFP, I think if we could engage a marine consultant, you know, just as the airport management engaged an airport consultant in 2016 to do a comprehensive analysis of how to go forward, get that going at the same time as hiring a Marina manager and proceeding to repair the Marina. So you don't have to stop one thing to do another, but you know, keeping it in-house in the city, under control, is going to give us another year or two to make any other decisions that will be tied to for the next 25 to 50 years. So, you know, keep it as it is if you can for now and make some well-informed decisions a little bit later.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Ken Dague, 1846 21st Avenue. You've heard from quite a number of folks, they don't want the Marina sold or leased. And let me just point out to our city charter, it is in our city charter, it is a protected property. You all take a note to protect our properties. There's been enough chatter about this out in the community since you guys last talked about it. Folks just don't want it leased to a commercial entity. They like it as is. Yes, it does need improvements. Yes, it can get accomplished. So please do that. Do not lease it, do not sell it because we lose control. You've heard from enough. We just don't want it that way. So please keep it, go forward, do the improvements as needed and possibly hire a Marina director to get, to get the job done. And thank you, counsel, that you indulged all of us tonight and you allowed the presentations before you on the Marina. Thank you.
Brian Hay, Vero Beach, Florida. Thank you, Mr. Young. I appreciate that point of view and it's not the first time that we've heard that some city department just wasn't managed properly. And if you look at the facts, what you find is that we have managers of departments that say, hey, city council, this is what we need. And city council sits down in July at the budget and cuts out everything that they need. So it's pretty difficult for city employees to sit and listen to the controlling body in the city bash them on a very regular basis about not being able to do their job or doing a poor job or whatever when you don't give them what they need to do their job. Keep the Marina, stop the nonsense, hire somebody.
Any other public comment on this matter?
Okay, seeing none, we do have a motion on the floor. Let me just, I didn't say anything before earlier. Let me just say this. I too am of the limited government belief, whatever you want to call it, but in this particular case, I'm starting to get cold feet as Mr. Juergens said, he's been there since evening at 8:00. I've been there, I remember going on there when I was a kid and getting on, off their left boat and I think, I don't think you're allowed to do that anymore, but I'd go out with Marine Patrol and, you know, every Saturday I'd be down there waiting to go and so he'd take me out on the boat and anyway, that's neither here nor there. I guess we've already gone up for an RFP. I don't, I don't, it's going to be very tough for a commercial entity to come in and actually make a profit at this Marina as it currently sits. Granted, they might want to dump a bunch of money into it, but I think even then it's going to be a hurdle. And we've done one RFP and we didn't have much luck. So at least as far as I'm concerned this evening, and Mr. Johansson had a nice comment as well, I thought, you know, you're not stuck with anything really. You hire somebody, if they do a great job, good, you keep going. If they don't, you put it back out to RFP. And so thank you for that. But anyway, that's just so you know my thoughts.
Let me just add one more comment too before we take a vote here. I think as we do a lot of times, this was an exercise in trying to explore possibilities about what the best way to, to approach the issues that we all seem to agree on. And I, and I do think ultimately, you know, because the Marina is such an integral part of the DNA of Vero Beach, that we, we really should retain ultimate control in the long run. And so, you know, I'm in favor of hiring the right new Marina director who could oversee an engineering study and work with citizen advocates like Mr. Drewett in conjunction with our Marine Commission and hopefully very quickly improve the success of this enterprise. So I think the biggest thing's going to be getting the right guy to come in and do that, would like to be part of that process, so.
Or gal.
Yes.
As it may be.
As a matter of fact, the two people that we're very high on right now, one is a female, one's a male, and so we're still working out through that process, so it is not indiscriminate.
Perfect. All right.
And Harry, I apologize, but let me throw something in there. I've said this before and I'll reiterate again. The biggest liability to the Marina over the years has been the resolve of the city council, period. Okay? And so, you know, if, if we lead as we should lead, then the Marina will be fine. And, and I've, you know, I feel very strongly that our community has the wherewithal to make anything that we put our minds to, you know, blossom. And is it something philosophically that, you know, government should be into? That's, I think, a discussion in my mind that has been equivocated over the last 100 years for our city. And yes, we need to look at ways of doing things better. Amen, hallelujah. But in the end, we support the staff that's here and if we see areas that we want improvement upon, then it's, you know, it's incumbent on us, the five of us, to move down that road and I think we're doing that, so.
Yeah, I appreciate Dr. Zudan's point and if we didn't already have a Marina and it were not so much a part of us, I mean, I wouldn't go out and buy a Marina, but, but we have it, it's part of us, it's, it's who we are, really. It's, it's who we are and we need to control it.
Well, I would just almost reiterate, but in a different way, exactly what Councilman Young just said, which was if you're going to rely on government to make the right decisions to run this city Marina, it's going to continue to be the same kind of Marina another five years from now, in my opinion. And that, you can, you can say that, but to, you know, back in the beginning of my term and we started talking, one of the first meetings we had, we're talking about the city doing a remodel of both the leisure square and the, and the city Marina bathrooms, which, which turned out to be the exact debacle that I predicted at the time and I voted against, if I recall correctly, voted against both of those. The, it's just a fact that there are certain things that the government, it's essential that they're supposed to do. Our government has to have courts of law, our government has to, has to have police. We have to maintain, maintain safety for our community. And there are other things that are just essential, like our parks and our roads and our things like that. But we do not need to be in businesses. Government is not here to make a profit off of the citizens. There are some things that are much better done. It's Ringo Starr, of all people, he's not a right-winger as far as I know, said that everything that government touches turns to crap. And it's, it's true, this will, this will not, this will not work out well, the city Marina will not do well and it should, it would be in much better hands if we had someone who, it was their business. And I kind of take offense at something that was said by, said earlier, that these people who are interested in this don't have our interests at heart. These people who made the proposals, and I can't speak for the, the business from, from Maryland, but one of those people is someone who's been in this community forever and they are running a very successful, well-run city Marina up in Brevard County and they were in the citrus business in this community and they've been here for a long time. And I think it was not, not fair to make the, make that statement that they don't have their interests at heart. These are business, business people who would be in our community, doing, running a business just like every other private business. Government does not have to run everything. There are certain things that we need to do and we need to do them well and the government should get out of the way of the private sector and let us, let, let the private sector do their thing.
Thank you. With that, wow, with that.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yes, I seconded it, so.
You seconded it, so.
So, Will, you want to repeat the motion, sir?
My motion is that it simply said that we have a manager of the Marina, of the city staff.
So you're rejecting the RFP proposal?
If we do, if we do the proposal and the motion in front of us, there's no need to do the RFP.
Tony, can you add in there though, for me please, the engineering study?
Without a doubt, no.
The Marina director would oversee that.
Yes, and we will do an engineering study and it would be under the direction of the Marina dock manager and the city manager.
Okay. Tammy, so that we're clear on record, would you call roll?
Yes. Dr. Zudan?
No.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Passes 4 to 1.
All right, so we're going to take a 10-minute recess?
10 minutes?
Puts us back here at, what time is it officially?
9:45.
9:45? So what?
5:45?
I'm sorry.
5:55. We'll be back at 5:55. Folks here who have just showed up from U Sailing and we're glad to see them here. What did I say?
Let's back up the tape.
Okay. They're human-powered, not wind-powered.
I am so sorry. You guys, I mean, I should have known with all the muscles out there. My apologies. This is the, there's a rowing club?
Vero Beach Rowing Club.
Vero Beach Rowing Club. My apologies. And since you're all here, I think we should move you, that's 5A?
5A.
5A up to the next item on the agenda, which will start now, so.
We need the planning director here for this, so.
Jason?
He may not have realized that you were going to move it up, so.
And I didn't realize we're going to need him.
Well, it's a quasi-judicial item where the planning staff has to present.
Why don't we go ahead with the public?
Can someone call him though and tell him?
Yeah, okay, yeah. Can you?
I'll get him.
You'll get him and then, sorry guys, let's go ahead then with Mr. Hesse, Hesse's presentation then.
Yeah, thank you, counsel. My intent was to put on PowerPoint, actually two PowerPoint presentations and one of them shows the beauty of our parks and, and how big a draw that they really are. And the second PowerPoint presentation shows what they need, but the equipment doesn't work, so I'll sit down right now, we'll make it real short. Can you put it back on for the next meeting?
Sure.
When the equipment's back up?
Okay.
So I'll be back at the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that.
When you went out, were you able to capture, I mean, did you get, tell us where you went so I can understand in my mind. Did you get to the parks or the?
Well, I did go to the parks and, you know, some of the interesting things, and I have photos that in the, in the PowerPoint presentation that show, for an example, people that rented a bike with a carriage kind of thing from Gloria's Hotel and came down and they were using Homiston's Park. So even, even the people from the hotel are coming in, hotels are coming in and using the parks, but, and the PowerPoint will show you some of the, the issues that some of the parks have that just needs the council to say, yeah, okay, we're going to, we're going to make our parks look like they used to.
And that was, that came out of the rec, meeting commission recommendation?
The recommission, actually, they, they had a very long meeting and then didn't recommend anything.
Okay, all right.
So.
So hopefully we'll have the equipment back running by the next meeting and.
Yeah, put it on the next meeting and if the equipment's not running, then I'll, I'll bring some photos and we can do it a different way, but.
Okay, I hope it's working by the next meeting, so.
Yeah.
Tammy, could you, could you move that to the next one?
Sure.
We're not doing U Sailing now, we're doing.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Ms. Hesse. Okay. So, and I apologize for that, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, so, and I apologize for that, ladies and gentlemen, my mistake. This is a public hearing on the site plan application for Vera Beach Rowing, number SP 18-00005. Is there any ex parte communications that council needs to divulge? None here? Okay, seeing none, we will swear in the applicant. And other witnesses? Just get everybody sworn in at once.
Anybody who is intending to speak on this beyond these two gentlemen, three gentlemen, also need to be sworn in, anybody who is going to be testifying about this subject.
Please raise your right hand. Do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
Thank you. Okay, real quick, before we get started, Jason, let me just have to read this about the exhibits. All diagrams, photographs, and other exhibits referred to during testimony of which you, or which you would like the council to consider must be marked for identification and kept by the city clerk. And now you can go.
Thank you.
Good evening.
It's good to see you as well.
Thank you. I'll just give a brief presentation, just to give you the staff's, on the staff's report, and then I'll turn it over to the applicant and they can further describe their project. This applicant's request is a site plan approval for indoor boat storage office and training facility. It's a two-story, 14,734 square foot building. The first floor will have indoor storage of boats, second floor will have office and exercise training. The location is in the Alex McWilliam Park. This is based upon a city lease approved in December of 2015. Planning staff, and basically the purpose of my report is all based on essentially a land development code review of this proposed project. This is a public hearing for a major site plan, and the requirement is in the land development code that when they do, when a building is being built in public parks and includes impervious parking, it does have to come to city council. Normally, major site plans only go to the planning and zoning board. As I mentioned, this is in McWilliam Park on the beachside. This major site plan review process, there was an application review by staff, a planning board review and a public hearing, which was a quasi judicial hearing, which the planning board recommended approval, five to zero, and what we have before you is the city council. This is, the future land use is park, the zoning is P2, so this project was reviewed all based upon their site plan and requirements for the P2 zoning. The proposed use is recreational boating. Staff did review it, complies with all land development regulations, it's permitted in the P2 zoning district, meets the FAR requirements, meets all setback, height, landscaping, parking, and stormwater requirements. Staff also reviewed it for site design standards, which is a review of the layout of the parking lot and driveways. The ingress and egress will not result in off-site congestion, and so staff found that it meets the site design standards in the land development code. And we also reviewed it for development standards, which is exterior lighting and waste removal screening, and it meets those standards. You have in your backup, you have the landscaping plan for the project, the architectural elevations, and the site plan itself. Staff recommends approval of the site plan for the Vera Rowing Club with following conditions: no surface water runoff during construction inspections, tree removal application compliance, building height certification, elevation certificate from FEMA, and a final ASBelt survey. And this is a quasi judicial hearing and I can take any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
Yes.
What does the, what's the implication of the tree removal application compliance?
That's just a procedural, they'll have to comply with the, staff's already reviewed it for tree removal, they'll just need to formalize the application.
I'm a layman, so if they take out the oaks that are there, they're going to?
You either have to mitigate, you have to either mitigate by replacing trees or pay into the fund.
Okay.
Will the trees be replaced then? What, I mean, they're, they're significant, they're beautiful, actually, I had taken a picture of them.
I believe mostly what's been removed here is palm trees.
Yeah, you're right, a lot of them are, and I was just asking Vice Mayor, I said, they're all pawns.
There's kind of a grove of palm trees, and I've looked at that in the site, the oaks that are there will remain.
Oh, okay, good, good.
And another question, if I look at the landscaping plan, the site that the building is located on, is that the current location of the, of the storage facility?
Yes, or, no?
Yes.
Or, oh, to the east is the current storage facility, and this is, I'm sorry, to the, to the west, I believe.
So, the current configuration will remain?
Some more room there.
And then you'll add the physical building that will be to the?
The new building is east of the current storage facility. So, when you look at the site plan, to the west of the building is the current storage facility.
The building's towards the?
To the left.
Towards the volunteer ambulance.
Towards the volunteer ambulance?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, I'm just looking at the plan, it doesn't, anyway, I'll take it.
The current storage, I think, is right there.
Is it?
Okay, alright.
There you go. Thank you.
My question has to do with the departmental correspondence, and I am looking at page two of three, where it refers to what is called Yard and Street, and it says required allowed is 25, and it said proposed is 73, and under notes it says exceeds. Would you please explain that?
Meaning they're, they're exceeding the requirements.
In what way? To what does that refer specifically?
Let me look at, you're on page two of three?
On page two of three, let me see where it starts. This is the, this is the departmental correspondence?
Right.
It was the background material for this matter, public hearing.
You're talking about the attachment, where we give the project description?
Yeah, at the top it says zoning slash development review specifications.
Yeah.
Jason, forgive me if I'm wrong, but that, part of that's because they actually are putting a footprint that's less than what they could actually put there, in other words, they're exceeding the criteria because it's a, their footprint is less than what even they could?
On the building square footage, what you're referring to, yes, they are, they would be allowed a building area square foot of 28,000, they're only doing around a 14,000, so they're, they're less. I believe the criteria that Councilmember Moss is referring to is the yard street line, which requires a 25-foot, essentially it's a setback, they're going to be 73-foot, which means they're more than doubling what is required. So, that's why the staff are saying they're exceeding.
Okay. My other questions have to do with the use of the club, and actually, this is not in the materials that you submitted, but I'm looking at the council meetings because we, this didn't originate with this council. I'm looking at the council minutes for the meeting on September 15th, 2015, page two, and this is Mr. Winger talking about the rowing club, and I'll just read it directly from the minutes. He, and this is Mr. Winger, he said, "Since this is public land, he would not want to restrict the public from using it." Mr. Chris Ryan, rowing club fundraising committee member, said that he does not see that being an issue. There are a few other statements, and then it says, "It was the consensus of the council to negotiate a lease with the rowing club." Then if we move forward to, and again, I'm just reading from minutes, this is, these are the minutes of the council meeting of January 3rd, 2017, and this is Mr. Ryan speaking. Mr. Ryan stated that anyone can be a part of the organization. He said, "There is a fee charged to students and adults who are in the program, and they expect to be offering some programs for free in the future. The facility is available to the community, and it is not an exclusive club. The upstairs part of the building will be where the exercise machines will be located. Mr. Sykes asked if there was any opportunity for the public to rent that space. Mr. Ryan said it is possible, but they do not want to compete with the River House." And then just below that, I'm on the same page, it's page 26. Mr. Comment explained that the lease is for 25 years and the rowing club pays $25 a year to lease the property. Mr. O'Connor added that the rowing club is open to the public, similar to the youth sailing organization. So, you know, my question is, I think more recently, we heard that this is not necessarily open to the public, although these minutes clearly indicate that that was the expectation of the council that voted on this originally. I don't know what that means legally, but that's my question, what is the policy of the rowing club with regard to the public and access by the public to this building?
The rowing club is here that could answer that question, but I know that the dock, for example, is open to the public, people are using it to fish off of and to fishnet and that type of stuff. Now, the rest of it, obviously, you have to protect your assets that are in there, but I believe the rowing club would be present to talk and address the issue.
And they can when we get them up there, and actually, if there's no more questions for Jason, we could get you to come up and do your presentation. Jim, as I recall, and I may be wrong, I think when we were referring to what Ms. Moss just read, I think what we were referring to being open to the public is, as you said, was the dock area and not the building itself.
I think it was supposed to be that anybody and everybody could come and use the rowing association. It was open if, again, going back to the U Sailing, people come and they do U Sailing, there are charges for certain things that they do, but it is open to the general public. They can't deny someone to participate in the program.
Right, exactly, and that's not what I'm saying, I don't mean the program, I mean just hanging around the building and the facility for no apparent reason.
Well, that's, yeah, that's another issue, you got to protect your assets, so.
Yeah.
It's not a place to just go hang out.
Right, and we'll have a lot of grown, young people there that don't need, you know, people hanging out, so, I guess.
It's kind of a silly thing, like the idea that you would be able to go in the River House anytime you liked, another, you know, it's like, no, that you have to?
That's right, you have to rent the River House.
Right.
So, okay.
I'll just mention one other thing then, again, this is from the minutes. Mr. Sykes asked about the membership fees to belong to the rowing club. Mr. Ryan explained that for adults learning to row, it is $500, for high school students it is 800, and for middle grade school children it is 500. And this is, again, from the minutes of the meeting of January 3rd, 2017, page 26, 27.
Any other questions for Jason? Alright, why don't we just wait for the presentation? Yep, let's get the presentation then. Thank you, Jason.
I'll turn over to the applicant now.
Yeah, get the applicant up. Don't go too far, Jason.
Yeah, don't. Don't leave us there.
Good evening, City Council, my name's Chris Ryan, I reside at 1985 Morning Line Drive in Vera Beach.
This is my probably sixth presentation to different city councils, starting in 2011.
You got it down solid, right?
Well, it's a different one every time, but I really do want to make the point that we're all very grateful to previous city councils, to Jim O'Connor for helping us, you know, A, find property and kind of leading us through this whole process to the point where we are today, where we're coming to really for our final approval to develop this, this property. So, to start out with, first of all, big, big, big vote of thanks for everybody here. I did give you, well, it was going to be a PowerPoint presentation, I guess things aren't working here, so I, everybody has a copy of this in front of them, and I'll just go through what would have been a PowerPoint, you can imagine, being in color as opposed to being black and white. Vera Beach Rowing is a nonprofit organization, the mission is basically to bring rowing to the Vera Beach and Indian River County community and all of its associated types of rowing. We have a number of different programs we do, the adult learn to row is, we're just in the middle of one right now. The pictures, you can't quite see it because it's black and white, two out of the three people, this was taken a couple of years ago, two out of three people now amongst our most avid members who come and teach other adults to row now, so it's a, it's kind of addicting sport that once you get out there on the lagoon and you experience the joy of rowing, you get involved and stay with it. Moving on to the next page, we have a lot of youth rowing, and they're all here tonight, not all, but a lot of them are here, and we're going to get them home early for homework, so that's good. But it's good for youth, it's good for teaching them teamwork and hard work and all of the whole body, physical sport. And many of these kids, they can speak for themselves, but I mean, most of these kids were not involved in sports necessarily before they picked up rowing. We have, we have many near-term plans for expansion of our programs into the community, many of these require having a facility that we can take people in and teach them on the land, land side of it before we take them out of the water. We want to expand our high school and middle school programs to meet the demand, you can see already, we have a lot of kids. We want to expand existing women's cancer survivor program, we have approximately maybe two boatloads, we take out most Saturday mornings, some women cancer survivors. We want to add adaptive programs for physically, visually, and mentally challenged individuals, it's a great sport to get up people outside, programs for wounded veterans, and we want to partner with existing organizations that either serve veterans in this area, or there's also national organizations that bring rowing to veterans. And we want to add a mentor program for at-risk youth, again, partnering with other local, there's plenty of local groups here that service the at-risk group population, but we, they don't row, and we want to get them into rowing. So, we'll partner with those groups to get them into rowing. You could think of one that involved with the basketball and, so we can get those same kids into rowing. So, let me just go back real quickly with the history, because I know all of you, except maybe one, have not heard anything about rowing, the Vera Beach Rowing organization before, but we did sign a lease with the city of Vera Beach for this property that we're on in 2015. It's a 25-year lease with a renewal period for another 25 years, and one of its terms, and I quote, is, "In furtherance of tenants' proposed use of the premises, tenants shall construct a boathouse, dock, and other capital improvements. Within 12 months from the effective date, tenants shall submit to landlord for review tenants' conceptual plans." We actually divided the plan into two so that we could get operating on the site a little quicker, we built what we call the visitors' area, which is about one-third of the site that you see there today, where you have all these boats stored and these kids operate out of on a daily basis and all the adult programs. So, that eventually will become visitors' area for teams from up north that want to come down south and train. We just had Boston College, 60 girls here this week from Boston College for a whole week, and they've been coming here for years.
So, that's your transit area?
Well, I guess you call it transit, I don't know, whatever you want to call it, we call it visitors, visiting teams. We have, you know, the past few years, we've had between four and five, and we've not advertised this, but if you look at other cities, they're advertising, they're visiting facilities, and we will have the best facilities because we'll have security, we'll have water, we have electric, and we have docks. Most of these teams coming, like Yale, the national championship Yale team is here this past week at C54 training, and they will come here rather than be there because we have much better facilities, I hope. So, we did receive a unanimous approval from Planning and Zoning Department, and this is the, kind of the final step in the whole process, you know, we've been through all these different permit reviews and so on and so forth, and we have to commence and prosecute construction of the improvements to completion and obtain a certificate of occupancy evidencing such completion within 24 months after the date of final approval of tenants' site plan application, so hopefully that's today. So, within two years, we're required to have the building built, and I guess my message today is that we're prepared to do that. So, we already have the docks done, they're already out there, and somebody mentioned, their fishermen use them and kayakers use them that don't belong to our club, there's a lot of, a lot of minnows caught off of those docks. Our plan is to build a beautiful boathouse for the community, and maybe just hold these up, guys, so they can see the pictures there. So, these are artist renderings, the oaks in front of the building, just so you know, they've been digitally removed, but they're not planning to be removed, I mean, the oaks are going to stay there, we're going to carry the boats out through the oaks, so they would stay in front of the building in both those cases there. They did get badly damaged in one of the recent hurricanes, and we're hoping they hang in there, if you look at them today, they look a little scraggly, but hopefully they'll come back. From a funding standpoint, all of our operations are funded by user fees and minimal grants from our, from our donors and community. We do have scholarships that are available for the needy, we have a scholarship fund that's... We have a scholarship fund that's linked to the school lunch program. For anybody, anybody that's in the school lunch program can get partial or full, essentially full reimbursement for their fees we were talking about. And existing members have fully funded all capital needs, such as boats. We've bought a lot of boats. We just bought two today for a tune of $25,000. But fully funded by donors. So, for the building, the phase-one construction, which was the visitors' area, was fully funded, and it's complete. Phase-two construction is going to cost about 2.4 million, including all design fees and everything else, and we have 2.2 million in hand. So, we're ready to go. And I'm very confident, as a fundraising guy here, that we'll close that as we're building. So, we're ready to build right now. So, why is rowing so good for Vero? What's different about rowing from all these other things? Well, you know, first of all, it is different. It's not sailing. Sailing's good, but drawing's also good. It's a healthy and environmentally friendly activity. The protected channels here are particularly good for rowing because we have many places we can go on a windy day like today. We're all out, even with brand-new rowers. We had windy, in the windy conditions today, we found places in the lagoon that we could go completely safely with brand-new rowers. There's a large need for rowing tourism destinations, you know, for these teams I'm talking about coming up, coming down from up north. Other Florida counties and communities are investing in rowing. Saratoga, someone say Saratoga, Sarasota has put in $20 million. The county's put in $20 million into a rowing venue over there. So, that's the county money. For our kids, rowing is far and away the number-one college scholarship opportunity of any sport, especially for girls. This picture, you can hardly see on the right there, was our latest scholarship signing ceremony on the dock for a girl going to University of Rhode Island under a rowing scholarship. And we've not got any, not asked for or received any public funding for the project.
That's good.
Gentlemen, you can drop the renderings if you like. They're very nice.
So, we're hoping that you'll agree it gets our final approval, and we're going to be off and running. And we have, we're at the final stages of negotiating our construction contract, hopefully, and we could be building within a couple of months.
Anyone else pertinent to your presentation, sir?
Well, we do have the cylinder. If you have technical questions related to site plan, our cylinder here, Wesley Mills, is here.
Any questions for the applicant?
Could you explain what the public access actually will be then, you know, based on what I read in the minutes of the previous meetings?
Yeah, I think you have the correct understanding, is that we are open to all. We have numbers of programs where we either do or will have either no-fee access for certain disadvantaged groups, okay? For example, our breast cancer survivor group does not pay any fees to us. Some of them have come in and joined as regular members, but is not associated with that program. But I think you also can understand is that it's not going to be a place where you can go to the bathroom if you want to, you know, use the restrooms on the second floor. That's not going to be an option because we have, you know, children there, and we have custody of the facilities, and, you know, legitimately, we have to maintain some kind of access control. On the first floor, we're going to have boats that are worth, you know, probably half a million to a million dollars worth of boats stored on the lower floor. So, I mean, we have to keep access control of that as well.
Are there any other groups that you offer a discounted rate or special rates?
Is anyone eligible for lunch programs in the schools?
Yeah.
So, that would be like 30% of our schools' students?
Yeah, we have, you know, obviously, we have several people that are eligible, and we have a kind of a graded program where this is either a partial school lunch or a full school lunch. I'm not totally familiar with this, but they're eligible for a scholarship out of our program. And we have a lady from Baltimore that's never been to Vero Beach that put $40,000 into a scholarship fund for that program.
Okay. Well, I'm wondering, is, we're comparing it in a sense to, you know, Youth Sailing Foundation. I know that they offer free sailing lessons. So, in terms of access, public access to this club, it seems, if I understand it correctly, that physically, and that's how I, that's what I understood these minutes, minutes of previous meetings to mean, that physically, there's really not a lot of public access. So, you know, my question is, then, is there access in terms of usability, that people without, and I don't know that it's still 500 or 800, I'm just looking at the minutes from previous meetings.
It's similar to this.
I don't know what the fees are, but is there access in another way then, other than strictly physical access?
I'm not sure what you.
Discounts or special rates or, you know, I mean, how is this not a private club? Because that's what was stated here in the minutes. It was said that it was, it's not a private club. Because remember, you're putting it on public land. So, this is a facility on public land for public use. So, and it was stated in the minutes that it's not a private club. So, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, how then is it not a private club?
Yeah, we don't refer to it as a club. It's a nonprofit organization, which is bringing rowing to the community, and we have a pretty broad vision of what that means in terms of many disadvantaged groups in addition to adults like myself and kids like these here that, you know, we row, we pay our fees and so on. But it's not, anybody, you know, you can come down and join up, and we will give you, you know, there's a discount for the rowing lessons, if you will, for the first eight lessons. It's $150, just to try, come down and try it.
I walk past it almost every day. I don't see, I don't see these young gentlemen because they're in school, is another way. But I see, I see the older rowers, and they all hail and haw.
Open to the public does not mean that it's. Just as a point of information here, we're really looking at the site plan as it conforms to the ground. Their operational procedures should not weigh in on the decisions of what you're making a decision on tonight.
Not to mention, in fact, we've already approved the lease, so.
Correct.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing.
No, I understand that. That's why I.
We got to stick to.
That's why I asked initially, because I know we were just here to enforce the law and not to legislate. And so, I was asking, since this is, was in the minutes of previous meetings, is that a concern? I'll ask our acting attorney.
No, at this point, you're strictly looking at its compliance to the Land Development Code, whether or not it meets the compliance with the Land Development Code. The lease document was where they addressed the issues regarding public and private use. And the lease specifically says that the tenant shall only occupy or use the premises solely for the public and civic purposes specified and similar related functions. Tenant shall be solely responsible for the operations, management, and maintenance of the premises consistent with the lease. Leeward, it goes on to say, the dock lease area and proportion of the premises, as depicted in Exhibit B, shall be open to the public without charge when not in use by the tenant. So, it was the intent that the ground areas, the dock, are open to the public, but the building and secured areas are under the control of the, of the rowing group, and, but that's not relevant to this. It's just strictly whether or not they meet the Land Development Code.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for applicant?
I just, in all that we're doing, I think we're, my cohort is addressing, is you've already got the, we anticipate, at least I anticipate, that this will go forward, okay? What we're trying to understand is, from a community perspective, an articulation of the program that you'll be putting available to the community, okay? And that'll allow us to be ambassadors for your organization as we reach out to the community, because most of us, all of us, in fact, interact across the board, so.
Mr. Young, my apologies, we do need to stick with what we're here for, though. The vice mayor is correct. This being a quasi-judicial hearing, we need to, we're here to approve a site plan or not. In fact, back in 2015, while I was on council, we did go through the ins and outs of how this operation's going to work and so forth.
Okay, if we want to avoid the opportunity.
My apologies, I'm not trying to be argumentative.
If we want to avoid the opportunity, so be it. Thank you.
I would just add to that, perhaps we, as a city working with such an incredible nonprofit as yours, maybe there's some ways we can help get some exposure through the New City website. But again, let's get back to the site plan here, please.
Sure, and thank you very much for your presentation.
Just last, say, we are planning our grand opening in conjunction with the city's centennial, including some kind of a centennial race and so on. So, yeah, we're going to try and do as much as we can to partner with the city to, you know, help the city and.
I'll speak with you offline.
All right, that's fine.
Very good.
We've got a tight schedule then, to get it.
Oh, yeah, we got to get going, right.
I don't imagine, because the staff's recommending that we go along with this, that you have any sort of rebuttal, right? Right, so, okay, I figured. Summation from the applicant? Do you have a summation? We just heard it. I imagine you don't have it, that was it. Staff, nothing?
Motion to approve. Or do you have to do specific language?
We need some public testimony.
Oh, okay.
We do need it.
You do?
If there is any.
You have to have been sworn in.
And he was, I saw, you were sworn in, yes, sir.
He's sworn in.
I saw it.
She's looking out for me. Shoss is always looking out for me. My name is Austin, 1065 27th Avenue, Vero Beach, Florida. My name is Austin Mark, I'm the director of the club, but also a member of the public. I wanted to indicate that the opportunity for our kids, primarily, but also for our masters, without question, is the exposure to this wonderful sport that we all love and then hold very dear to our hearts. I think that in response to some of the questions and concerns that were, that were brought up, first and foremost, the opportunity for our youth to get recruited, as Mr. Ryan said, is so much higher than any other sport in Vero Beach or in the United States of America that it's actually worth noting. Your chance of getting recruited as a football player or basketball player, less than 1%. And your chance of getting recruited as a rower, as a male rower, are 20%. And that is of senior rowers, senior boys who are rowing, they have a 20% chance of recruitment, whereas a football player is less than 1%. So, just that right there, to give that opportunity to our kids here in Vero Beach, is tremendous opportunity. For women, it's even better. For women in our, in our, in our sports, a 55% chance of recruitment. And in my experience in 15 years of coaching, I've never seen that number below 50% for recruitment for athletes. Again, in comparison, a softball team might have about a 1% chance, so, or a soccer team might be the same thing. So, that opportunity is huge. Moving into that, I think that the exposure that this gives to the environmental, obviously, aspect of the river, our athletes are there every day, they take special care of their boats and are very clear and open to being part of the community in any way they can possibly be. So, I know that as a member of the public, but also as a director, I think this would be a tremendous opportunity for Vero Beach and look forward for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I'll consider that part of the applicant presentation. Do we have any public testimony?
Sorry.
Since you are the, you're the president, correct?
Director.
Director, okay. Well, any public testimony? Okay, seeing none. Any discussion with council amongst ourselves?
I just, we could probably wait till after or before, but I just want to say, I have two children who went to St. Edge, who were very involved when they had a program there, and it's the best sport. I loved it better than any of the other sports that my kids played. They had a lot of colleagues in the school that got into universities that they wouldn't have gotten into if it wasn't for the rowing. And it looks great in the community, seeing racers going up and down. I live right by there, too, and I love to see all those, all of them out there learning. I have, I gained some weight last year, and I need to find something to lose some weight, so I think maybe I'm going to be one of the adult. And I just, I think it's actually incredible that you raised all that money in that relatively short period of time, and I'm looking forward to see this going in.
So, I move that based on the competent substantial evidence presented and the applicable code provisions, we grant the application and adopt the ordinance as proposed.
You don't need the language and adopt the ordinance.
Okay, perfect. Adopt the ordinance.
Second. Okay, Jamie.
Dr. Zidanez?
Yes, after annoying Councilman Sykes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howe?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Thank you, thank you all for coming. Okay, where are you going?
I'm not 100% sure, but we're definitely not off the first page.
No, that's true.
Yeah, absolutely, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, guys, I apologize, we've got a long night ahead, so we're going to clear it out of the chamber here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, on to public comment. This is general public comment. We're there now.
Hendrick for something? It's awfully quiet in here suddenly. Hello again. I wanted to speak about our parks. And I want to say that if you've been following the newspapers, there are a lot of articles almost daily coming in about our neighbors to the south especially, which that sort of thing moves up this way, that our land assets are under siege. The newspapers are filled with this trend in Florida for local councils and boards to surrender park lands and public lands to developers in order to put millions of dollars in the pockets of a few, while the public is forced to relinquish its land. It happens all the time. And if certain developers see our green spaces as red meat, there are always politicians that are eager to serve them up raw on a silver platter. Not that our council would ever do such a thing. But with regard for protecting our local park lands, we now know we have a 14,743-square-foot two-story building that will consume 1.43 acres of McWilliam Park. This would give away irreplaceable land. It could be a shrine to Mother Teresa, I don't care what the building is. The fact is that this is irreplaceable land for a pittance of over, I believe the price was about $600 plus per year for the next 25 years. It's a quasi-private club. There are terms and conditions that would exclude people and admit others, but that's beside the point. Unlike the dog park, unlike the dog park, it is an undeveloped, environmentally protected space, open green space for all, free of charge. So, my question to you, and we must ask ourselves, is how many brick and mortar buildings are we going to allow in our parks parcel by parcel by parcel? Once precedent is set, and it's about to be set, you can't say no to another and another and another. So, when is enough enough? Thousands of residents signed a petition saying they do not want commercial enterprise or more buildings constructed in our parks. They packed this chamber again and again with their pleas for you to save our finite parks and green spaces from development. The highest and best use of our parkland is the legacy left by you for future generations. Each one of you can go down in history as a council member that preserved and protected our parks in perpetuity. I know that two or three of you are dedicated to leaving that legacy, and I would hope that at least all of you would want to be part of a land remembered. Thanks so much, and good night.
Thank you.
Ms. Frye, just out of curiosity, I agree with what you say, and you have every right to speak about any topic you want during public comment, but I was just curious why you didn't speak during the public comment portion of the quasi-judicial hearing.
You know, I went, Barrett, I went to the restroom, and I lost track of where we were in the.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Ms. Frye.
We're clearing that out.
It wouldn't have gone over well.
Well, council members, I'm still Brian Hedy, and I still live in the city of Vero Beach, and I would have spoke at the prior, but you kind of said it was limited to just the site plan, and then even council members talked about things that weren't on the site plan. But what I would have said was that I don't have a problem with you approving it, I'm glad you approved it, but I think that there needs to be a pretty clear direction from the city council that they're using taxpayer land and that no child should be left out because they can't afford some pretty steep fees. There needs to be scholarships. No child should be left out, no citizen should be left out because they can't afford those kinds of fees. And I know, having a family member in rowing, I can tell you that it's an expensive sport. Anyway, on the, on the agenda, on the consent agenda, you have municipal elections agreement. And as you all know, I'm a candidate in the February election. And my concern is that we had an election one time. And my concern is that we had an election one time where there was questions about whether somebody was qualified or not and there was nothing done until after the election. And then after the election, a citizen filed suit and we went before the judge and that council member was thrown off. So I just simply like to know, am I a qualified candidate in the election? My name's on the ballot, but your city attorney signed a letter on September 7th saying that I was a qualified candidate and then on September 11th, her initials appear on a document, it's a memo to the canvassing board, that says I'm not a qualified candidate. So I'd like to hear from the city attorney's office. Am I a qualified candidate or not?
Didn't the judge order an election?
No, the judge agreed to an out-of-court settlement.
He ordered, he set the date of the election and everything. So it would mean you're...
No, you set the date of the election.
The city council would like me to address the question and answer the question.
Has he requalified, Mr. Hedy?
He is on the ballot, he is qualified. There is a difference between being qualified and eligible and the other candidate was not eligible, that's why he was able to be challenged after the election.
Thank you.
Okay, well, here's my question. You say that I am a qualified candidate, that's your legal opinion at this point?
My opinion is that your name is on the ballot.
See, there's a problem here. My name being on the ballot doesn't necessarily mean that I'm going to be a qualified candidate. So somebody's going to say, well, no, I'm wasting my vote because you're not a qualified candidate and we've got a city attorney's opinion saying that you're not a qualified candidate. I've done nothing to change any of the paperwork that I've submitted.
Tammy, is he requalified? Do you know, are you, Tammy?
His name is on the ballot.
But see, that's not the question.
No.
The question is not whether my name is on the ballot. Have I done everything?
The judge ordered for all the names that were listed on the September 7th election letter to be on the ballot for this election. That is what we're going with.
And so if he's on the ballot, that qualifies him to potentially be elected on the Vero Beach City Council?
Correct.
So it's the opinion of the city attorney's office that I am a qualified candidate?
For the purposes of the judge's order, yes.
So the six of us are...
Yeah, but you do know the dancing around the answer. You still haven't gotten from your city attorney whether or not I've met the qualifications because if I haven't met the qualifications, then I'd like to do whatever is necessary to meet those qualifications.
And I think the court's decision in proceeding, no, come on now.
I didn't say anything, I'm waiting.
The court's decision sets the precedence for the six of us to run for election. And I think that's the finding.
And because you're on the ballot, that makes you a qualified candidate? With the potential to win a race.
Right. There's no question, if you get the most votes, you're on the council.
Yeah, top three.
So what's the question? Is there ambiguity there?
Well, yeah, there is, Tony, because just having my name, we went through this with the Charlie Wilson thing.
All right, so your concern is being elected and then somebody challenges you.
And somebody challenges that I'm not a qualified candidate, so...
And so then the court's decision becomes the basis by which you defend yourself.
The court did not decide, yeah, the court did not decide.
Again, there were two different...
It was a settlement, the court didn't decide.
There's two different issues, qualification and eligibility. Eligibility was the issue with the previous council members' ability to sit on the council. That can be challenged after an election. Qualification is how you get onto the ballot, that cannot be challenged after the election.
So after the election, it's your legal opinion, after the election, no one can challenge the fact that I... You had, when you wrote your memo, you said, "I didn't qualify because I hadn't signed a paper during the qualifying period." Is that correct?
But let's not go back, let's not get too deep in the weeds. You want to know if you're qualified?
I'm not trying.
I know. But you want to know if you're qualified for the next election that's coming forth, on the 26th of February, if you're qualified.
Well, if the reason for me being removed was because I hadn't signed a document during the qualifying period, and I think that Laura Moss has pointed that out numerous times, if that's the criteria, then someone could challenge after the election, and all I'm saying is that, you know, if that's the city attorney's position that documents weren't signed during the qualifying period, then I would just like to have the opportunity to come in and sign the document, you know, open up whatever for a couple of days so that candidates can come in and sign a document so that we can all be sure that we're signed and we're signed on the right date, not, you know, after the fact. Because I don't want to waste a lot of time.
She answered the question, I think. She said that you cannot challenge a qualification after election, you can challenge eligibility. So if you didn't really live in Vero Beach and someone could still challenge that after the election, but if you lived in Vero Beach and you were qualified, I mean, that's pretty straightforward. I'm not a lawyer, but that's what she said.
Well, no, all she said so far is my name's on the ballot. If she would say what you said, I'd be happy.
No.
I think he just repeated what I said because otherwise he wouldn't have known to say it.
Okay, so it's your opinion then that I meet the qualifications that the city sets forth to be on the ballot?
For the purposes of this election, yes.
I'm satisfied with that.
There you go.
I see you as a qualified candidate.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hedy. Public comment's still open? Yes, ma'am.
Can I make public comment on the parking issue? Do I have to...
You've got three minutes to speak about whatever it is that is on your mind this evening.
May I approach the council with some...
And your name is, and you live where?
My name is Mary Sue Walker. I live in Vero, I live in the county, but I own Cravings and Beachwell on 3143 Ocean Drive, 3149 Ocean Drive. My husband and I have been in business here for 35 years.
Okay.
May I give the council some factual information?
You've got three minutes.
A reason to not go forward with paid parking and a reason to build a tastefully designed parking structure at Hummiston Park. Dunedin, Florida is a west coast seaside town with approximately 37,000 residents, a quaint little downtown with shopping and many restaurants. It is a people-friendly community full of parks and recreation and bode. They have a beautiful marina there as well, very similar to Vero Beach. I would like to share my conversation with you that I had with Bob Ironside and Danny Craig, who are on the Economic Director Committee, and Kim Platt, the president of the Merchants Association in Dunedin, Florida, and their advice to the city of Vero Beach Council. In 2016, against public outcry, the Commission and Local Parking Task Force decided to try paid parking. They needed a parking structure and had been kicking the can down the road since 1993 and thought using paid parking as a way to fund the parking garage was the best solution. The public was against it, it caused great angst and stress for everyone it touched. Retail businesses reported a decrease of 20 to 30%. It caused great inconvenience for the patrons trying to use the system. The community retaliated against the merchants, restaurateurs and the commissioners with disparaging comments and boycotting downtown. Kim Platt, the president of the Merchants Association, who was actually in favor of paid parking, gave a report to a group of community members after a 16-month trial of the parking kiosk and was shocked at the amount of anger directed towards her. The commissioners, merchants, association and Parking Task Force agreed to take full responsibility for not listening to the community and stopped the use of paid parking and all parties came together to support and find a way to build a parking structure. The city didn't own any property downtown, so they partnered with a developer and built a mixed-use garage in about 15 months. Parking structure is working and they are planning on building another one right away. I just had these conversations a couple of weeks ago and then another follow-up call this week. So to the council, as a business owner, as somebody who is very concerned about this community, everybody has done a wonderful job bringing people here, everybody. Dodger Town will bring more. People come to the beach for a reason. We need more parking. The only, my advice to the council, prepare this community for the future. Stop with solutions that don't work and cause angst. Build the garage with bed tax money. There is a way. I'll come back up and do that in another three minutes. 32963 is part of Indian River County. It produces a very large portion of the tax money and bed tax money in this county. The beachside area is an integral part of the city and county and needs help in solving this parking space problem. Consider building a mixed-use garage or not, but with the bottom floor available from Farmer's Market on Saturdays and possibly consider a garage at Hummiston with a rooftop restaurant on it.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Thank you.
If you need more time, you can seek sponsorship from one of the council members and have a presentation.
Thank you.
In which time, you'll get 10 minutes for that.
Thank you.
I'll sponsor you if you would like to come back to the next meeting. Something new?
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Robert Nelson. I have a boutique out on Ocean Drive, not too far from Mary Sue Walker's and I don't want to reiterate everything that she just said because I'm speaking on the same issue regarding the idea of parking out there and I don't want to waste the council's time. But my store is called Allure, it's at 3123 Ocean Drive, and I have some friends that have a store in Dunedin and they have personal experience about what happened when they put the pay parking system over there. And it really did a remarkable job of damaging the business in the downtown area. I had a long letter here to read, I don't know, you know, it's probably less than three minutes, but I'm not sure that it's the best way to...
You can enter it into the record if you want.
Okay, as a matter of fact, Mary Sue gave you guys, and it's in there, if you guys would take a moment to read it, I'd appreciate it. And I won't take your time right now because it's going to be a long night already, I can tell for you. But I did want to say that there seems to be a school of thought that the wealthier people, the customers that people want out there are not going to object to this pay parking. And that was not the experience over in Dunedin. In other words, a lot of them didn't like the hassle of it, you know, the parking booths where you have to give them a credit card or pay with your license plate number, et cetera. It was just that you have to put an app on your phone for some of these things.
And there's a reason they got wealthy.
Well, yeah, there is that. But also, it's the headache, in other words. And if they're going to go to that much trouble to pay to park, they feel like they may as well go to Worth Avenue or go someplace else and shop in bigger cities where parking is an issue. One of the charms of our community is the fact that we don't have to pay to park and such. And I believe that she is correct with respect to, I refer to Mary Sue Walker, that she is correct with respect to the real, only solution is to increase the amount of available parking. The parking lot across from Hummiston Park out there is probably the only available land. The city already owns it, which would make it more cost-effective than trying to acquire something. And I'm not sure that we can leave the bottom floor or the upper floor. I think in order to make it cost-effective and get enough spaces, it probably needs to be an entire parking lot, you know, the entire building, but that's a matter for, you know, further study by engineers and such, I'm not an expert in that. But I would like to see more parking spaces added, but I really think that adding a pay system of any sort is going to be counterproductive and not beneficial for either the high-end stores, you know, a lot of the high-end stores that think, oh, our wealthy clients will be happy to take care, you know, to pay and it'll keep less affluent people, you know, from taking up their available parking spaces. And I'm not sure that's really the case. So thank you for listening to my point of view.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I would just also add that I think that the city council got the message that people, or at least a large portion of the population, there were people who were coming in here who were business owners, like you mentioned, like was mentioned, that who said they didn't want paid parking. I just wanted to point out that in the entire process, and probably people think that I said I was for paid parking, I challenge, and I don't think it's true, but I'll be corrected if someone can find it, any time when I ever said that I was for paid parking. What I said was, we should explore it along with all the other options and look at what we're going to do and we should get all the details. I also asked the question, how do we pay for a parking garage without some kind of revenue stream from paid parking? So I'm personally not, nor did I ever say I was in favor of paid parking, although that's being, that's not the way that's presented often when these conversations come up. So I would just say, there's been, I think, for me and for everyone else up here, we heard that paid parking is not going to fix this, but we still have a problem that we haven't fixed and it's been talked about for year after year after year and we do need to find some solutions. Parking garages are not cheap.
Indeed. May I have 30 seconds to respond to that?
Sure.
The beach area generates an awful lot of this bed tax and this other money.
We don't have access to that. That's controlled by the county government.
I understand, I understand. And I heard that earlier and I understand, I do believe that you were correct in your assessment with respect to the state laws governing, you know, the use of that money. And it seemed clear to me, excuse me for being opinionated, but I do believe you were correct there and it would only take something, perhaps that could be a negotiating tool with the county government to give the city of Vero Beach access to the funds that it's rightfully due. The hotels and the restaurants on the island actually, you know, bring in a significant amount of tourist bed tax-type dollars and things that are, you know, actually not from our community and why shouldn't the beach be allowed to utilize those?
You're preaching to the choir here. We agree, but, and my whole point of voting against the sale to the county earlier today was, that was a huge part of it, is that that is our only piece of negotiating leverage to try and get that. And so it has to be a big, it has to be part of that discussion, that at least this concept that bed tax dollars can be used for parking related issues. So, you know, we want to do it. I think that probably the solution to parking is going to be a parking garage and is probably going to be a partial, if we can get it, a partial contribution from bed tax money if we can negotiate that. And the other part is going to be the businesses that are over there, probably like a tax assessment to cover their, to the extent that they don't have sufficient parking for their employees and their customers, we have to figure out some way that they pay their fair share. I mean, they're the ones who are going to benefit from it and...
May I ask that somebody on the council possibly researched the true legality of that, actually ask the city attorney or somebody?
I already have asked the city manager and it's been done before. I actually have a business on Royal Palm Point. When they did all the improvements to Royal Palm Point, we had, our business had to pay a portion of all those, it's an assessment, it's based on things that benefit your business in a specific area.
Oh, sure. No, I didn't mean with respect to the assessment, sir, I'm sorry. I meant with respect to the allocation of the bed tax funds and that's all contingent on the fact...
That's all contingent on whether the county agrees to it.
Kind of what allowed to do it. But if they were to be allowed to do it, would it be allowed, would you be allowed to build a parking garage with it? And from what you read earlier, it sure seemed like it would promote tourism and allow more people to visit and, you know...
I've been working on this for the last two years and if you would like to receive copies of the correspondence that I've sent to the county commission in this regard, if you want to give your email to the city clerk or send her an email, then we can forward it to you.
Thank you.
That way you'll know everything that's gone on for the last two years. It's been a, it's been a long process trying to get access to our own funds. And by that I mean the funds generated within the city should stay in the city.
I understand. Thank you.
And they don't.
And I suggest you do. Get in touch with her.
Yeah, or send me an email. It's just my name, L. Moss, M-O-S-S, at COVB, cityofvero beach dot org, and I'd be happy to speak with you.
All right.
I've been at it a long time and you could use a little encouragement.
Thank you all very much for listening.
Thank you for speaking.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Jim, if you would, before, actually before you get started, just to let you know, I'm going to pull item B for discussion. So when you're finished going through that.
What I'll do is I'll just skip over item B and then...
I need to, and I have questions on A and... I need to, and I have questions on A and F and B also, so...
We'll just go down and then you can ask the questions.
Okay. That'll be fine.
Item A is a municipal election agreement. This is the contract with the supervisor of elections that allows the municipal election to take place.
Okay. I have a statement to make about that and it involves questions because I don't know what we're actually getting. And I've already had a conversation with the city attorney on this, so I'll ask her to comment after I've made my comments. A lot of people do not know that there is a second or so-called special election. And I expressed concerns about this. I know Mr. Hedy also has expressed concerns about this, but I expressed them to the Press Journal and this is back in September, on September 23rd, when we were talking about this. And I'll just read it. This is from the newspaper article. But Moss said she had concerns about how the special election would confuse voters. I have an issue, and this is quoting, this is what I said, "I have an issue with anything that undercuts voter turnout. We could reach a historical low in voter turnout in doing this. Swan," meaning Leslie Swan, our supervisor of elections, "agreed voter turnout likely would be low during the special election." And this is quoting Leslie Swan. "I think people are going to be confused." And I'm still quoting the newspaper article. "The situation has never happened before in Vero Beach, city officials say." So, I know from my own experience and you think that, you know, maybe it's a good thing you have your signs out, but people don't realize why the signs are out. And I learned that just the other night, Sunday night. I'm standing on Indian River Drive East with a sign, and I have permission to place it in a yard. And God bless them, I want to thank this couple, they're driving by and they stop, they see me, they roll down their window, and they're offering to help me, which is very sweet. I don't know them, God bless them. But in their offer of help, they say, "Oh, do you need help taking down your signs?" And I said, "No, we're putting up signs." And they said, "Well, why?" So, even people who are supporters and who will even reach out to a candidate, they, nobody knows about this election. I go a lot of places and even people who have seen the signs, they don't understand. So, a big part of it, I think, will be how we handle it. And I wanted to just go over what happened on November 6th, not the legal part of it.
Just out of curiosity, you have a whole nother thing about the city council elections. Is there an issue with the municipal election agreement that we're talking about right now?
Yes, because you're going to vote on what's covered. And what I don't see covered, I think is problematic. So, if we look at what happened on...
Can you cut to that part? Because we know all this other part.
Sure.
We're aware of the special election.
That's what I'm going to do right now. Sure, sure, absolutely. That's what I plan to do. But at any rate, for people who don't know what happened, and that's a lot of them, on November 6th, Election Day, there were a total, total number of votes cast was 13,996 votes, so it's almost 14,000 votes. On election, of those 14,000 votes, on Election Day itself, 4,910 votes were cast, or 35% of the votes were cast on Election Day. Vote by mail was 5,234, or 37% of the vote. And early votes represented 3,852 votes, or 28% of the vote. So, if you look at those percentages, the percentages represent only approximately 1/3 of people actually voted on Election Day.
Ms. Moss, what are you trying to accomplish with all these figures? Is this a campaign thing that we're doing here or is this, I mean...
No, I think what you're voting on does not include early voting. That's why I'm asking. You know, what are we spending? Do you understand what you're voting on here? What are we spending? What is this...
We're spending for the polls to be open, the ballots to be printed, cast, counted.
Does it include early voting?
Sure. Yeah, in fact, the...
No, it does not.
It doesn't?
No, absentee ballots and day of voting, which is what it is in the off-year elections. Is that correct?
Except when the county, when it's a county election, then early voting is included, but they pay for the cost. We do not pay anything additional. Now, when we have an election and it's just a municipality, then early voting is not included.
Right.
I see.
That's basically when I ran and when Harry ran.
Correct.
Right, okay.
So, this is, this is part of the conversation I'm trying to have, which is to make it, quotes, "fair," which is what some people said, the people who vote, and by the way, for the community, I did not vote in favor of this and neither did Dr. Zudans. Mr. Young, Mr. Howell, and Mr. Sykes voted to have this, you know, so-called special election. So, if you even want to make it similar topographically, what we're about to vote on, we would need to add $4,000 to it to cover early voting, which would be for eight days. And I got that from Leslie Swan. So, you would need to add that amount to it. And I'm not sure what this amount, this amount is, it's $2 a vote. In a regular election, this is for the community, in a regular election, municipal, which are held in conjunction with county or state elections, it's 50 cents per registered voter. But in this election, it will be $2 per registered voter. So, does that, does that work out to about $25,000, do you know?
It's right at 24, 25.
Okay. So, we're already at, we're at 24. That does not include early voting. And vote by mail, I had a conversation with our acting attorney the other day. My concern is, I know people who usually have their ballot mailed to, say, Wisconsin, but it could be anywhere. Because remember, vote by mail is not forwarded. So, whatever address the supervisor of elections has for you, that's where the ballot will be sent. Now, some people might be one place in early November, but then they're here in February. So, say their ballot then gets sent to Vermont or Wisconsin or wherever they would be in November, whatever they have registered with the supervisor of elections. So, that's problematic and I urge people to, if you are going to vote by mail, I think it's easier just to vote that day, which is February, Tuesday, February 26th. But if you are going to vote by mail, you want to be sure that you know where your ballot's being mailed. And a lot of people don't even know about this election, which brings me to my last point and then we can talk about early voting. And I got this number also from Leslie Swan. And usually, her advertising budget, and I'll just read it. This is from, this is from Leslie Swan. "Our advertising budget for the 2018 general election was $12,314, which was supplemented with federal funds for a municipal election not held in conjunction with a general election, which is this one. Our contract stipulates the following." So, bottom line is total cost of advertising, approximately 1,500. So, you're going from 12,300, when everybody knew what day it was, because remember, you were voting for governor and you're voting for senator, so everybody knew what day that was. But nonetheless, and by the way, here's an example of what I'm talking about. All right, this is, this is from Rep. Palmer's Vero Voice. You can see it's an ad, it was placed in October 2018, to deadline to register to vote. This kind of advertising, all right, this kind of advertising is not going to be covered by $1,500. So, I mean, this election, and actually to address Mr. Hedy's point that he made earlier, you're going to, this election's going to disenfranchise. We don't know how many people, but since we had 13,996 on November 6th vote, votes cast, it's unlikely to be that number again.
Ms. Moss, you're arguing about something that is going to occur, whether you give us facts or opinions or not.
Well, we're going to decide how much to spend on it.
It's going to cost what it costs to happen.
Well, are you going to have early voting?
And let me make it clear, the military votes have already gone out. They went out on the 11th, so, you know, we're already, we're already started.
So, what she, I think what she's trying to say, and she could have said in one sentence, was she wants to add in early voting for $8,000 and then we could have discussed that instead of this diatribe.
Early voting for, is 4,000. And previously, on advertising, $12,314 was spent and right now, 1,500 is budgeted. Every vote is a voice. You decided to silence them. Leave it in your hands.
Thank you.
So, in my opinion, you know, that's the way, these elections are exactly the same way the election was when I ran. Everyone knows ahead of time, there's no early voting. You run your election based on knowing that. I bet you the turnout will be probably around 20%, which is what the, around what it was when I ran. So, off-year elections, this is what it's like. It didn't happen the way you wanted. Got to move on. I don't think we should add in, I don't think we should add in another $8,000 of wasted money for this city. I expect that the election results are going to be exactly like the last one and we can move on and get past this thing.
I was in an election year where there were very low voter turnout and it just so happened that we weren't voting for the governor or the president that year, so...
Yeah, that's the breaks.
Jim, item B?
Thank you.
Item B.
Do we need to vote on that?
No, you're going to...
Oh, vote them all?
... agenda after you have public comments for. Expenditure funds for Historic Preservation Commission not to exceed $500. The Historic Preservation Commission has asked for money for banners. We have Deborah Atwell here who can explain what it is that she's requesting. There is no budget for the historic commission, so she's asking it to be taken out of, I think, planning and city clerk's office or something.
And before, before she even gets started, in what part of the city's history have we ever given money in this manner? I mean, I don't have a problem with, with...
The city does not, we hang banners for others, but others raise the money for the banners. For example, the OBA on Ocean Drive, they raised their money. The Museum of Art raises money for their banners and then Main Street raises money for their banners.
And I definitely don't have a problem with banners as long as it meets our code ordinances, but...
Correct. And these would if they hang from the poles. Now, the one that goes on City Hall, I haven't, I don't know the size of that, so I'd have to see what we're doing.
Right, right. Okay, but before we get started, my problem is, we don't do this, we don't, and we've never have provided money for this sort of thing. And while I don't have a problem with it, the money should be raised independently. So, if you'd like to make a...
Let me try to speak to that. In the meantime, let me give you something to look at and we'll just...
I had a quick question. Can I ask a quick question? What is it going to say? Because I read the minutes to the meeting, but I didn't know what the message was.
Deborah Atwell here, let me, let me do it correctly. Resident and chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission for our city.
Thank you.
Okay. Time for arts and crafts. Today, I'm here because the HPC has placed a budget request on your agenda. In the past, when we have needed a few dollars here and there, Tammy has located it for us. Or we have actually paid out of our pockets to get it done quickly because the process, this one is a fine example, we've started talking about this in November. And really, these should have been hung for the Christmas holiday. But we're campaigning the many virtues of historic designation for homeowners and having a total of nine banner flags that capture the public's interest and keep this topic on trend and familiar will help us ensure success. Our expense will not exceed $500. We'll be purchasing flags similar to the ones hung throughout the cultural arts area, except ours will be this eye-catching red. This is not the finished draft. This is ongoing. Existing locations are all spoken for. These things are guarded. We are really fortunate to have Katharina Pala Woda, our Main Street Director, who's very generously offered half of the existing brackets on posts that are already downtown. So, this represents a huge savings. We're going to utilize existing brackets and help to hang the finished product. So, these will be interspersed with the Main Street banners and it will create a delightful red and white effect when you drive down Main Street. Won't be able to miss them. They'll be very cheerful and inviting. A primary impact banner, "Keep Your Seats," will be a four-by-12-foot with the same design to be hung initially outdoors at City Hall. Hanging the banner will demonstrate local government's official endorsement of historic home designation. This is something we do for the community. This isn't something that the community is asking us to do. This is something, a concept that we have to bring to the community, to improve the community. There are many people in our community now who are fearful that our iconic architectural features and our landscapes are not being recognized and properly valued by local government and are therefore under serious threat. So, I feel like particularly if we're discussing the banner that's going to hang here in-house, that it will serve to show that we still indeed have preservation intentions, all of us, to some varying degree maybe. And we're still going about the business of identifying our historic resources and promoting their value to the community. We believe in them and what we have. We cannot help owners of historic properties become the best stewards of those properties until they are designated. Once they're designated, and this is a process that is often misunderstood, frequently misunderstood, before it gains momentum. And they are typically, this process is mislabeled as needless government intervention. Everyone's feeling about government in general, particularly local government, is why invite more in when we're trying to decrease it? Designation, home designation, kind of stands alone in a way that makes you, should make you, if it's properly understood, invite that government link because of the ways that it can help you as a property owner and as a homeowner and help guide you, protect the value in something that you own. In other words, people are in these buildings and don't even have a full awareness of what contribution those homes can make to the community and what their real value is.
Ms. Atwell, I don't have a problem with what you're proposing here. What I have a problem with is the $500 you're requesting.
Well, I can't, if someone wants to...
You don't have to give me the daggers because I don't need the daggers, like you intend, you intend to do.
I know.
It's a little condescending in your voice, I understand.
No, no, and I, I understand you have to be devil's advocate.
Oh, I'm trying to, listen, the community did not ask to pay $500. It's easy to do when it's not your money. So, while I don't have a problem, I think this is beautiful design. I know it's not even complete yet. That's great. All I have a problem with, and it probably wouldn't be too hard to do, is for you guys who have the idea to go, we're giving you the opportunity to hang the banners, just go find the money. It's not much money, just go find it.
And the people who are buying a flag for their house, they can pay for the flag.
Well, no, they're not buying a flag for their house.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The flags don't go to the houses. The flags are there to brand what we're doing and put it out in the community, create that interest so that people will come in here and will say, "We want to get involved, we want to hear more about it." We do have a website. But in addition to that, what you have to do is a blast. You have to literally have something connected to designation, and this is our centennial year. This is the perfect time to go ahead and hang a flag about it. People are going to come forward this year because it's particularly meaningful for them to do it now.
If there's sufficient community support, don't you think a GoFundMe page could raise $500 in about a week?
Yeah, I think your commission's doing a great job and I think it's a very minimal amount, so I support it fully. Are we going to vote on these separately? I think we better.
Well, it looks like we're going to have to.
Yeah, I think we're going to vote on these separately because I'm in favor of the $500.
As long as we're having a conversation this detailed and asking someone to come up about a consent agenda item, I'm just curious, I mean, you all understand how to navigate the process for a historic home designation, right?
Correct.
So, why not just go to the historic homes and help those individuals get the designation? Like, why do we need to put banners up?
We, I'm not sure, that's complicated. And you're over there smiling like the Cheshire Cat. If we get, like, right now, just because I've been here for a million years and because many people that I know as neighbors and friends have come to me about their homes. Because we are a regulatory commission as well and because we really exist, what we should be doing is, is looking at these applications when they come in for properties that have already been designated and weighing in on the changes that are being proposed so that we can assist the homeowners in guiding those changes in a way that still allows them to retain the integrity of their buildings. So that's, you know, we do the whole quasi-judicial process, we are.
What does that have to do with this flag? Or banners? I'm not, sorry, what are they?
What's it, what's the idea behind that? You want the general public to know that they, that they need their home as a historic site?
We're trying to generate more interest in that, in getting the public to come forward, and to want to be part of something that looks inviting. Otherwise, it's going to be like, it's going to be like somebody waving a 1040 in the air and going, come on in and look at all these applications, they're, you're going to need some pretty, pretty, you're going to need some incentive other than just saying, come in, we'll help you fill out this application, it's not as painful as it looks, it's not going to be, you know, expense, expense, followed by more expense that you're not prepared to shoulder.
Let me ask you a question, are there tax exemptions for historic homes?
Yes.
So why would we give you money, taxpayer dollars?
Well, and it's not a lot. Here, and that, I don't want to keep you guys here all night because you're going to be here all night anyway, but I don't want you to blame me, because the tax exemption is really no more than just a thank you, it's like the city's way of thanking you. The county does not participate. The county's tax money that they collect is, is the bulk of your tax bill. So, yes, if, if we had the attention of Beachside and of some of these wonderful houses in Riemar, and if someone came, if someone was familiar with, with our ad valorem tax savings, they would say, hmm, here, I've got a house that's X many square feet, we have the property that will allow us to go to this large, we can enlarge the footprint of our home as much.
Is there some format to this whole discussion?
We can.
I, I think we need to, we need to move along, and I think because we've gone into so much depth in this discussion.
The other, I'm sorry, I'm sorry here.
Yes, ma'am.
I, the other thing I don't want to do is to continue reaching to someone like the Historic Society, to Ruth, Ruthie's group, because they do everything. We shouldn't, and, and we shouldn't ask them to come and pay for something that the city does. I mean, this is, this is really the only thing we exist to do, this is the primary thing that we exist to do. We can't function in our regulatory capacity until we get a, a volume of homes that are designated. So we're trying to create a welcoming party atmosphere, if you will.
Jim, can I ask a question? Does the Historic Preservation Commission, they have no budget?
That is correct.
So they're like zero?
That's correct.
Okay. And is there any opportunity to lateral money from other commissions or committees?
If the city council approves the $500, we will fund the $500.
So basically, you're just looking for the consent of the, of the council to look in our kitty and come up with $500?
That is correct.
I mean, you know, and again, you know.
You might want to take this.
The number of man-hours you all expend.
Unbelievable.
And the number of, you know, days that you commit to it, I think it's in the interest of our city to facilitate what you do, and $500 does not seem to be an inordinate amount. I realize from, you know, my experience and the experience of everybody else here, it'd be pretty simple to go out to private donors and say, hey, give me 500 bucks. I mean, I could write you a check, or we all can. But the question is, do we want to affirm what the commission has done in providing their support for our community? And for my cup of tea, I would want to affirm what you all do, and this is just a very inexpensive way of doing it. My thoughts.
Thank you.
Tony, just so you know, next month, we'll have the tree beautification banners up. We'll pay for that, too.
And, and they'll be back again next year for another 500 bucks? Or whatever it is. But anyway, can we move, can we get public comment, I guess, if we're going to have to vote on this?
Can we pull this and we'll take a vote on it right now?
Why don't you take a vote on it right now, it'd be good while you're here.
My motion, my motion is to approve item B on the consent agenda without the expenditure of the $500. So it's, that's my motion. Second.
Okay, just for clarification for me, that is, we have no problem hanging the banners if they are.
As long as they meet, as long as they meet our code and ordinances. I am speaking specifically to the banner for City Hall. I have no problem with it, just don't want to approve the expenditure. Okay, and I have a second, so.
Do you have to take any other public comment?
We got to take other public, any public comment on this matter?
For the record, Ken Dig, 1846 21st Avenue. I would hope there would be three votes. It is an expenditure, it is $500. Why don't you guys look at it this way? It's seed money. Mrs. Atwell did a very good job presenting to you her commissions, they spend a lot of hours, you know, they're, they're volunteers. Look at it as something to move forward with. It would really work well with the centennial, it would set the stage really nice that the city's in cooperation with what Mrs. Atwell talked about. And perhaps, you know, people understand the city needs money and all, do it as a seed thing and the monies will come. Maybe just let it start out that way. $500, I know probably sounds like a lot to you guys up there, look at it as seed money.
Mr. Dig, I volunteered years of my life to, to this city alone, and I never asked for a dime.
No, I know that. I, I never said that you'd ask for anything. She's not asking personally for herself. All I'm asking is, you know, to get it going and to do seed money, sometimes when you do things like that, other monies will follow. Very, very simple concept, that's all.
Okay, we have any other public comment? And we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm not in favor.
No. So motion carries for you two for approval of the banners without the expenditure of $500. And we can move on to, I know we're going to go back to A, but move on to.
Okay, we'll go back to A after. Yeah. This is a franchise, solid waste franchise agreement for roll-off containers, similar to what you have done in the past, it's a 6% franchise fee, it's non-exclusive, and what we do is register these roll-offs in the city in order to have some type of management control over them as opposed to folks coming in here and damaging properties. But in essence, this is something we do on an annual basis. Next item is the conveyance of city-owned right-of-way located at Atlantic Boulevard and 42nd Street. This is what we talked about earlier with the county, this is the improvements on Highway 60 and 42nd where those improvements are being made.
Public Works?
Public Works, the roof replacement. This is, you all awarded a contract back in eight, 2018, for roofs to be replaced. Once they started on the engineering, they found out that they needed to have more support, so therefore the cost went up. What we're doing is we're dropping, building J, and doing the rest of the work, it'll come in under budget, the budget was around 200,000. This will be right at 170-something thousand, assuming that there are no more glitches in costs that we are not familiar with, but we're trying to make sure these roofs are secure and a long-term investment. And so therefore, proceeding in that, that manner. There will be a budget item next year to start including the other buildings as well. The memorandum of agreement with the Indian River County School Board, this allows students and supervisors or teachers more than likely to come, and they'll work around the airport, learn some information about the airport, while at the same time doing something that benefits the city at no cost to the airport. Eric's done a good job of working with the school board and working out that agreement.
I had a question about that, just regarding indemnification. It looks like we're open to a lawsuit pretty easily on that.
Well, the, the students or their guardian, guardian or parent have to sign a waiver which removes our liability, it puts the indemnification on the, the students or the parent or guardian.
Because it looks like what we're signing, the city is signing, what the mayor would be signing, it, it doesn't hold, there's no hold harmless statement? It looks like, if I remember correctly.
Between the, between the city and the school district, no, but between the city and the actual participants, they have to sign a release form which indemnifies the city.
All right, because, you know, we're taking on, we already, you know, you can have a lawsuit over anything, I think we've already seen that, so.
Yeah, right.
This is, it's not a good thing to take on more liability, for what purpose? I don't, you know, what schools are coming here? I mean, is this, you know, I'm, I'm not clear why we're taking on a legal risk.
Why don't we have Eric come up? He's the one that negotiated this, actually negotiated the agreement, he'd give you the.
Because if I read it correctly, it also said it's not really to serve you, it's to serve them, which is fine, I know, I love, I love kids, it's great, but if we get sued, it's not going to be so great.
Right, well, there's, there's, there's risk all around us all the time, and we have an airport going, so there's plenty of risk going on every day. However.
I know, it seems like an unusual place for children, you know, like something definitely could happen.
Eric, you know, make the airplane sign a release before they land?
For the record, Eric Manager, the airport director, and glad to be up here and glad to hopefully get this approved. I've got Joanne Pagano is in the, in the audience here, and.
That's a great shirt, by the way.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I haven't seen that one before.
We, we were.
It has the logo, the airport logo.
That's right.
For those at home.
And we were approached last year by the, by Joanne, and, you know, when, when I looked at it, we got with the city attorney's office and with the human resources risk management side to make sure that we could put together the documents to reduce the risk as much as possible and mitigate the liability, which obviously is, is some, always going to be some possibility of that happening. But with the supervisors, the, the adults that would be there with the students, and the need for the airport to have some free services, because this is just, this would just be around the airport terminal building, obviously not out on the airfield proper, all outside the fence, all outside the secure area, this would just be primarily in the parking areas around the terminal building to help pick up some trash and things before and after flights. So rather than bring my staff out there when they're busy in the office and, or the operations guy out of the airfield, we thought we could take advantage of the opportunity to have some, some volunteers, and at the same time, we can help out with ESE students that need to get to broaden their experiences in the job market and possibly help them to mainstream down the road. So it's kind of a win-win the way we see it, but, you know, your, your point is not, you know, not lost, there's always going to be some.
Well, we were just worried about $500, if you get sued, it'll be a lot more than $500.
Sure. Well, we have limitations on that, and I know Kira could speak to that, but, you know.
We have, we have activities all over the city that have risk, we have sidewalks that are not even, we have people that are.
Downtown Friday.
We have Downtown Friday, we have the farmer's market, we have people doing, we have the airshow.
Wait a minute, we do have insurance on there.
We have, we have people that are working with concrete saws, we have people that are pouring asphalt, so there's a, there's risk with life, and you just try to.
You have general liability insurance at the airport, right?
We do, we have general liability insurance.
All right. So would this allow for Civil Air Patrol, or are they already covered?
This is not part of that, you know, the Civil Air Patrol is a separate organization, this is specifically with the school district for ESE, for their ESE program.
But with the Civil Air Patrol, are they, are they, is that a whole nother avenue to look down, or is?
Yes, sir, they're currently meeting at the flight safety classrooms, and they're, my understanding is they're going to be looking for a different location because flight safety is getting very busy. I'm working with Curtis and others on that, that process, it's separate.
Will everyone be wearing a helmet?
And.
Not, not in a degree. We need to pull this one?
I think, I think.
I don't think so.
Okay, you're, you're comfortable with it, Eric?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then I'll, if you're good with it, I'm good with it.
So that concludes the consent agenda.
No.
Oh, that's right, we added.
The Teamster contract, as you know, this covered the dispatchers and the customer service. What it does is just ratifies what the, the unions have already ratified and you've approved when we had our meeting, that 3% pay increase.
Great. Do you want us to vote on that one individually?
No, as far as I'm concerned, you could, I think you wanted to pull A and talk about that one, but the rest of them could go as a group.
That's right.
A and B would be the two that you.
Well, we voted on B. Yeah, we already voted on B.
A is the only one I think that had any controversy in this.
I think so, too. I'm going to vote again today, so.
All right, so we'll take.
Everybody else is voting for it.
Any public comment on item A, on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve item A.
I'll second that.
This is municipal election agreement, just in case.
Yes.
Good point, it is. Item A on the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
One opposed, motion passes four to one. So for the remainder, excluding items A and B.
That is correct.
We'll take them.
Take them as a group, C, D, E, F, and G.
We'll take them as a group, and Tammy, because we're taking them as a group, could you do roll call for the C, D?
I guess my only question is, I think I voted against the, the negotiated agreement because I didn't agree with the 3% raise, so I probably would vote no on that one and vote yes on the rest.
Okay, so how about, I'll make a motion to approve item G, the Teamster contract.
And I second it, so we can do it on that. Okay, yeah, we'll do that individually then. So, so all in favor of accepting the contract?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, seeing one, motion passes four to one.
Make a motion to approve items C, D, E, and F on the consent agenda.
I'll second you. Well, can we do roll call since we're doing a bunch at the same time there?
Sure.
Thanks.
Dr. Zidanez?
Yes.
Colonel Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Moss?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item four, city council matters requested by Councilwoman Laura Moss.
We, we already covered the council election that was part of the vote, so.
So there's nothing else to be said about that item?
I'm okay with that, we already covered Dodger Town, down to item three, which is a certificate of acknowledgement, and I'd just like to take a brief moment to read that, read that, I think it's important to acknowledge what went before us. This is from FPL, and this occurred, this was signed by all of us on December 17th, and it says, "A certificate of acknowledgement, Florida Power and Light Company's acquisition of the electric utility of the city of Vero Beach. Whereas, on October 24th, 2017, the city of Vero Beach, Florida, and Florida Power and Light entered into that certain asset purchase and sale agreement for the purchase by FPL of the electric utility in the city and other portions of Indian River County, Florida. Whereas," and this is the key sentence, there are only three sentences, this is, this is a key sentence, "whereas since that time, hundreds of employees of both the city and FPL have worked tirelessly towards completing the purchase of the city's electric system with the goal of integrating the two systems in a seamless manner and providing the citizens of the city with high reliability, award-winning customer service, clean power, and lower electric bills. And I want to thank Mr. O'Connor personally at this time, and also acknowledge Mr. Ted Fletcher and his team." And the final sentence is, "Whereas the undersigned are hereby pleased to acknowledge FPL's acquisition of the city's electric system and commend the efforts of all persons who have assisted with the completion of the transaction." So this is what was signed that day that everyone was here in the council chambers, and that was December 17th, and that's it for that one.
Thank you.
The, well.
What was the purpose of that? What was the purpose of that? Seriously, like, why, why, why do we have, like, you know, seven items on here of things that we've already done that is irrelevant? We already had a ceremony, we signed this, why do we, why are we doing this again?
Well, this was not, this was not available.
As long as they are because of things like this, why?
This was not available to the community, because it was short, only three sentences, and because it commemorates something that was a cast of thousands over decades, I thought it would be a nice opportunity to thank the city manager and to acknowledge, as I said in paragraph two, the hundreds of people who were involved in it.
All right, well, I'd like to move on to, to my item here under old business, and the reason that I wanted to bring this up again is because we still haven't taken any action on parking. I know we've discussed this earlier tonight, so I want to keep this very, very brief. My suggestion would be to charge city staff to give us, and Cindy Lawson as well, options for how to pay for a parking garage. And then there was one other aspect to this, something I had discussed with, with city manager about the potential, and this may be redundant, but I wanted to propose it anyway, of hiring a local firm like a Kimley Horn to conduct a, a survey to find out really where we can add spaces, what possible parking solutions there could be, with the exception of paid parking. I wanted to propose it.
Question.
Yes.
I like the second suggestion upfront, because none of us, we've discussed parking over and over and over again, we've got groups that are for meters, we have groups that are against meters, groups that are for parking garage, groups against parking garage, nobody that's come up, as far as I know, nobody that's come up to speak with us about that during any comment is a traffic engineer, or an engineer of any sort, perhaps. We're certainly, I don't know that, are any of you traffic engineers?
Well, in, in our city government, we have had. Monty has gone through and looked at all these ideas, like the, the one-way, the center aisle parking, the, and it, none of it is, you know, it's like, the, the cost per space is, is way more than a parking garage.
So here's what I think, Mr. Zidanez, if you have a professional do a survey and come back to council and say, this is what, this is what you need to do to solve the problem, I put that in quotes. problem," I put that in quotations because the city doesn't have a parking problem.
True.
So if you have a professional do that and they say, "You need to do X, Y, and Z, or do nothing," perhaps that's their answer. You don't need to take any action. Then we're relying on their professional word to seek such action. And that takes the onus off of us and it really puts it in the court of somebody who knows what they're doing.
Yeah, my only question is, is it likely, and I don't know the answer to this. This is an honest question. Is it likely that we're going to get the same answer that we got from, from Monty? In which case, we just wasted money on a, on a consultant? Or is it possible that we're going to get a different answer? And that's a question for the city manager.
May we ask him?
I would like to respond to that because the consultant idea gives you another pair of eyes to look at this. For seven years, I've been going down this parking thing. You guys, ever since.
Is that why you're retiring?
No, no, but it is one of those that we cannot find an answer to get a great enough number of spaces to justify the expenditure. If you have a third party look at it, for example, on a parking garage, if he comes, if the third party says, "Yes, your parking problem is so extreme, you need to build a three-story or four-story parking garage. This is how much it costs you to build that garage per space." Then you have a reliable source. We can give you information and Monty and I have given that. The latest that we saw, the latest parking garage that we have seen that was a public-private parking garage was $15,500 space. But I am not sure that everybody on Ocean Drive, on Ocean Drive believes what Monty and I have been saying for several years. This would come back and they may say, "No, you can build a parking garage that's out of bamboo and it's only going to cost you $10 a square, a space." Or they may say, "You realign the parking and Monty has given you all information on the amount of square footage it takes for a parking space." Some people believe that you can get 30 or 40 parking spaces on Cardinal. We, the city administration, do not believe you can do that.
But that's also gotten us nowhere.
That is, exactly. It has gotten us nowhere. So the thinking that I would put in what Lang is talking about, you're getting a third party, somebody that would be new to the fray because we can sit here and talk about the parking garage. It's very simple how you pay for a parking garage. And then we're not going to get tourist tax. Otherwise, Lang will be retiring. But the key would be is that we get a price for a parking garage and you can have a parking district and you put, you know, a tax or whatever you do with that. And the simplest way of doing that, and what many cities have done, you just put an avalorum tax on the district that you define and that avalorum tax only applies to the buildings there. And so that generates the money to pay the debt service for a parking garage. And it, based on the square footage, because that's typically the, your higher value is going to be square footage. The smaller shops are blaming the hotels and the hotels are blaming the restaurants and it goes around in a big circle. But that's the simplest way of doing it is you just put that avalorum, whatever that number is to pay the debt service and it applies to that district. I'm not sure that, you know, we have people that stand up here and say, you know, "We're willing to pay." But when it really gets down to it, you guys have been down that road before. It's easy to say, "I'm willing to pay" until you send them a bill. And then it becomes an issue. But at least by having another party look at it, it gives you a perspective. And there may be something we just have not seen. I don't know what it is.
Okay. So what is it? What, what would that?
We put out an RFP and we said that this.
Another RFP?
Well, I don't, we hire.
We have engineering, we have engineers already under contract that we can take, Kimberley Horn being a very good one. They're familiar with the site. They're familiar with the problems. And we could get a quote from them to look at that study and bring that back to council if you'd like to do that.
Great. Let's do that. For, get a quote and we'll vote on it next meeting.
Sounds good. He can do that.
As, you know, and I know it's getting late, but in the studies for those things, do they, will they take in consideration projected growth of the community? Is that one of the factors?
The answer is yes. They would have to do that because you're not going to plan the parking. The first thing is that you're going to have, and this is just speculation on my part.
Yeah.
Our parking concerns are about three or four months. Your parking.
Capacity.
Capacity that you, if you expand to a parking garage, is going to be vacant part of that year, especially during the summer. But at the same time, you still have debt service on that during the summer when nobody's parking in that parking garage. And you're going to have, using, and Bobby, I don't guess he minds me using his name, he's not really going to benefit from a parking garage down at Hummus and Park at his restaurant. It just, you know, and so you, that type of, and when maybe the engineering service could tell us how to, what would be a benefit? How do we get, encourage somebody to use that? And so I would like to sort of make it open enough where they can give us their opinion as to what our needs are and look at not only growth, but also, you know, what is this existing condition that we have there?
Okay. Out of curiosity, what you described with the, and I don't like where we're going with more taxes, but the, the idea of having a parking district, could you also use money from the parking district for, for a shuttle that would actually benefit people down at the other end?
When you define the parking district, you put, the city council puts the parameters on that as to what you will pay out of that money.
Okay. But you could.
Yes, sir. You could.
Okay. So are we, do we have a consensus to instruct our staff to put an RFP out for this study?
No, I think what we're going to do is use existing.
Yeah, we have, we have engineers.
Give us a quote. That we would vote on about conducting a parking study.
So do we have more than one engineer? Can we get two quotes or no?
Kimberley Horn being.
Just to be, just to be prudent.
To keep from yelling from the back of the audience, we do have more than one, but I'd have to check with our purchasing manager. Professional services, you're not supposed to have them bid against each other. You, you get a guy, you get, tell him what you want. He gives you a price. You either agree on a price or not, then you go to the next one and agree. I have to make sure that.
Okay.
Arguing that, that price is not a violation of the Consultants' Competitive Negotiation Act.
Okay.
Yeah, and engineers really fall into that, don't they?
Yeah. And I'll check with John before we do that. But we do have several engineers that we selected on a continuing contract.
Okay.
They specialize in areas as well.
So I guess I would say if you are allowed to get more than one quote, do so. If not, take your.
Gotcha.
We'll bring it back. Yeah. And if, and if it doesn't work, then you gotta say that's not, that's too much or something. We go to the next.
If it doesn't work, it's not your concern.
It's getting close.
Is everyone okay with that?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
All right.
Yes.
So moving on to item two, municipal Marina. Have we gone over everything?
We've covered it.
Okay. We did the public hearings. We did the number five, which was quasi-judicial hearing.
Ordinances. You've got to set public hearings now. Public hearings for future hearing. Number six.
Yeah, we're going to do that. Number five, we took care of. Number six, public notice items for future public hearings. Tammy?
Okay. The first is a public hearing to be held on February 5th, 2019 at 5:00 PM. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida amending the comprehensive plan future land use map by changing the future land use designation of annex land from Indian River County designation M1 medium density residential one to City of Vero Beach designation RM residential medium for the property located at 3780 Indian River Boulevard containing 7.46 acres more or less, providing for an effective date. B is a public hearing to be held on February 5th, 2019 at 5:00 PM. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida amending the official zoning map by changing the zoning district designation of annex land from Indian River County designation RM8 multiple family residential to City of Vero Beach designation RM8 residential multi-family residential for the property located at 3780 Indian River Boulevard containing 7.46 acres more or less, providing for an effective date. C is a public hearing to be held on February 5th, 2019 at 5:00 PM. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida related to animal control, amending chapter 14 animals, section 14.1, dogs and cats at large prohibited of the code of the City of Vero Beach, providing for codification, providing for conflict and severability, and providing for an effective date. Okay.
You're onto a point.
Okay. We do have some reappointments that need to especially be made to the Tree and Beautification Commission. Recently, we had three resignations from that commission. And we do have two alternate members serving on that commission that would like to be moved up. Those people are Fran Robinson and Neil Rowe. And if that's done, it will leave one full position open on the Tree and Beautification Commission as well as two alternate positions open. I did provide you with their, the absences that they have.
I don't think we have much of a choice at this point.
No, and especially they do have a meeting on Thursday.
Not to say they're not qualified. I just mean that.
Right, right. And they do need to be able to, to conduct their business.
We, just, just while I have the opportunity, we are having a serious problem with voluntary positions in the city for commissions and boards. So I don't know if anybody's listening, but if you have the time and wherewithal to, to help us to fill these vacancies.
This might be a really good opportunity to consolidate some of these committees so that you have sufficient membership.
We're going to have to.
Can we get an idea of some of the committees that might be able to be combined? And that actually helps us too with, you know, to the extent that we have to have an attorney there sometimes or whatever. That would be a very good time, opportunity to do that.
Sure. I'll work on something and bring it back.
Can you, yeah, make some suggestions of several consolidations and.
Yeah, I have a couple ideas, sure.
Similarly related items.
Not to discourage anyone from volunteering. We still need.
And that too. I'm sorry for interrupting.
It's fine. I want to get through this as much as you do.
Need a motion to move them up.
So motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This is just for the approval of the.
Not opposed.
Not opposed. Okay. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. And for the Planning and Zoning Board, Mr. Richard Cahoy serves as the alternate member and would like to remain on that commission. At this point, we have no applications on file.
Motion for approval.
Do we, do we notice this one meeting ahead?
We can bring this back and that's fine.
Just in case someone else is.
Okay.
I know that we shouldn't do that if we're like looking for people, but also P&amp;Z is a relatively popular one. It may be worth just letting the public know that there's a vacancy and if they want to apply, this is your last chance because it's going in two weeks.
Okay, so I guess I need to remove.
I'll bring it back. Did you want me to go over the openings that we have?
Yeah. Yes, please.
Okay. For the Code Enforcement Board, we have two alternate positions open. For the Fire Pension Board, we have one full position open. For the Historic Preservation Commission, we have one alternate position open. And for the Tree and Beautification Commission, we now have one full position and two alternate positions open. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Matters.
We covered my item, but there is one thing, the city manager search. If you all are interested in replacing it because the department's relatively small and it's pretty hard to move somebody up in there. But something I would recommend for your consideration, one is that we put a request for proposals out for a search firm. They can help. They, and we can do that and have that back to you in two weeks for those who respond. And the second thing is we go ahead and advertise in the ICMA and the Florida League of Cities, the opening is available. So we can start building some resumes coming in. When you do the search firm, just to give you the information on it, let's say that you come down and you want to interview three firms, you interview them, you pick one of them, then you put the parameters of what you want. You know, if you say you want to see all the resumes, they'll be very happy to do that. But five people looking through 100 different resumes to try to pick somebody is going to be difficult. You can put parameters. For example, we want you to give us a recommendation of 10 or five or whatever the number is. Then you go through those and they have to meet those criteria. Your search firm will also help you in setting out what criteria you want. For example, I'm sure you want at least a degree, a college degree with preference to graduate work. You probably want the ICMA credentialed manager, some of those type of features. Typically, your search firm will have all that as a bowl of plate and present it to you. And if there's something else that you want in there that, you know, that you want them to be a Vero resident or something, then you can put.
Yeah, if we, I mean, if we could, if we could get some folks, some people who have an idea of our local ins and outs to participate if they're interested. I mean, you had, I don't know, if they so choose, I mean, if Joe Bear wanted to apply, then he should apply. If Matt Muller wanted to apply, he should apply. If Jason Nunamaker wanted to apply, Jason should apply. If Robbie Stig wants to be a city manager again, then Robbie should apply.
He hasn't gotten out of.
Well, that's true.
Shores yet. Hasn't been released.
He did indicate to them that he was interested. And the Shores has two, two applicants that I'm aware of that would be pretty good fits for Vero if they're interested in it. That's why I'm saying if we put it out before we even get the search firm, you may see a resume that sticks out at you that you say, "Wait a minute, this is where we want to go."
So we can do it simultaneously. That's, that's what you're suggesting.
And we'll give all our resumes.
It'll go faster. You'll have resumes on hand when you have your consultant picked.
Yeah.
Right. So the other aspect to this is anticipating your departure, I would think it would be prudent to suggest a person to cover in your absence till we have a hiry. And I think that my suggestion would be that we entertain Mr. Falls as the interim city manager. And if, if, hair if you like or whatever, I'd be glad to sit down with him if there's some specific aspects to it, whether it's length of, of contract or compensation or whatever. But I think that's something that we ought to proceed with as well.
Monty certainly has the longtime knowledge of our community. He's, he's very well-versed. In fact, he's, you know, in Jim's absence in the past, he's the guy that steps up to the plate and he does a fine job. So I think it'd be fantastic if we could get Monty to at least interminally fill that position.
Is this deja vu all over again? Didn't you, didn't you already do this for, I mean, for more than one night?
I think speaking now and forever hold your peace is what we're hearing.
Counsel, I appreciate the confidence. I've expressed to Jim, I'm really sad to see him go. He's been great to work for. I've done this once before. It was a really stressful time in my life to do that. I'm not a trained city manager. I don't have those credentials that you'll be looking for. But I've worked for the city for 28 years. I love what I do. I love this city. And in an interim position with terms that we can work out, that we have an agreement that sets some time parameters, that keeps us all moving along on that schedule, I'll be happy to help out on an interim basis. Thank you for that.
Thank you for that. And we'll make it, we'll make a decision as soon as we have the qualified person that we deem to be best fit for that position. We'll get him in here so that you're not, you know, I understand. It's definitely.
So I think, I think if I'm wrong, you guys, both of you guys, you can correct me. If we move with dispatch, we're looking optimally with a June-July replacement. So.
Unless something.
Unless we hit it.
First, you know, if you get resume that sticks out or a couple that stick out even before you hire the search firm, then you could be quicker than that. But we'll just have to see what comes down the line.
The other opportunity that we have with this, and I think it's prudent, is that simultaneously with looking for a replacement, what we can't replace as a follow-on to our city manager, that we look for a permanent city attorney. And I know as we're looking for attorneys, one of the opportunities is to look at the configuration of the city attorney's office. And my thinking there is if we have the credentials that we're looking for, for the city attorney's office, that individual could guide us and the feasibility of reconfiguration for the city attorney's office. Take on two beasts with one stone.
I, what did you say? That last part?
I said, take on two efforts at the same time.
Ah, thank you. I concur. I mean, we obviously have Kira here in the interim and it's my, my hope that that's actually going to be something that works out for us in the long term. And anyway.
For discussion.
Along the way.
If you get a search firm, the search firm could hunt for you if that's what you wanted.
I'm, I'm inclined.
I'm, I'm inclined, I, I really would love to see, um, uh, our city attorney's office downsized, it was once with, uh, two attorneys, and, um, and we're up to three attorneys per legal, budget of like $550,000, and, um, comparable-sized cities in the, in the last benchmark that was done were, were, well, were above what other people are paying. So, I, I'm in, I'm inclined, I'm actually satisfied with the status quo, to be honest.
Look, Mr. Zedans, Councilman Zedans, if, if they can handle the workload, and, and I, I think that it's possible they can, if they can handle the workload, that's great. Um, if it becomes an issue...
Then we address it then.
Then we, yeah, so, I'm just, that's my...
So...
So, I mean...
And I think the, what we're saying is, it's not, it's not, um, I, I think the fact that moving ahead to look at a, a city manager, that should be something that would be, um, a, a point of, uh, tasking for that individual to make recommendation back to the, to the council.
On the city attorney's office?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not an attorney, and I don't think...
Well, neither is a city manager.
So, um...
I think, we have three, we have three charter officers who were tasked with, with supervising, it's the city attorney, the, the city clerk, and the city manager. And so, it's really for this council to decide who the city attorney is, and really is not, well, I, I think it, it's good to get the advice of your city manager, but, um...
Ultimately, it's up to us.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Um, so, so, you know, and I've, I've already spoken with Kira briefly, very, very briefly about this, and there, there are a lot of, you have to, you know, a lot of cards being played up there, so, um, it, it could come to a point where, I don't, I don't want them to be, um, a jack-of-all-trades, I want them to be good at certain aspects of their job, so if it gets convoluted or diluted, because they've got too many aspects coming in, we should address it at that time, that's what I'm trying to relay, if I'm doing that properly, if I make sense at all now.
And, and just in a, in the big-picture thing, you know, we'll end up going through our next round budgets in the, um, in the summer, and remember, every year, uh, for the next five years, we gotta figure out how we're, um, making $500,000 of, of, uh, efficiency improvements, I'll say, and that's a, that's a, that's a decent way towards this next year's, um, uh, one less out, one less attorney is, is, if we can handle that, is worth doing.
And I think what my perspective is, is if we put out the RFP, or whatever we wanna call it, the request for, uh, city attorney applicants, that gives us a pool, and Kira is amongst the pool, and we would select the individual that we feel has all of the, um, attributes that we're looking for.
Yes.
It's not a, it's not a, it's not an indictment on anybody, it's, it's an opportunity for us, as we're moving forward, to be a, a, a good steward of our, of our, uh, of our staff.
Yeah, I think that the city manager is a more important issue right now, and I think we're perfectly comfortable with the status quo and in good hands, so I, I don't think that we should, you know, be focused on, um, including the city ma- city attorney in this search right now, but that's just my opinion, and everyone has their own.
I think it may be a blessing in disguise, and I think this is, you know, a tenth of the delta we're looking to, to do right now, so, um, let's find a city manager.
Yeah.
Okay, we got direction.
So, um, I guess, we ready to move on?
You're up.
As we're well-aware of that, we had issues with qualifying for our November 6th election. Uh, in talking with, um, a council mem- couple of council members, the, uh, city clerk and the supervisor of elections, I have drafted, um, what could potentially be an ordinance to bring forward, um, to the city council. The memo, I tried to clearly list out what the changes were and why, or the impact of the change. In addition to changes that would need to be done to the ordinance, uh, Tammy and I saw, um, concepts and the way things are done at the supervisor of election that we can implement, that don't need ordinance changes, um, those are at the, the bottom of the memo. Um, I, I think the memo is pretty self-explanatory, so if you have any questions, I will attempt to answer.
I think you've done a wonderful job, uh, and, you know, there were a half a dozen, actually, there was about a dozen recommended system upgrades as a result of the, um, challenges that we had, and the ordinance addresses that, and then supplemental to the ordinance, the changes within the city clerk's office, I think goes a long way to improving our, our election process. I think y'all did well. Uh, there was one recommendation, on page two, the last sentence of the paragraph, in the event that the, um...
Can you give me a line number?
Say again?
Can you give me a line number?
A line number? Oh, I, I don't, I haven't memorized a line number, but bottom line, the, the point was, if for some reason the qualification, qualification period, uh, ends on a weekend, the next available date, business date, end of, end of day would be the cutoff. And I think the intent of the ordinance was to, um, make noon the cutoff period, so if we change the, that, um, we oughta be consistent with what we had earlier.
Good catch, thank you.
Um, I know, I know you're trying to please the council, but I think actually part of it is, uh, more confusing and might leave us open to lawsuits in the future, and that's page two, uh, lines nine to 21, where it adds language similar to the state statute, um, that the clerk will review and notify candidates of any missing or incomplete documents, however, additional language is also added that if the clerk fails to identify missing or incomplete documents, it is still the candidate's responsibility and may be disqualified. I think that's, you know, it confuses the issue even more, the law, uh, was clear, and, uh, I wanna go back to what I said earlier, every voice, or every vote, excuse me, is a voice, and the majority of council, that's Mr. Young, Mr. Howell, Mr. Sykes, voted to disregard 13,996 voices. The law always was there, the law always was clear, in terms of it being the candidate's responsibility, and if you have a council that votes to disregard the law, then whatever changes, you could change this every year, it's not going to matter if the council votes to disregard it. And frankly, what I would take a look at, um, and I'll request that you do, is the oath of office, and I'm gonna read that. "I do solemnly swear that I will support, honor, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the State of Florida." Um, and that's the opening, uh, sentence, and really all I need right now. Um, maybe we wanna include that you're also going to support, honor, protect, and defend the laws of the city of Vero Beach, which is, did not happen, in terms of this vote.
Unfortunately, that oath is a state-required form, we can't alter that, that's a state requirement.
Well, maybe, maybe we need to add a second statement.
Well, no, we can't alter that.
In addition, no, no, I understand that, I'm not talking about this, you, and, you know, since we're changing, uh, since we're changing items anyway, maybe that's something we need to ask people to sign, that they will observe this.
Or it's not something that we can...
I'm not talking about changing this, I, I understand that, I'm not talking about changing this, I'm talking about a separate document.
Was the, was that part of the policy, or was that part of, that you just brought up, was that part of the policy, or was that part of the statute?
I'm not sure.
What she was just referring to.
The oath of office, or the other?
The, the part where you, the clerk will notify of any deficiencies, but ultimately the responsibility is on the, um, candidate, was that part of the policy, or was that part of the statute?
It's part of the, it's part of the proposed ordinance change.
Okay, does that...
The first sentence is from statute, the second sentence is based on what we just went through.
So, I guess, I, I don't wanna move past this, but, um, I'm kind of a little bit confused on what, I, I think there may be some merit to what, uh, Ms. Moss just said, that if you say in your ordinance that the clerk is responsible for, or it will notify them, but then ultimately it's a responsibility of the candidate, it's like saying two different things, and it's like giving a legal basis for someone who didn't actually, um, uh, complete their document. So, I, I kind of, is, I'm asking a legal question, is that correct, or is that a...
Yeah, it's, it's, it is a combination of both, with, one of the arguments made is that under the state statute, so, qualifying is kind of a two-step process, actually. If you wanna be connect collecting campaign, um, donations, contributions, you have to file and do your campaign work, and then there's a 14-day period prior to qualifying that you can pre-qualify. A lot of candidates take that opportunity. For some of the bigger offices, they really take it, because that gives them the chance to turn in their paperwork, and the clerk to look over their paperwork and make sure everything is correct. Then the clerk, if they have an error, gives them the opportunity to correct that error. If they don't come in and don't correct the error, then they don't qualify. What we're also saying is that it's still ultimately the responsibility of the candidate to qualify, and let's say that for whatever reason, that come the next November election, we have 20 candidates that are filing for, for, uh, office, and they all file at 11:55, although we have provided a larger window of opportunity to review the, the documents, there is a possibility, by human nature, that something could get overlooked. And so, the idea is that, um, or if, if they turned it in ahead of time, and again, it was overlooked, she will make attempts to notify them, but if it's not corrected, or if she misses something, it's still the candidate's ultimate responsibility.
So, so if we're trying to avoid the, the situation that happened before, and we had exactly the same situation where, or the, where someone didn't sign a document, the clerk didn't realize it, didn't notify them, aren't we back in the same situation again?
Not exactly.
Okay.
Uh, I added the provision on line, let me find it. Um, on page five, at line 26, I've added language that says, "If after the close of qualifying, and after the candidate names have been submitted to the Indian River County Supervisor of Election for inclusion on the ballot, and an individual standing believes a candidate is not qualified, the individual may file suit against the candidate regarding the candidate's qualification." In other words, we won't be removing names off the ballot once we submit that to the supervisor of election.
So, they'll be on the ballot, but then they could potentially contest the qualification.
Somebody else can contest it, and then it would be with, would be with...
You know, they would, they may get the most votes, but they're not elected if they're deemed to be not qualified in their lawsuit.
Correct, the, the supervisor election actually has a, a process for if you are to, a candidate withdraws or becomes unqualified, that they put notices at the voting, um, place, don't vote for that person.
Hmm. You know, the, you know, what I did, just for everybody's verification on this whole process, is, you know, going through the steps that I thought was a way to forward, was to update the ordinance, and, oh, more than 10 changes have been updated in that review. Uh, for the clerk's office to review the Indian River County Supervisor of Elections procedures, that has been done, okay? To implement a candidate class, that'll be done in August, update management, file management procedures, um, uh, that is, uh, they are now being stored in similar fashion as vital records, which is a significant upgrade. Implement, uh, file transparency procedures, web posting, and content and timeline is going to be, uh, reviewed for that, and then, uh, specify updated document safeguards, you know, all the, the city public records has a, a proctored process, that'll be a citywide application for public records. Examine the canvassing board procedures, now canvassing board procedures are only post-election, okay, which clarifies that. Review the process and time for, um, complete filing and forwarding to the Supervisor of Elections, and that has been revised. Uh, require candidate eligibility challenge to be documented, that's, that's completed. So, as you can see, uh, there's been significant upgrade, and, and I think, um, we're on track, so...
Would you, would you find out, uh, what the cost would be if the municipal election were to be handled by the Supervisor of Elections, this, you know, if our election were just to be handled by the county? Because I think, I think we're just digging a deeper hole here, and maybe it should just not be handled here, and be handled by the county. Could you just find out the cost on that? We don't have to discuss it tonight.
You probably can't do that, probably, well, can you? Can you, uh...
Would you, would you just have a conversation with Lovely Swan, and, we don't, as I said, we don't need to discuss it now, just...
Yeah, yeah.
Just like that information, we always can do the ask, as we're fond of saying here, and it's not even an RFP. It's easy, it's a phone call, thank you.
I've never heard of it being done, but we can certainly ask her.
Okay.
Is that all for comments on the city attorney matters? It's okay, moving on.
So, my direct, my question is this...
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, do you want it to bring it back for, to put on the first public hearing, next, um, the notice of public hearing, next, um, meeting?
I think that's what we're...
I don't, but...
Yes, for me, so...
I, I think it's, it's, I think it's worse than it ever was, so...
Um, no, I think there's, are all, I think it's all improvement, I just, my only question was, uh, that we weren't creating a new, um, ambiguity, but...
No, that's what I'm saying.
I don't, um, I'm, I'm satisfied with your answer, I, I'm fine with putting it on for next time.
I, I would only say that, and, Ms. Haunt, please correct me if I'm wrong, the elections law stuff is very, very specific field in your profession, is it worth asking an elections attorney to review the docs before we adopt these things?
You can go to that expense, yes. Um, I did share this with the supervisor of election, and she was, felt that these changes would improve our process.
Does she have access to, uh, attorneys through her office that could review this?
The county attorney probably, uh, works for her.
Well, he could, um, I don't know if he would do that, this for her, um, I, we can check, um, I...
She happens to know one up close and personal to.
Her husband.
I, I will say that the state will not, the state supervis- supervise, the Division of Elections will not weigh in on it, because it is, they consider this a local matter. And that's usually who she refers to for advice.
All right, well, I'm not discrediting it, I just, you know, any further indemnification, just so that this never happens again, I would be in favor of, uh, but, um...
I think the biggest improvement and change is that we will not be removing names from ballots once it goes to the Supervisor of Election. If somebody wants to challenge, then they can bring a lawsuit against the candidate, naming the city as a party because of, we're an essential party, but it would be between that individual who believes that they're not qualified and the candidate to duke it out. And then, just like the Supervisor of Election in this case, whatever the court tells us to do, we'll do.
I, I think that, I think that's a, makes it a whole lot better. I personally, um, not really keen on hiring yet another outside attorney, but...
Well, I, I, I don't want to either, man, I just thought, if there was a way to get, you know, a, a second opinion on that, fine, but I, I actually think that the brilliant idea here is having the Supervisor of Elections.
We do have an outstanding, outstanding Supervisor of Elections in our county, and, um, but, I think it's worth asking.
Absolutely.
Uh, not that I, I think that we're capable of doing this with these updates ourselves, but I don't think it hurts to ask.
Well, why don't we bring it back and, uh, have your...
Put it on the agenda.
Asked, uh...
Next agenda.
Leslie Swan, if that's a possibility in the interim.
Yes, thank you.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, we finished with that item?
I am.
Move on to our matters. Um, you know, we started the meeting at 3 o'clock, if I were driving out of Vero, I could be sitting at the Pink House in Savannah having a cocktail, or I could be outside of my hotel in Key West having a drink on the beach 90 miles from Cuba. So, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna say, and I'm not gonna name names, I'm just, and I don't want a response from anybody, I'm gonna make a statement, and that statement is, please, to all council members, do not front-load our agenda with multiple items that take up time that's valuable to all of us unnecessarily. That's all I'm saying to that. So, a few items here, I've said shared parking needs to be brought up, I keep reminding everyone I wanna tackle shared parking, uh, in the coming year, I will be putting it on an agenda that's not so full at some point, um, and I want us to come to a conclusion, whether it's needed or not, so I'm gonna put that on an upcoming agenda. agenda. I want to also take the opportunity, maybe it's a little bit premature, but I'll do this as many times as necessary. Jim O'Connor, you are a very special and appreciated person, and you've done a lot for me over many years. I think you're, you're one of the most respected men and respectable men that I've ever met in my life. I think you do a fantastic job. I'm, I'm happy for you that you're retiring, we will miss you very much. You've done, you've done a wonderful thing for our city over many years, we can't thank you enough. And I'm glad that I was the first person, I know everybody wants to say that, everybody, but thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr.--
I really, really appreciate your work and your ethics, and just the way that you are, and you're going to be very, very hard to replace. With that, because one of the biggest things that we have tackled as a city over the history, I think over our 100 years, is the sale of the electric utility, which you were instrumental in, Mr. O'Connor. I would like, I want to propose, I'd rather this had been a secretive thing, but there's no way to get around it. I want to present keys to the city, and I want to do that to Mr. O'Connor first, and Amy Brunges, Dr. Faerty, and Glenn Heron, if we could make that happen, these folks all, I know there were a lot of people that helped, but they were, they were at the beginning, and they were at the end, and we couldn't have done it without them. So, I'd like, Tammy, if we could put something together for those individuals, that'd be fantastic.
Put it on the next council agenda?
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
And I will tell you, Amy was instrumental, as you know, and as Laura knows as well.
And a lot, a lot of people were, I just feel like y'all were in the thick of it every day, day in and day out, and you stuck it out, and you made it happen, and we can't thank you enough for that either. I know you already literally have a key to the city, but something more representative would you deserve?
I actually gave it away.
So, anyway, that's, that's really all I had to discuss this evening, I know we've been here a long time, so, moving on to the vice mayor.
I would like to say, Jim, with all due respect, in all sincerity, it's, it's been truly a privilege to have this experience with you, and, you know, coming into this as someone who had ran for office, but hadn't had an opportunity and the privilege to, to serve the community, you know, it, it's a big job, it's a big task, and you gave me a lot of confidence to, to be up here and to try and make what I always thought were the right decisions, and having you as a sounding board was, you know, what, what gave me the confidence to get through this, and I really appreciate that. You've been just an incredible mentor, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's really all I wanted, wanted to say, and my time's coming to a close here shortly as well, so, moving on.
Okay. Of course, I'm thankful as well, Jim, the year that I was the mayor, and really relied on you for a lot of technical things. I mean, remember, we were going to cut the baby in half with the, the partial sale--
That's right.
With you as the surgeon, but I had every confidence that you could. And, you know, the time that we drove back and forth, all the times to Orlando and all the different places, you know, I really, it's kind of funny or unbelievable to say that it was enjoyable, but it really, you, you made it, you made it that way. And I'm, and I'm going to say this publicly, because while, while I was mayor, I forget what outside institute it was, but it was an educational certificate that you were completing, and as mayor, you, you had requested that I, I complete this form, which was an evaluation of the city manager, and this is, this is my closer, because I, I know that the last question was, well, what would you change about him? And I'm the mayor, and I'm sitting there, and it's a big box, you know, so you're really supposed to think about this, and write a lot of things, and I sat there, and I sat there, and I sat there, and I thought, and I thought, and I thought, and finally, I just wrote, "Not a thing." Do you remember that? And that was, that's my closer, "Not a thing, Jim." Thank you so much.
That was after our second trip to Christmas.
That's right. We went through Christmas twice in one day. Thank you for that, too. Thank you, really. Heartfelt.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman, yeah?
There's a, there's a, there's a military term that I threaten Jim with, and in the army, sometimes when you get into scenarios, when you can't lose personnel, you flag the records, that's what the term is, okay? So, there's, there's, there's no movement, and I threatened Jim that, you know, at least I could flag it for six months, but he said, "Oh, hell, no." And I just, you know, I concur with everybody that's gone to him and sought his wisdom, and I think it's been very beneficial for our, for our community. And, I don't know, it's been, probably two weeks ago, we had a gathering out at Mark Trippson's house to talk about heritage in, in Vero Beach, and as I was departing the area, Lang yelled out, you know, "The upcoming events, don't forget them, Colonel," all right? And so, I didn't want to let down my, the least, the juniorest member of the council not to give a shout-out for this next Wednesday night is the National Night Out for the police out at the, out at River, River, Riverside Park, and so, the Centennial Table will be there.
Oh, is it at Homestead?
Homestead.
Is it Homestead? Okay, out at Homestead.
That'd be the third year there.
Say again? Anyway, that's, that's all good, thank you.
And, and don't forget the Clean Water Coalition, which--
We could go on and on, yeah.
At River House this Thursday, 7 o'clock.
Since we're talking about great things about Jim O'Connor, I actually, my quote, I got called by Colleen Wixson, and I did give a quote for the paper, but they kind of paraphrased it. So, what I, what I really had said was, in the sale of Vero Electric to FPNL, Jim O'Connor just won the Super Bowl of city managers. He was either going to Disney World or announcing his retirements, and I'm very sad to see him go, but wish him happiness, and thank him immensely for what he did for the city of Vero Beach. I thought that was a better quote than, he likened it to a professional athlete retiring.
Yeah, I will tell you, we've had our challenges, but I think we've made a lot of headway, the electric sale being one of those, but, you know, one of my proudest moments is the diesel plant, and having the brewery there. And we've done a lot of those little projects, the department directors have really been good, and the mere fact that Bonnie can step into this position is, is good, I mean, it shows that you have that talent pretty deep into the organization, and so, it's, it'll be good.
Yes.
Well, wow, thank you very much. I guess, meeting is adjourned.